The Santa Monica Planning Commission is hereby called to order and.
And a special.
And we're having a special meeting of the Santa Monica Housing Commission. It's called to order as well.
Okay, would Chair Soloff like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you like to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
No.
No?
Anyone?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call of the respective commissions, please? Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Here.
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Landris.
Here.
Commissioner Pastore.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner McKinnon is absent. Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Flora.
Here.
Commissioner Kamner. Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Chair Soloff.
Here.
And Chair Lambert.
Here, thank you. I want to welcome you all. It's wonderful to see so much enthusiasm for housing in Santa Monica. Excuse me, we are obviously having a joint hearing tonight of the two commissions that are most involved in housing issues as they relate to the city. We have respective roles, but they do coalesce, as you will see over the next year or two as we do the housing element. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss housing issues facing Santa Monica, hopefully in a relatively organized fashion, and to provide, for the purpose of providing input and advisory recommendations to the City Council when they have their December 10th Housing Study meeting. The Planning Commission met on October 16th and went through the housing report that staff presented, and actually had some recommendations that came out of that meeting, and we'll discuss those tonight with the Housing Commission. So I welcome you all, and Chair Soloff, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you Chair Lambert. For those who may not already know, the Santa Monica Housing Commission is a state mandated commission that consists of seven members, two of whom must be actual participants in the city's affordable housing programs, one of whom must be age 62 or older, and one of whom must be either homeless or formerly homeless. The mission of the City of Santa Monica Housing Commission is to improve the quality of life by supporting and helping to guide the production and preservation of affordable housing. We advise and assist the City Council and city staff on housing policies, programs, and projects, while working to enhance the social, economic, cultural vitality and diversity of our community. While the Housing and Planning Commission each have many items that fall exclusively within their missions, there is overlap when it comes to affordable housing production program and when it comes to the standards for affordable housing projects. And that's probably a good thing, given that the two commissions approach these important issues from different perspectives and with commissioners from diverse backgrounds. The Housing Commission holds its regular meetings on the third Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM at the Ken Edwards Center. Our regular November meeting is tomorrow night. However, we were advised that the city manager requested a joint meeting of the two commissions tonight, and five of the six current Housing Commission members were able to attend the special meeting, and thank you particularly to those who had to adjust their schedules to be able to attend a special meeting. One of our Housing Commissioners is out of the country, and we do have one vacancy on our commission. That's why there are five of us here tonight. We look forward to the discussion as a small first step in what's going to be a lengthy discussion of potential changes in Santa Monica's housing production policies.
Before we get to the staff report, let me just let you know about how it's going to proceed tonight. We're going to have a staff report on housing issues. We will then have public input, so if you wish to speak, please fill out a CHIT and give it to the secretary up here. And then there will be questions by the commissions of staff, and Chair Soloff is going to chair that part of the meeting. And then there will be a general discussion among commissioners. And hopefully recommendations that come out of all of this. So again, we appreciate your being here tonight, and let's start with a staff report.
Just to set one level bar here, I think from the Housing Commission's perspective, the first time hearing about this stuff tonight, we don't intend to come out of this with recommendations. This is the beginning of a discussion for us.
You're absolutely right about that, and there will be no votes tonight, so there are no actions on the agenda. It's really just a discussion. And with that, Jing.
Great. Good evening, those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Jing Yo, Planning Manager, and similarly enthused to see all the interest in housing here tonight. Before we jump in, I did want to have just a small moment just to acknowledge this is Peter James's likely final Planning Commission meeting. He's moving on to public work, so we just want to.
We're lost.
Fifteen years of long-range planning with the city, so it's pretty tremendous.
Do we have cupcakes, Kyle?
There's a party in the works. So jumping in, tonight, we have five areas that we're going to cover with respect to housing policy. We review where the city's at with respect to housing production, sort of snapshot as of today, and then provide an understanding of the landscape of housing, both at the state, regional, and local level. We'll then kind of provide like a historical overview of the city's growth management strategies, kind of over the years from the 1984 General Plan all the way through today. And then provide an update on some of the ongoing work with respect to housing policy that's happening in response to current directives at the regional and state level. And then finally, finishing up with a presentation of a progress update on the AHPP study that was directed by council thus far. So as was alluded to by the two chairs, you know, just I think providing some parameters for the discussion tonight. There's no expectation, you know, that there's a vote, this is an open discussion, it's a study session. You know, what we're looking for is really comments, direction with respect to parameters on, you know, other, what can we continue to study and explore as the city looks to, you know, support, continue to support housing production. I want to note that the RENA process is not complete. You know, we're going to go a little bit into details to explaining the process, but it is not complete yet. It is still definitely a process that's underway. And the progress report from the AHPP study, again, that is not a final, you know, part of the work. That is only one part of the existing scope. You know, so it's a bit unusual for us to provide that kind of a progress update in a study, but we felt it was important to inform, you know, the ongoing discussion that's occurring now. And then finally, all comments tonight will be provided to the council for consideration at the December 10th study session. So again, you know, we don't expect, you know, you to have concrete recommendations or consensus or what have you. You know, we will, tonight is really about collecting those comments and sharing them with council. So you can see here that there's a lot, you know, that ties into housing in Santa Monica, both from the policy side, you know, all the little green dots there about, you know, all the things that affect and impact housing. And then, you know, what we do in terms of the analysis of where housing is, you know, we look at, you know, we track housing. We have a lot of work, policy work that's occurring in that arena. So we're starting off with, you know, a snapshot of how the city's doing with respect to its current Regional Housing Needs Assessment cycle. So this is as of today, you know, how we're doing as of October 2019. So you can see here that in terms of the city meeting, you know, its RENA, we're doing well. You know, we're doing more overall than our requirement, you know. But if you look at the income breakdown here for both the low and the moderate, you know, we still are in the black, so to speak. You know, the 113, 185 units of moderate, so we're still short on that end. I want to note here that even though it says like you've done more, the red, that doesn't mean it's negative, it's actually more than the requirement. We don't get credit for that, you know, it just counts as zero with respect to compliance with RENA. So, but we've provided it here just to, you know, illustrate where the city is at in producing units at each income level. We thought it'd be helpful to also provide some comparison to how we compare to peer cities, both within the West Side region and then coastal cities within the SCAG region, provide a little bit of frame of reference. So you can see, these are ordered by total RENA allocation, you know, in that, so it's, so the order is really from that total RENA column is the ordering. And we've put a box around Santa Monica, Redondo Beach, and Huntington Beach, just because there's similarity in that overall allocation. You know, and you can see where Santa Monica is relative to others. So although you have, you know, some jurisdictions are doing, you know, 25,000 percent, their allocation was five, for example. You know, compared to 1,674, so, you know, that's why we kind of use this as a point of comparison. So relative to comparable cities, you know, we are doing very well. Proposition R is a voter-approved initiative, you know, that required that all multifamily housing completed each year be affordable occupied by low and moderate income households. So that has been the driving force for affordable housing policy for private development in the city. And, you know, overall, we've done well in terms of production. However, you can see in, I think that the new report just came out in sort of more recent years, you know, we've had a hard time missing or meeting, you know, that 30% goal. Historically, you know, being able to meet that goal really depended on, you know, some support of 100% affordable housing from, you know, public sources of funding. It wasn't not wholly dependent on private development to produce all of that housing. And so there's really, you know, the achievement of Proposition R's goals are not solely dependent on private development alone. It really requires some public investment into that as well. Oh, there we go. Housing production since March 26th, we use that as a date because that is just a date where the council took action to eliminate the extreme low-income options. So just a frame of reference, you know, as to how, where we are this year with respect to applications. So I think the last time we gave the Planning Commission an update, last month, we had two applications since March, and since then, three more have come in for downtown related to the SRO settlement projects, actually. So those are all in, and then we expect the other three to roll in after that. In terms of state and regional housing policy, so, you know, continues to be an interesting time in terms of what the legislature is doing with respect to housing. There is a declared housing crisis in California, so, you know, this dates back to what the impetus for the 2017 housing package, you know, the spate of bills that sort of continue to bang the drum with respect to requiring jurisdictions to continuously remove barriers to housing, streamline the process and what have you. And that is a very, very consistent theme that you'll see through legislation that comes from the state. You know, so the analysis from the state is that housing costs, you know, just rents in general to people are very expensive. It's expensive to build housing, the process takes too long, you know, there are a lot of barriers to the production of housing. You have some cities who refuse to acknowledge that they have, you know, responsibility in contributing to alleviating this problem. And that, you know, this is something that affects all Californians regardless of, you know, what income level you're at. And, you know, they've really, you know, taken a hard look at that and enacted a lot of laws about it. These are just some selected highlights of the 2019 legislative session. We, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but they were particularly had implications for our housing policy. AB 101 is a very large funding bill largely dealing with, you know, buy right home of shelters, homelessness, and what have you. But within there also is an additional funding source for completion of the six-cycle housing element. So we are of course particularly interested in that, as it will assist us in completing the update. SB 330 is, you know, sort of an offshoot of SB 50, you know, which didn't make it all the way through. So it's got pieces of it with respect to, you know, banning on downzoning for a time period like until 2025. You know, it's really streamlining the process, limiting the number of hearings, and it provides some guarantees to applicants upon submission of a complete housing application. AB 1763, this is a density bonus for 100% affordable housing. Allows a height increase of, I believe it's up to three stories, no parking minimums, you know, within half mile of major transit stops. So that's intended to support 100% affordable housing. And then there's a triplet of bills are related to removing barriers to accessory dwelling units. The city is, you know, largely compliant with, is compliant with current ADU law. And this is essentially removing, you know, some of those remaining barriers that are in our code and many codes with respect to like owner occupancy, minimum lot size, you know, allowance for, or not requiring parking, you know, allowing both not just an ADU but a junior ADU. You know, so it's intended to again make that process very streamlined and easy, at least from a regulatory perspective, for someone to construct an ADU. The other, so that sort of provides the story at the state level. At the regional level, there's been a process underway called the Six-Cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is intended to cover the planning period 2021 to 2029. We are just at sort of the tail end of our current cycle right now. And so that, this process kind of kick-started last summer. And it's ongoing at this point where we are now is that the SCAG Regional Council recommended a methodology to the HCD, and it's in the midst of a 60-day public review period. And you can see here, and it's an attachment to the staff report as well, you know, where we're at right now. Santa Monica's estimate is approximately 9,000 units based on that tool that SCAG provided, of which 50% are at that lower income level, so that you can see the breakdown there. What it looks like scheduled going forward, like I said, it's in that 60-day review period now. We anticipate the final methodology will be adopted January, February 2020. That will kick off an appeal period, then, you know, which is expected to resolve around the summer of next year with final numbers adopted October 2020, so we will know our final final. And then we have until fall of 2021, October of 2021, to have a certified housing element. One important aspect of the housing element, there are many aspects, but one particular one with respect to accommodating, you know, all those units is something called the Suitable Sites Inventory. It is what it sounds like, you're identifying sites that can accommodate that allocation. So this is codified in Government Code Section 65583.2. What it is, is that, you know, you have to find sites to accommodate, and this is sort of a general definition as to what it is. Just a quick note that for the current housing element cycle, the Suitable Sites Inventory was based on our adopted LEUS. So what you see there is a reflection of the General Plan's growth strategy. In Suitable Sites Criteria, this was actually changed with the 2017 housing package, but calling it as of today, you know, looking forward at the next housing cycle. What's different, it is becoming more challenging as to identifying a suitable site. That means, that has implications, you know, for the city. The reason that they've sort of ratcheted down, you know, you can't just identify any site here and there and say, oh, you know, that shopping mall is going to turn over into housing if it's been there for 45 years, you know. So the idea is to give more teeth to your, to your housing elements. So you can see there are some highlights of, you know, the more challenging criteria. You know, they can be, they can only include non-vacant sites, and the definition of vacant, it has to be, it's basically greenfields. You know, you can't count a parking lot as vacant, you know, it's, it has to be untouched, you know, to be considered vacant. And it has to have realistic development potential. So again, that example of, you know, essentially a presumption that existing use is an impediment to development. If in prior cycles, you know, it's been shown that it's, you know, you're identifying the same site, nothing has happened on it, you know, they will question, you know, whether that is really a realistic site to include in your Suitable Sites Inventory. And you can see here that's important because if you're going to recycle sites from prior housing elements, you know, you have to make sure that whatever project goes on there has a 20% lower income inclusionary, and it has to be buy right. So that's important to us because if that's a qualifier, then it actually has to be able to happen. And that's, you know, that certainly matters in terms of the city's policymaking. And, you know, the, finally, there's a limitation in how many units you can assume. You can't just, you know, divide it by 500 and call it a day. You know, it has to be presumed to accommodate maximum density permitted. And you might be wondering like, how do they check? It's going to be really based on past performance as a future indicator. So you can't, you know, suddenly say that, well, you know, sites like this could accommodate 60 units, but now we're going to suddenly say that under the same existing parameters, all of a sudden you can get 150 on there. You know, they're going to, it's not really going to pass the sniff test on that one. And certainly as we go through the housing element update, we will learn more about the criteria and sort of understanding how HCD intends to apply that. You know, so really what it means is doing more with less. You've got bigger RENA, smaller Suitable Sites, you know, just kind of simply explained. In addition to that, there's a no net loss requirement, another part of the government code. So it's sort of, what that means is like an active monitoring, you know, after your element is adopted in terms of if you have projects occurring on those sites, you have to make sure that what you said in terms of how many units were going to be developed on there actually got approved on there. Otherwise, you know, you have to sort of show like a rebalancing of, well, where else are you going to accommodate? That, that growth that you said was in your housing element. This is, sorry, this is a bit hard to see. This is a map of our current cycle Suitable Sites. So you can see they are largely concentrated within the downtown. Again, this was based on the LEUS growth strategy of, you know, concentrating growth really in certain areas served by high-frequency transit. I would note here that the dots are not like scaled on, so, you know, for example, on some larger sites that could have more unit potential, we didn't, we didn't kind of scale it in that way. There were 77 sites identified of a capacity of 3,700 units. As of today, eight sites on that list, you know, had, had projects occur on them. We obviously have had production elsewhere, it just wasn't, you know, where it was identified in the Suitable Sites Inventory. Wanted to touch on implications of non-compliance, not spend a whole bunch of time on it, but, you know, just to provide some overview that there are increasingly severe penalties for non-compliance, you know, not having a certified element and what have you. Primarily, you know, these are judicial remedies, you know, turning things over to the Attorney General, you know, their right to sue cities and fine. And I think important to us actually is access to funding, you know, whether it be for transportation funding, housing programs, you know, where it requires that you have a certified or compliant housing element. I'm going to turn it over to Peter now to go through the growth management strategy and an update on our work.
Thanks Jing. Good evening, Commissioners, Peter James, City Planning. And I'm going to spend the next couple of minutes taking a walk down memory lane, the past 35 years of the city's growth management strategy as it has changed over the decades. And ultimately where we will end up is our current context for making decisions about what to study in the future given the changing landscape of housing policy in California. I wanted to start by just providing a very general framework for the way that the city provides private developers with standards and begins to break the city into different districts. Through zoning, we segregate purely residential uses from our commercial corridors and our transit areas. In Santa Monica, which is 8.3 square miles, we have 31 individual zoning districts. By way of comparison, the city of Los Angeles, which is 503 square miles, has 47 zoning districts. So we're very granular, we're very specific in this city, and that's just the way we roll. Our growth management strategy is, our adopted growth management strategy is really predicated around this idea that we will redirect development pressure away from the residential neighborhoods to the areas where it's served by transit and where it can accommodate the type of growth that was envisioned in the LEUS. This crude representation that I've layered on here to the zoning map shows the areas in green, those are our residential neighborhoods. And so the premise of the 2010 LEUS was that 96% of the entire city would be, would be preserved from development pressure. And those areas that are illuminated in multicolors, the downtown, our major boulevards like Wilshire, Santa Monica, Broadway, Colorado, the Bergamot area, and parts of Ocean Park and Pico were the areas where the, the new growth would be accommodated. And I believe in the EIR, we estimated something on the order of 4,955 new units until the year 2030. How are we doing? Well, in reflection, as we've done the research and looked back on the past 35 years of our growth management strategy, we've noticed a pattern of expansion and contraction. Typically speaking, the General Plan will set maximum parameters for new development in the city. And a couple of years later, when the zoning ordinance catches up to implement the General Plan, there'll be a ratcheting down as far as capacity is concerned. So looking again at the growth areas identified in our General Plan, starting with the blue column, this is the 1984 LEUS, and we're looking at what we now call the Mixed Use Boulevard, which is Wilshire Boulevard, and what was portions of Lincoln Boulevard until the downtown plan was adopted. And the DMV site off of Colorado and Cloverfield had an initial capacity of seven stories. And this is a very crude graphic, it's really designed to get you to start thinking in terms of floors of housing. So seven stories, and then the General Plan, sorry, the zoning ordinance knocked that down to three. When the 2010 LEUS was adopted, again, there was this expansion that happened. Wilshire and other areas were identified as having the capacity for five-story buildings, and the General Plan, or I'm sorry, the zoning ordinance later modified that to four stories. Mixed Use Boulevard Low are our major corridors like Santa Monica Boulevard, the eastern part of Santa Monica Boulevard, Broadway, and Colorado, portions of Pico, and some areas on Main Street. You can see the general trend there, both General Plan, Zoning Ordinance, 2015 Zoning Ordinance, which is the yellow column, takes it from four stories down to three. General Commercial, which is Lincoln Boulevard, south of the freeway, and Santa Monica Boulevard between Lincoln and 20th Street, I want to say, Auto Row. The 84 Plan envisioned four stories on there, and the zoning ordinance implemented at two. In the 2010 and subsequent 2015 update of the zoning ordinance, we maintained the line at three stories. And the Neighborhood Commercial District, which is Main Street, Montana, that tiny portion of 26th Street up near Brentwood and 14th Street, that's really where the General Plan and the zoning ordinance get very granular due to the different characteristics of those zoning districts.
It's part of Pico Boulevard too, right?
And part of Pico Boulevard, I'm sorry, you're right, absolutely. So you can see, starting in 84, the expectation was that that would be accommodating four-story buildings, but by 2010, we were talking more in terms of three. And by the time the zoning ordinance was adopted, certain portions, certain areas, like portions of Pico Boulevard, I believe, still held three, but Main Street was down to two stories. And these, these trends are, you know, fairly common, I want to say. I don't think there's anything wrong with us here in Santa Monica, and we've all been complicit in this pattern. But it does sort of set the baseline for the work we have to do moving forward. There's other values, though, that we should also consider aside from height. The Bergamot Transit Village, which was created by the 2010 LEUS and later provided with more detailed development standards in 2013 with the adoption of the Bergamot Area Plan. This is this formerly industrial area here in the eastern part of our city. Enjoy some of the highest heights in the city, 86 feet, so the ability to accommodate seven-story buildings there. What's interesting here is that in that process of providing more specific development standards, the Bergamot Area Plan reduced the allowable density. And all of this comes to bear in the pro forma models that Mr. Silverman will be talking about later on. All of these small incremental changes have an impact when compared to the rising cost of land, construction values, and labor that put us in our current situation today. The Mixed Use Creative District is also in the area outlined in red. Again, through more specific planning processes, the FAR, the floor area, the density was reduced. And we haven't seen very many projects in this area as a result. Other things of note to mention, the 2010 LEUS identified the opportunity for five specific areas throughout the city to accommodate more housing, more coordinated planning, things like shared parking, access to neighborhood services. These were called Activity Centers. In the 2015 Zoning Ordinance update, four of the five Activity Centers were removed, as were the Tier Three, the highest tier of development. An additional floor of potential housing was knocked off the major boulevards, further reducing our zoned capacity. This is a brief, and another way of looking. This is a brief, and another way of looking at this walk down memory lane more comprehensively citywide. So the numbers correlate to the number of floors that are allowed by Boulevard, by district, throughout the years. So nineteen eighty-four loose, which was, as far as our research can indicate, that is sort of the highest point of zoned capacity in the city of Santa Monica. The subsequent nineteen eighty-eight zoning ordinance converted a lot of that capacity to, to stories. So I'll just flip back there for dramatic effect and then move forward again here. One thing that's interesting about the nineteen eighty-eight zoning ordinance and what was later adopted through the Bayside Specific Plan was that the city incentivized housing production in the downtown by providing density bonuses in the downtown, not increasing the height, but by increasing the floor area ratio. So even those, those areas in the downtown reduced from seven stories, their overall development potential increased, and we saw a tremendous amount of production during those years while the rest of the city remained relatively stable. The two thousand and ten loose took a new look at the capacity of the city to grow incrementally. And you can see here, there's a lot more detail in addition to the boulevards. You now see the, the introduction of the activity centers. Those are those six-story areas. There's a five-story area around Memorial Park, one here at Ocean Park and Lincoln Boulevard. And of course, you have the introduction of the Bergamot District, so the mixed-use creative and the Bergamot Transit Village, where at that moment in time, we knew that the train was coming. In two thousand and eight, we knew the train was coming. And so a lot of our general plan was organized around this principle that we would have regional mass transit access. And so a lot of the work that we did over that decade was to transform these formerly industrial areas into new mixed-use neighborhoods. However, those high spirits were soon eclipsed. By the two thousand and fifteen zoning ordinance, as the activity centers were erased from the map, Tier Three was also pulled away from the boulevards. And a lot of the development interest in Bergamot faded away with the collapse of the Papermate Project. The two thousand and seventeen Downtown Community Plan was an effort to provide more specific planning guidance for the city. And so that plan, at its core, was really designed to preserve the historic walking area of downtown of Bayside. So moving away from seven stories to five stories in the core and pushing a lot of that development interest towards the train station where it could be adjacent to mass transit and jobs. And that's really the, where we're at at this moment in time. Largely a three-to-four-story city with a zoning capacity, a zoned capacity of, you know, several thousand units, of which Jing reported several, two, two thousand, twenty-two hundred are in production. In reflection of all of this, getting back to both the growth strategy and the suitable sites inventory that Jing showed previously, this is a map that shows where those, where the development projects have happened over the past nine years since the adoption of the general plan. And what we see here are a lot of dots, a lot of activity in the downtown. But we're not seeing them in the areas where we really thought it might happen, up in Bergamot. We're not seeing very many scattered along the boulevards. And we are seeing a few more than we're comfortable with in the residential neighborhoods. But don't despair. We are, we are here. Our sleeves are rolled, and we are working on a number of initiatives. We've been proactive for a long time in trying to get our heads around the changing landscapes related to housing policy, both at the regional, state levels, as well as within Santa Monica. Recent actions of note, on the fifteenth of October, the council extended the removal of the extremely low-income option from a developer menu. This menu really spoke to their obligation to provide a modicum of affordable housing in their private development projects. And that was removed first in May of two thousand and nineteen, and then again reaffirmed and extended until November twenty twenty. Other items that are of interest to this discussion is the awarding of the SB two grant, which really is geared towards accelerating housing production in Santa Monica. I'll spend a second after this slide telling you a little bit more about that grant. And in that same stroke, the council authorized an increase to the HRNA contract to integrate some of the SB two-related activities into the prototyping and the modeling efforts that are underway with the AHPP. So SB two does a number of things for us. It, it opens the door for us to look at a variety of incentives, whether those are in the form of process or development standards for housing production. It also gives us the opportunity to look at our own internal systems, to see if we can improve them that in terms of software, in terms of communications, and to provide some support to existing tenants that live in rent-controlled buildings throughout the city. Here's the scope. It's enumerated in your staff report in greater detail. But essentially, what we have mapped out and have gotten permission from council to evaluate is to go back to the DCP, to look at that feasibility study, and to update it with current market information. Mr. Silverman will talk a little bit, I'm sure, about some of the assumptions that were used with the AHPP model. Many of those are relevant to the DH, the DCP model. We will be looking at revising standards on the boulevards and in Bergamot, and we have big questions of these commissions about how far we should go in terms of how high, how dense. We'll be looking at exploring a minimum density option in the multifamily neighborhoods so that we don't experience a net loss of units when properties redevelop. Again, we'll be looking at an information campaign to provide existing tenants with information and resources when faced with housing issues. We plan to buy some software, illustrate some of our zoning ordinance to demystify it, especially around ADUs, to make it a lot easier for people to understand and to execute. And then lastly, to look at across the state, across the nation, at new financing tools to finance some of this housing that the state is saying that we need to produce. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Jing. She's going to provide a brief update, and I think we wrap.
So as you heard me mention in the beginning, we're providing a progress update on the HPP study. So this study came about from council direction. Specifically, we were only authorized to look at, you know, what does it mean if we were to increase affordable housing requirements in areas outside of the downtown? However, don't touch existing development standards. So study exactly things as they are today. So that is the, you know, crux of the, the results that were presented to you. The general approach, I'm not going to get into a huge amount of detail, but the general approach, the idea was to test the likelihood of some housing prototypes that were developed by the staff in terms of looking, and they were developed based on submittals that we've seen, kind of just trying to find, you know, it's not one specific project or another. It's sort of a middle-of-the-road, generally applicable prototype. You know, there's no way we could model every single possible scenario. So, and so we looked at that, and then we based it on three affordability scenarios. The approach was a static pro forma model approach, which is appropriate, you know, for this kind of level of, of policy analysis. So this is just showing you like the study areas that were included in the study. We looked at the boulevards. So we included in that Wilshire, Santa Monica, Broadway, and Colorado. We called those out in the study under the different zoning designations. They are MUB, Mixed-Use Boulevard, and MUBL, Mixed-Use Boulevard Low. We also looked at Lincoln. Lincoln is the general commercial zone, so Lincoln's south of the ten. We didn't look north of the ten because that was, that's part of the downtown. So we looked specifically at south of the I-ten freeway, from there to the southern city limits. And we also looked at the Bergamot area, which is the planned boundary. That's the orange that you see up there. So the prototypes that were studied, they were both Tier One and Tier Two. And we did not look at development agreement level tiers. That wouldn't make any sense. Those are negotiations. We want to look at run-of-the-mill, regular, just development projects, you know, what that meant. And then the non-DA Tier Three in, in Bergamot. We also looked for, as a point of comparison, because again, the idea was to look at likelihood of development. We looked at a commercial model of office and retail, again, understanding all things being equal. You know, why, you know, would someone pursue something over, over the other? And the affordability scenarios that were tested were seven-and-a-half percent extremely low income, fifteen percent very low income, and then the DCP structure, which is, I didn't list it all here, but it's effectively at least twenty percent ranges all the way up. So it depended on the height of the project, you know, corresponded to that table. And then the income, or the, the units are then distributed across the appropriate income level per the DCP formula. So preliminary findings showed that for housing projects, they are most likely to develop under the seven-and-a-half percent extremely low-income scenario. This is the Tier Two, you know, essential, essentially the, the Tier Two requirement if you were to do extremely low income. Not at all surprising. That is, you know, pretty much all the housing projects we've seen have exercised that option. It is less likely or not likely to develop at those higher affordability scenarios. So the fifteen percent in the DCP formula, again, based on existing development standards outside of the downtown. We were seeing also that in areas, you know, where we were testing the office commercial prototype versus the residential, you were seeing that, you know, it's more likely that the office project would develop, you know, than the housing because, you know, there really isn't any differential in development standards between the housing and office. In the downtown, there is. However, outside of the city, in some areas, both, you know, types of, of project types actually have the same FAR in height. And so, you know, that kind of provides a little bit of insight as to, you know, the results, you know, why they turn out the way they are in terms of, you know, ransom property development standards are lower outside of the downtown. So, you know, the downtown affordability or the inclusionary structure was based on, you know, those certain set of development standards, you know, among the highest in the city. And it's, you know, you're looking at boulevards and what have you where you have three stories and two stories. Obviously, you know, that's, that's far less development potential than downtown. Construction costs, you know, it doesn't, it's not like it gets lower, you know, because you're developing on Santa Monica Boulevard versus downtown. So, you know, when you apply those across the city, you know, but you're applying that to smaller prototypes, which are potentially not going to sustain, you know, the cost across fewer units. This is illustrative. This is in the packet and in your staff report. I won't spend a huge amount of time on this, but this is obviously showing graphically the different prototypes that were run, you know, both in the mixed-use Boulevard and mixed-use Boulevard Low zone for the boulevard, showing, again, that range of, you know, which prototypes were shown, most likely to develop, you know, were less likely or unlikely. Same for the Bergamot Transit Village. You can see there, again, those results, and then Lincoln Boulevard. So in terms of, the, the Planning Commission had a, a policy discussion October the sixteenth. There's a more complete summary in, in your report. But generally speaking, you know, there was support for affordable housing, the variety of comments made in terms of ideas for how a hundred percent affordable housing could be supported. There were considerations, a lot of considerations for, you know, how to incentivize housing production. You know, different ideas were put out there. There were concepts put out for the SB two scope of work and also support for housing preservation, whether it be for tenant resources or even landlord assistance was something that was put out there. The commission's comments on the scope of the SB two, so the expanded scope, you know, was a, a novel idea, I think, of, you know, flipping, you know, what if we flipped the AHPP around and had it focused on low and moderate income as opposed to the extremely low and very low levels? And, you know, have, provide support for housing providers to fill in the gap on that end. You know, do we look for opportunities on city property to accommodate, you know, some of this housing capacity? Do we look at minimum density requirements? And do we incentivize more housing instead of the strategy of, you know, kind of in the nodes or, you know, concentrated around transit and on the boulevards? You know, what if it was exclusively kind of in this area, this radius approach around transit instead? So this brings us to the end. We're leaving you here with kind of a frame, you know, to assist you in framing or guiding your discussion. We provided a lot of information about, you know, the landscape of housing, both at, you know, all levels, what's going on, how the city's doing. And I think, you know, regardless of, we've heard a lot of comments on, you know, what the arena allocation will be, certainly comments on the AHPP study and, you know, what standards are or what have you. I don't think we're really looking for specifics, you know, or any, you know, known concrete solutions at this point. It's really under the broader umbrella of, you know, it appears to us that there is a, a need to have a broader discussion about how can the city support additional housing production? What does that mean to you? You know, what are ideas, areas that you would like us to explore as we continue forward in this discussion? Secondly, what are other areas to explore to support the production of a hundred percent affordable housing? So looking at the market rate equation and also the hundred percent affordable equation, and, you know, the thing in between, the deed-restricted units, you know, how can we sort of produce housing at those levels? And then finally, feedback on the Planning Commission's prior comments, potentially as an offshoot of, you know, is there similarity, you know, in thoughts from the, the Housing Commission, you know, sort of as a joint body? You know, I think tonight is really about sharing your different perspectives and, you know, having kind of an interactive discussion on that. So with that, we're here for your questions. I want to note that also our colleagues from HED, Andy Eagle, Barbara Collins, Jim Kemper are here, and of course, Paul Silverman is also available.
Thank you. We're actually going to hold staff questions until after public comments. I think that could inform what we ask staff if we hear from the public. And for those of you who... One more. For those of you who have not signed up and wish to speak, it's not too late. So you can get a chit up here at the desk, and by all means, sign up. We have twenty chits. So given the volume of interest in this issue, we're going to say that you are limited to two minutes. That said, the commissions are certainly welcome to ask questions of people who are testifying. And the way you do that, for those of you who are not mechanized in your normal meetings, is you hit the request to speak button, and then your name appears magically on my list, and I call you. Okay? Okay, I'm going to call three names at a time, and if you would, please step up to the side wall so you'll be ready to go when I, when I call your name. The first name is Michael Millman. The second name is Jay Johnson. And the third is Kay Ambrose.
Do you want me to step up?
Please. Assuming you're Michael Millman.
Yes, I... There are people in this room that can attest to us. My name is Michael Millman. I'm not a developer. I'm the guy that provides the housing. I'm the guy that if there's a insect-type of difficulty, I deal with it. So my family has three hundred units that you don't have to deal with. They're in Marseille, Paris, and in Switzerland. My family here on the west side have a hundred and thirty units. We're responsible for two hundred tenants. Let's deal with the problem. You cannot preserve rent-control units under severe rent control. You got to take the boot off the neck of these landlords. You started with forty thousand units. When rent control came in, you got twenty-five. This is what we need. We need help on earthquake retrofit. We don't need jerks downstairs in the building and safety to tell engineers, "We're not going to help you." We need help on balcony and staircase because that's the state law. We need the tenants to pay for the water, sewage, and trash. We need to protect. We need to protect. We need to protect those mom and pops who want to get the hell out of Dodge because it's too tough. What about the big player, the college, the airport, the Miramar, St. John's? Why didn't they build, why didn't they build, why didn't they build workforce housing? I'll tell you why. Because the fix was in from SMUR. Part of your problem is you're getting too much pressure. There is an answer. We know it. It's ADUs. Let's make it easy for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millman. Are there any questions, Mr. Millman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Johnson.
Good evening, Jay Johnson, Ninth and Alta here in Santa Monica. Also owner of, our family owns a number of units in the city that we've owned and managed for thirty or forty years and continue to do so. The most important thing, I think, when we look at this entire problem is to... The most important thing, I think, when we look at this entire problem is to think holistically. In particular, I am not aware of the, of a inventory of housing in our city. We've talked about different properties over the years, but how many duplexes, triplexes, how many 10-unit buildings, 12-unit buildings, in particular by age, as well as size, do we have in this city? I think, like any business, we shouldn't know exactly what our inventory is. I think we fly blind in a certain, in a certain sense without knowing the, particularly the age and the size. The reason I talk about the age and size is that duplexes and triplexes are the target in the city. We just heard about suitable sites. When you look at the suitable sites and analyze that the lot value is higher than the value of the property with the structure, they are the ideal properties that developers and others would otherwise develop into condo projects and thus you would eliminate existing affordable rent-controlled housing under existing tenants. Now, how to protect those? Page five of the staff report regarding expanding support to the existing smaller structures in the city, especially support for Senate, for the Senate bill that is to reform the California Earthquake Authority, that you may be familiar that has been parked up in Sacramento and will be brought up next spring, to whereby the California Earthquake Authority would be able to issue bonds for grant money to property owners for retrofits and balcony reconstruction. The city council would be very helpful to write letters in support of the reform bill of the California Earthquake Authority, thus providing funds for existing owners to do the repairs, particularly to those at mo, at high risk, such as those smaller buildings I mentioned. A couple other points if I have another minute?
Actually, your time is up. Would someone like to ask him to tell us his second point?
Yes. My question is, what are your other points?
On page 12 of, regarding Senate Bill 32, the 310,000, 31,000 is for existing, existing, to be spent on existing, on outreach to the existing property owners for work on cost reduction efforts. In particular, it should be directed towards that, in particular, the elimination of the utility tax on city provided, on city provided services such as water and trash. And lastly, with regarding the originally loose that we spent 10 years, 15 years working on, please protect the R1 areas, keep the existing height and mass as it is now, nothing more than the existing ADU rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. After Ms. Ambrose is Dave Rand, Matt Stauffer, and Michael Folonis.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Kay Ambrose. I'd like to point out to you a couple of facts and then I'd like to talk to you about a comment regarding space when constructing affordable housing. First, I'd like to say that according to the Rent Control Board, in 2018, there was a report published on pages 14 and 15. It says, "The median rent paid for tenants moving into a studio last year was 1,850." And the median rent for a one-bedroom unit was 2,350. Okay. So let's do the math. If you want to pay 50 percent, which is very high, 50 percent of your income goes towards rent, 1,850, this is what you do. You do 1,850 times two, times 12 months. That means you need to make $44,000 and $400 per year in order to live in a rent-controlled unit, in a studio. Now, a one-bedroom, same math, 2,395 dollars for a one-bedroom, times two, that means you need to make $4,790 per month in order to afford to live there. That's $57,000 in order to live in a one-bedroom apartment that is rent-controlled. And that's just rent-controlled units. Then I looked at a website, a website called rentcafe.com, which has all of the, all the numbers, not just rent-controlled units. On this website, it says that the average in November 2019, the average one-bedroom in Santa Monica was $3,789. You need to make about $100,000 per year in order to live in an average one-bedroom apartment in Santa Monica. This is unacceptable. Now, let's talk about affordability. What does that mean?
So, excuse me, your time is up. Did you have a...
Yes, I have a question. Affordability, what does that mean?
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about space. I live in a one-bedroom apartment on Pico de la Nueva. It is less than 350 square feet. I've lived there four years. I pay 1,670 dollars. Less than 350 square feet is way too small for my mental health. And I urge you, planning commission and housing commissioners, as you think about building affordable housing, that you don't think about these tiny homes that have been so trendy in recent years. I know people think that these tiny homes are, you know, it's great, you know, I, I get to have more money because I live in, and I choose to live in a smaller space. But that is, that is not the best practice.
Can you, can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Soloff has a question. Ms. Ambrose?
Just very quickly, are you just an interested resident or what brought you out tonight?
I'm on the Social Services Commission and I've lived in Santa Monica for four and a half years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Rand.
Good evening, chairs and commissioners. Dave Rand with the law firm, Armbrister Goldsmith and Delback. Came tonight thinking I would get into the details of the Paul Silverin report and try to outsmart him and have realized that every time I've tried to do that, he's only made me look bad. So instead, I want to offer something what I, which I think is hopefully helpful and productive as you grapple with the tremendous magnitude of housing production needs in the city. And that is unlocking the potential of the state density bonus law. Santa Monica historically has taken an incredibly conservative and narrow view of the application of the state density bonus law only, believing that it applies in the residential districts here where largely improved with rent-controlled units, as opposed to the commercial boulevards, the downtown and the Bergamot, where the loose calls for the development potential and you actually want to concentrate the development intensity. Now, it's a technical issue. The reason is the state density bonus law regime calls for density bonuses based on units per lot area. Santa Monica said because we regulate development in the commercial districts based on envelope, FAR in height, not units per lot area, it simply doesn't apply. But the definition of density bonus and the definitions in the law are clear that it's about providing the affordable housing under the law to get incentives and concessions such as expanded envelope, more FAR, more height, more units, market rate, and affordable. Other cities do this regularly, cities that are similar to Santa Monica, like West Hollywood that are very progressive about housing, they regulate development on their commercial boulevards based on envelope, they apply the state density bonus law. Even cities that are very different than Santa Monica, the city of Agoura Hills, which compared to you guys are in the Stone Age when it comes to multifamily housing production, they have acknowledged that even if you are not seeking an actual density bonus in terms of units per lot area, you, the developers that provide the requisite amount of affordable units are still entitled to the benefits under the state law. This is low-hanging fruit, commissioners. Do this, you'll get more units. You don't have to amend the general plan to do this. You don't have to adopt a new zoning ordinance. You don't need a specific plan. You simply need to abide by state law. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much. Chair Soloff has a question.
First question, Dave, are you here tonight speaking for yourself or representing a client?
I represent a multitude of developers in Santa Monica that would be very interested if you actually followed this, this advice.
And then my other question is, what evidence should we look at that this would actually increase the production of affordable housing in the city of Santa Monica?
Virtually every other city in the state that applies the density bonus law. If you get, if you, if you allow for increased height and FAR based on the application of the law and the affordable units that are being provided through your inclusionary program, you will expand your envelope, you'll get more units. It's a, it's a, it's a physics thing. It's, LA does this, again, West Hollywood does this. Every city I work in does it this way. Santa Monica is the only city that has interpreted it this way. And I've been asked so many times over the years why this is and I've not been able to defend it, but given what you're grappling with, now is the time to make a change on this.
Okay. I guess my only question is, all of those cities you've mentioned produce less percentage of affordable housing of their total production than the city of Santa Monica. So what do I look at in those cities that tells me that I'll get more if we go along with this?
Well, you have higher inclusionary requirements, right, than all of those cities. So, you know, the city of Los Angeles has no inclusionary requirement.
Right.
You do. And the law, there was a, in Napa, City of Napa appellate court decision that is clear that the affordable units required through any city's inclusionary policy count towards the ability to achieve a density bonus incentive and concession like expanded envelope. So once you increase that envelope and you get more units on a percentage basis, you're going to get more market rate and affordable units. CCSM, if you do this, can take advantage of AB 1763, a law that the commission was very excited about last time I was with you, but can't use right now on the commercial boulevards because to use AB 1763, which gives, you know, CCSM three more stories and an 80 percent density bonus, to do that, you have to acknowledge that it applies in those areas. So that's another way you're going to get more affordable units because your affordable providers will be able to benefit substantially.
I have a question. One of the concerns about community corps using the density bonus program is the state rents. They are now using TCAC rents for their 100 percent projects. But as I read the new bill, the new law...
It provides flexibility.
Right. It's like 20, 20 percent of the units go with the state rents and 80 percent go with TCAC.
Exactly right. That, that was an important change in AB 1763, which freed that up to allow CCSM to be able to realize TCAC rents for a majority of the units in those density bonus projects.
I understand. Thank you. Commissioner Landris.
Yes. At which point did you become aware of quid pro quo with, oh, I'm sorry, wrong hearing. Just always wanted to ask that.
Did you get that?
You've been working on that one all week.
I have.
Yes, you have.
Exactly. Well done, though. Yeah, we'll see who's playing other people tonight. I'm really interested in this density bonus question as well and wondered whether you had seen in your research the, the mix. In other words, do you think that a density bonus would work applying state law like this even with higher percentages of higher affordability, low and moderate? If we were looking at an inclusionary zoning program that was shifted toward low and moderate production, which as we've seen, we have not achieved as we'd like? That's my one question. And my second question is, because you brought up the 100 percent affordable, the, what about, what, how would this compare in its effectiveness to, say, a T-FAR program that would, with, you mentioned affordable housing production that would allow much higher FARs for, for affordable housing that could then be potentially sold to other projects in exchange for, say, moderate income inclusionary?
So the answer, Commissioner, I think, to the first question about, does it work for low and moderate? It will depend on the percentage because the state law is based on the percentage and the percentage differs based on the affordability level.
Right.
So for low income, providing 20 percent would make a project eligible for density bonus incentives. So if that's the number that you were to land on, and I don't know that that would, I'm certainly not recommending that, that could work. Moderate would be much more difficult, candidly. I think moderate could, could be a, a problem. Not for 100 percent affordable housing providers.
Excuse me, does the law specify a percentage for moderate?
The, it does. It does. And it's, forgive me, forgive me, I can't recall the number, but it's, it's higher.
Higher than 20, I saw.
It's higher, yeah. It's higher. So that could be a challenge. And T-FAR is an interesting concept, but, but T-FAR can mean many different things. So transfer of floor area...
Yes.
From where? How, how is that effectuated?
Well, I'll be specific. In the, in the uni.la People's Plan, which came out for South LA some years ago, which has some motivation, has some, looking at this question of how do you incentivize the production of affordable, of affordable housing over a base FAR, they proposed the notion of giving 100 percent affordable housing developers a six-to-one, a six-to-one FAR, which would then, which many of them wouldn't use by nature of how, you know, you go about producing affordable housing. And then that could be, the unused FAR could be transferred to market rate developers and we could potentially put, we could potentially put that to work for moderate income housing. But it's a, it's another type of density bonus where you're moving the density around rather than giving it to everybody all at once.
Let me stop you there. Saying T-FAR at this day is just right up there with saying the airport.
Okay. I'm asking questions. You, you're talking density bonuses and I'm, I'm looking at options on the way between, from, from, you know, so I'm curious.
Right, right. Yeah, it would be interesting to see if the two could interrelate. In downtown Los Angeles, really the only place in, in the city of Los Angeles where there's a active T-FAR program, you can combine both a T-FAR purchase of floor area above the base and the density bonus law. And the two have been harmonized in the down, in downtown Los Angeles. So it can be done, it has been done, and could be something worth looking at.
Because I'm not interested in building at the airport at all.
We could transfer it over to the airport.
We have to look for height somewhere else, so.
All right.
I don't know how airport even got into the staff report, frankly, but anyway. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rand.
Thank you very much.
Matt Stauffer, followed by Michael Folonis, followed by Hank Koning.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Matt Stauffer. I'm here on behalf of the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce, representing more than 700 local businesses. The chamber has long been a partner with the city in promoting Santa Monica as a destination for business. The chamber placed this ad in the New York Times in 1964 boasting, among other things, that Santa Monica has a year-round moderate climate, smog-free air, and is only minutes away from Hollywood, Disneyland, and other Southern California destinations. Today, traffic is snarled, our air quality is worsening, and we are surrounded by evidence that our climate is anything but moderate. What did we miss? The housing. The last thing this ad notes is, quote, "86,000 friendly people in Santa Monica who will make you feel completely at home." But today, the population is only 93,000, which means that over the past 55 years, we have only welcomed 7,000 new neighbors to call Santa Monica home, an increase of just 8 percent. The 90402 zip code was ranked this week as the third most expensive zip code in the country. Workers up and down the income spectrum are forced to commute from far away, sometimes for hours, in search of affordable and available housing. The reality, this reality poses a challenge to every business that we represent. Attracting and retaining a qualified workforce is one of the highest priorities of our members, and the cost of housing is the highest barrier to achieving that goal. Housing costs also severely undercut our city's ambitious climate goals. While greenhouse gas emissions continue to decline from the energy and building sectors, emissions from vehicles continue to rise as more workers become super commuters. The solution? Build more housing. I ask you take the staff report and the new arena allocation with the urgency that they both deserve. Our climate, our air, our air quality, and our economy all depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Folonis, followed by Hank Koning, followed by Jackson McNeil.
Good evening, commissioners. Michael Folonis, architect. As a practicing architect in Santa Monica for over 35 years, I'd like to share with you my firsthand experience of issues which affect the development cost of mixed-use buildings, specifically in Santa Monica. Before I begin, I'd like to say that construction costs will, will greatly vary with who you, you speak with and what you include or don't include their construction in the construction cost estimate. Three elements to consider. The time to process a building through the various city agencies, the actual board and nail construction cost, and soft cost. The timing for a housing project in Santa Monica, as we know, takes considerably longer than in Los Angeles, which adds to the overall cost of the building. In 2012, my firm was hired to design a 90-unit mixed-use project with subterranean parking located on the southeast corner of Lincoln in Colorado. The original construction budget in 2012 was $27 million. We broke ground in 2017 and the current construction cost has escalated to more than $42 million. I'm sorry. Those are millions, not thousands. The original construction, the city plan check process alone took more than a year and building plan check and permit fees were $2,755,809, which is not calculated in the construction cost. We have all seen escalating land and construction cost over the past 35 years and it will continue over the next 35. It's impossible to know that HR and H, analysis, includes soft costs in their per, per square foot construction cost. Soft costs includes, but not limited to consultants' fees, community benefits, construction financing, holding costs, legal fees, various other fees, city plan check, and building permit fees. Allow me to provide you a brief cost analysis which is based on two mixed-use projects in Santa Monica currently under construction.
Can you kind of wind it up? I'm sorry to cut you off.
I will, I will try to wind it up. Building one is... Building one is a mixed-use, a 90-unit apartment building with subterranean parking and ground floor commercial. That's $342.94 a square foot. 169 subterranean parking spaces at $9,345,764. That's $55,300 per stall. Building two is a mixed-use project, 191 apartments with subterranean parking and ground floor commercial. The point here is that there are no soft costs in these, in these construction costs. And when I quote you a construction cost of $342 or $350, these do not have any of those soft costs in there.
I think we understand that. I think Mr. Silver's numbers actually are just hard costs, so.
I'm sorry?
I think Mr. Silver's numbers that were in his report are just hard construction costs, correct? Oh, that everything? Hard costs and soft costs? I'm sorry. I shouldn't, we'll ask you that later.
Yeah, well, I'm going to go home and have supper. Thank you.
Okay. I envy you. Commissioner Landris has a question, Michael.
Michael, I had a question. Oh, well, you know what? Maybe Hank can answer it. I mean, either of you can answer it.
They're interchangeable.
Which is, they're interchangeable. I mean, all the architects here can answer it. Wait, I'm sorry. Which one of you has a cold mouth? No. I'm curious that we're going to see new housing, we're going to see a new construction code coming in next year, which I think we've all been hearing at recent, at recent DR hearings, anticipates much higher costs than even the ones you're seeing so far. So, I'm wondering if you've taken, you know, as you're looking at your projects coming down the pike for 2020 and beyond, what kind of cost increase factor you're forecasting for housing for, under the new code?
If I had an answer to that, I'd be rich. It's impossible. Absolutely impossible. It's been going up about 2% a month.
Yeah.
So, if it continues that way, we're going to, and the length of time that it takes to process a project and all the other things included, we're not going to see any more housing. And I, for one, think it would be irresponsible for us to put ourselves in that position, especially with regard to affordable housing.
And prefab is not making a dent yet, is it?
Prefab is, well, there isn't any good prefab manufacturers out there that can do the kinds of buildings that we need. If they were single units, three or 400 square foot units, or student housing, it works fine. But the kinds of stuff that we need and the site-specific things that we need, modular housing doesn't seem to work well.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Hank Coning, followed by Jackson McNeil, followed by CJ Laffer.
Good evening, Chairs and Commissioners. Hank Coning, also an architect here in Santa Monica. And I have the same concerns that Michael Folonos has. I did a quick analysis, and I apologize, it was very quick because I was out of town. But in terms of the costs of the projects, I think they're exceedingly optimistic. I'd love to get MGNA'd a bit on some of my projects. So, in comparison, I've got a project that's, parking's costing $75,000 a stall. Part of the reason for this is that the land's so expensive that people are putting things like bike parking, trash rooms, electrical rooms, the water storage requirements and the pumps needed into the garage. So, the efficiency, we used to say 375 square foot for a parking stall, it's now in the $5, $600 range, $600 square foot range. So, obviously, the cost per stall goes up. Residential type 5 construction, we're seeing $275 to $356 a square foot, not 200. Retail is at 200, not 160. And we have site work and amenities because we require outdoor living space. We need to factor that into it, and that's running about $100 to $187 a square foot. Now, you may be able to do it cheaper, but, you know, we've got an extensive review process, very concerned about design quality. If we want to get it through and get it through quickly, maybe we overcommit on the design quality, but we respect that. And the land cost, mixed-use boulevard land cost, I've heard $666 a square foot for the land cost. So, if you plug these into the equation, it really, it really changes the outlook on things, and I can see why office is looking very attractive in those charts. So, I really think that we need to look at those seriously to see what we can do. And then we have to factor in the timeframes for both approval process, construction, and the added architectural engineering fees that we find are needed in this.
We're just talking, I think he was just talking hard costs, I think. But I'll ask you the same.
Yeah, well, that wasn't clear in the reports.
Okay. Maybe you're right. I have the same question that Commissioner Landris had, and that is, for projects that are coming online in your portfolio, have you, have you factored in UBC changes that happened in January?
We have one project, but it's in Los Angeles, and we know from the mechanical engineering, they're expecting a significant fee or cost increase in construction for that.
Cost increase.
On the energy side and things like that. Now, that's great, but we have to factor it in, into the equation if we're going to incentivize housing production.
The other question I have, I think Mr. Silvern this time actually had a sort of stakeholder focus group in September to talk to all, were you in that?
No, I was not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Jackson McNeil, followed by CJ Laffer, followed by, if I wore my glasses, Angie Brooks.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I've got to hand out the Kyle's, so graciously helping handout. My name is Jackson McNeil. I'm a land use attorney with Harding, Lamoore, Kutcher &amp; Cozel. I think, like many of you, we think deep fundamental changes are needed to address housing production in the city. But we actually sent in a letter with a handful of very concrete incremental changes that can help address housing production sort of in the interim. I just want to speak about two of those really quickly. The first suggestion is to amend the definition of a housing project in the DCP to match the definition of a housing project in the Housing Accountability Act. As you know, the DCP provides incentives for housing projects. You get a little bit more FAR, a little bit more height, some process incentives. But the current problem is, it's really hard to get those incentives because the definition of a housing project in the DCP is actually really narrow. Under the DCP's current definition, a mixed-use housing project, count as a housing project, has to have at least 75% residential uses by floor area. Commercial uses can only be on the ground floor, and the commercial uses can only be so-called neighborhood commercial uses. That sort of matched up with state law at the time the DCP was passed, but state law has evolved, and I think we should too. The current Housing Accountability Act defines a housing project to just be two-thirds of the floor area to be residential uses. That's it. So, less than three-quarters, only two-thirds, and no limit on where the commercial uses can be and no limit on what the commercial uses can be. If we amend the DCP to match up with state law, besides being less confusing, it would make it easier to get the incentives that are already baked into the DCP, and hopefully that would encourage more housing projects in the downtown, ergo, more housing units. It's not going to solve the housing crisis, but it's a really easy step that we can take right now. My second recommendation is to reduce the affordability requirements for projects in the downtown. Currently, you have to...
Okay. Currently, can you just finish up with one or two sentences, please?
Sure. Sure. Currently, you're required to provide 20 to 30% of the onsite units to be affordable, depending on the height. And, you know, we're suggesting a range of 10% to 20%, and we think that that would be certainly more feasible, given that no housing has been produced downtown yet and given the sort of pessimistic view produced in the report that was attached to the staff report, which we've just heard from the architects is optimistic at best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is, what did I say? CJ Laffer, followed by Angie Brooks, followed by Barry Casely.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm CJ Laffer, also with Harding, Lamoore, Kutcher &amp; Cozel. As you explore how Santa Monica can modernize its policies to address its housing affordability crisis, I want to emphasize that it's important that this can't be addressed solely through focusing on income-restricted housing, but also increasing housing supply across the board. In fact, the staff report accordingly recognizes that the city needs to look at a broad range of factors that depress overall housing production. One factor within the city's control is to reduce regulatory uncertainty and increase opportunities for byright development of multifamily housing, for example, by increasing the thresholds below which discretionary review is not required. The city should also consider increasing development incentives for new housing discretionary projects, for example, through increased FAR and height allowances. The staff report acknowledges that low housing production has been shaped by the city's restrictive land use policies. As you heard, moving forward, HRNA will be conducting further analyses on revising the city's development standards and incentives on boulevards and in the Bergamot area, which will include physical modeling and financial feasibility analyses. As part of this effort, I would ask that HRNA take extra effort to incorporate existing market conditions in its underlying assumptions. As we heard tonight, there's, other speakers have expressed concern that certain costs like land costs and housing costs maybe aren't consistent with existing market conditions. For example, we're hearing from certain clients that land costs may be up to twice as much as what was reported in the feasibility study. And likewise, the construction costs may be too low. When basic assumptions deviate from the real-world pricing, the feasibility may not fully account for fundamentals of financial underwriting and the specific risks of project entitlement, construction, and operation. Yet, these market dynamics must be considered if the city's housing policies are to be effective in addressing the affordability crisis. As the city proceeds with subsequent phases of study, there'd be great benefit to continued engagement of the development community who can continue to provide real cost data to support the assumptions used for modeling development.
Thank you. Chair Solov has a question.
Yeah, you said at the beginning that we could help address affordability with additional market rate housing. How much market rate housing would we have to produce in Santa Monica in order to create what kind of reduction in cost?
I can't directly speak to that, but I think that's an important thing for further study by consultants.
Thank you.
When you, when you mentioned the market rate housing, the importance of it, were you assuming that that is sort of the engine that creates the inclusionary affordable units or just freestanding market rate?
I think an overall increase in the housing supply, including affordable housing and income-restricted housing, but not solely.
Okay. Thank you. Angie Brooks, followed by Barry Casely.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Angie Brooks, I'm an architect. I have worked and I'm currently working in the City of Santa Monica. I believe that good density is required for livable, affordable communities, and I encourage you to increase the density of the City of Santa Monica. We work with both private developers and nonprofit developers of affordable housing, and I have three points to make tonight for effective change. These are things that are done in other cities that I think Santa Monica could do easily. The first one is, look at type of construction. The most effective mid-rise type of construction we use is type 5. Before 1990, the building code allowed four stories and only 50 feet of height. Now, the CBC allows us to go to 70 feet and can, we can do four stories of wood over one or two stories of concrete, so up to six stories. This allows us to increase the density within the cost-effective type of construction, but not if we're limited by height. And we're limited by height in a lot of areas of Santa Monica. Currently, on Pico, we are limited for our building to 40 feet of height and four stories. We are doing 100% affordable housing, and with the pedestrian-oriented use on the ground floor, which has to be between 11 and 16 feet, it does not fit on the site because the site slopes two feet from one side to the other. Interestingly, the zoning code does allow us to put more stories in 40 feet if we do 100% affordable housing, but I can't make smaller people. So, I can't do that. So, I would encourage you to look at updating your zoning, basing it on the type of construction that's allowed to be more cost-effective. Number two, in Santa Monica, I cannot take the state density bonus in commercial zones. I can in West Hollywood, I can in the City of LA. This is where most of our affordable housing goes. So, I think that's low-hanging fruit as well. And I am proof that you are not building your affordable housing in these zones because I was approached by Step Up on Second to do a project in the commercial zone, which they eventually decided not to do because they couldn't get the amount of housing on it because you guys didn't allow the density bonus for it. And I have one more point, which is that the definition of high-rise in the City of LA is if the highest occupied floor is 75, is above 75 feet of the lowest level of fire department access. In Santa Monica, that's 55 feet. So, there's a 20-foot difference between what is considered a high-rise in Santa Monica and what is considered a high-rise in every other city. Once you're considered a high-rise, that substantially increases the cost of your building because it requires specialized stairwells and everything else, and I think that's another low-hanging fruit that other cities do. It means that six stories we can build without being a high-rise in Santa Monica, eight stories in other cities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Landris?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Brooks, your excellent exhibition at the 18th Street Arts Center Airport Campus on density is, and I was privileged to attend the panel discussion the other week, you had an interesting metric that I thought, would I, would I'd like you to expand on, which is this notion of people per, density per unit, if I understood it correctly, or density units? Because you were looking at single-family to ADU to small lot to, it struck me as a different way of approaching the conversation. Is there anything from that angle that could help us try to, because I think there's a lot of people who want to try to keep the scale in Santa Monica, but we recognize that we need to find ways to add those units without necessarily going to what Commissioner Ambries was talking about, which would be very small units.
Right. Everything is linked together. So, if you limit the height, you're limiting the density. And when you look at density kind of broadly in the region, we looked at actually population density and dwelling unit density. Santa Monica is not that dense. Venice is not that dense. And we also talked about traffic. Traffic and density don't go together either. When you look at a typical suburb, which is about six dwelling units per acre, that's kind of the lowest density, and it goes up. If we're allowed to build higher, you know, if, for four stories and 50 feet, you can, if you assume it's 60 dwelling units per acre, if you allow us two more floors, you know, you might allow us to build 100 units per acre. So, the density goes up when you don't limit the height and you don't limit the floor area, and it's just basic math. You know, it's all tied together. I think also that one of the things that we made evident in this exhibit is that the R1 zones in the region are 50% or more of our total land area. And so, if we don't tackle the R1 zones, I think we're not doing enough either. And so, I think we should follow other cities like Minneapolis who've actually looked at the R1 zones and allowed people to build more units than just an ADU in the R1 zones. In Los Angeles, we also have zones that do not allow any housing. I'm not sure that applies to Santa Monica, but the allowable area where we're actually allowed to build housing is very, very small, and it needs to be expanded.
Thank you. When does the exhibit close?
December, I think.
Commissioner Pastor?
I want to make sure I understand the high-rise definition issue. So, is that an issue with the types of building then because of our definition in our, in our code?
Yes. It's a specific Santa Monica definition of high-rise.
So, it's a, it's an amendment to the UBC that we have.
Correct. I don't know if it comes from fire or building and safety in Santa Monica, but it's specific to Santa Monica.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kameter?
Oh, sorry. I had a question.
Sorry.
I just wanted to ask a question about your point about R1 in the Minneapolis example. What is the minimum density or the minimum number of units that you think would be necessary in R1 in Santa Monica to make multifamily feasible?
So, I think it depends. And it depends because if you're going to allow more units in the R1 zone, is your R1 next to transit, for instance? You might have some R1 that's right next to transit, or you might want to allow a couple more units without parking, for instance. If it's a larger lot, you know, you might want to allow more units. So, I think it just, it depends.
Sorry, you're not done yet.
I really want to go. No, I'm kidding.
No, I also was interested in the issue of multi-unit, let's put it that way, zoning in R1. So, given what land costs are, let's start with north of Montana, where a lot, which is about an eighth of an acre, is over $3 million just for the dirt. What kind of housing do you see that could be put on there, that a developer would put on if they were allowed to actually have multi-unit housing? Would it be four, $2 million condos? What would it be?
I think the way it will start is that people, because I don't look at just the higher rent housing, I look at kind of lower and mid-ret housing. And I think what will happen is a lot of the, and maybe this isn't, maybe in Santa Monica, there are no low-rent, single-family, single-family areas, but I think those people will be able to take a single-family... single-family areas, but I think those people will be able to take a single-family house and, for instance, turn it into a duplex without doing anything else. Without -- they can go to the city, change the house to allow two front doors and kind of do minor modifications to allow a second unit by right or within the code. So I don't think developers are going to come in and start tearing down single-family houses and building three-unit projects. I think what's going to happen is people who are single-family homeowners are going to start to have a couple more units within the house that they have or as an ADU and then make -- turn their house into a duplex. I don't think this is a big opportunity for developers.
Yeah, I was more, what level of affordability of housing are we talking about? But I think you've answered the question. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. That we now -- is now legal in Santa Monica to build three units on an R1 lot?
Okay, didn't know that.
Because of state law. The other question I had, in terms of -- I know in terms of Oregon's R1 law, it's prospective. Did Minneapolis basically erase all their R1 districts? Or is it prospective?
The way I understand it is that they allow -- it's a blanket zoning over R1 that allows people to build more units if they want to, but if you don't want to, you don't have to.
Naturally.
Yeah, but it's -- that's the way I understand it.
Okay.
And I think that -- and I think the reason is because they don't expect everyone to change their single-family house into three units.
I just wanted you to be aware that we are now allowing three units on a site, and in the case of Sunset Park, the average lot is like 6,500 square feet, so, you know. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's Cassely.
It's Cassely?
Cassely, yeah.
I only have to be told 10 times and I'll get it. And Chris Harding and Tara Baroskas.
I don't want to repeat things other people have touched on, but I would like to address the last point about multi-unit opportunities and what's currently in R1 zone. I moved here from Chicago. It was a long time ago, but there are -- you know, I think inherently, R1 zoning, when it's limited to single-family homes, is very exclusionary. That kind of zoning did not really exist in Chicago. You could, on any given lot, your building envelope was defined. If you have a lot of a certain size, you could build a certain height, you had setbacks. But the person who owned the property could decide if they wanted to build a single-family home, or two units, or three units, or four units. And they weren't limited, like the ADU law does, to building, say, a micro unit for one of your units. You could decide however you wanted to disperse that square footage. You could have 800-square-foot units, you could have some larger units. And walking down the street, you could not tell what structure was a single-family home, what structure was a duplex, what was a four-unit building. Most people in Chicago, most building was actually three and four units. But the streetscape and the feel of the neighborhood, whether it was single-family or not, was essentially unaffected. And there were some neighborhoods, like north of Montana, where people tended to build more single-family homes. But there were also other neighborhoods where the predisposition to what you would build completely changed. And it led to -- it contributed tremendously to housing affordability in the city. So really, that's the one point I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chris Harding.
A limit on the number of attorneys from the single firm who can testify?
I think after Chris, we've reached it.
Kevin and Ken are not here, I noticed.
No, they couldn't make it. Good evening. Chris Harding, I'm speaking on behalf of our client, the Santa Monica Housing Council. We've been around for about 30 years. Our focus has been housing production, and we spent a lot of time dealing with Santa Monica on prior iterations of its housing element. Paul is going to talk about more immediate, concrete changes that should be made soon. I would suggest that if you make those immediate changes, by the time they take effect, you will actually benefit yourself in housing production during the 2021 to 2029 period covered by the six-cycle housing element. So that, I think, is very important. I'm going to step back and take a look from 30,000 feet at what I think your main challenges are. Wherever the REIT number lands, it's going to be much higher than it's been in a lot of years, and it's going to be an enormous challenge. And you will not be able to achieve it or come close to achieving it unless you think fresh about housing development standards and procedures and are open to making fundamental reform. If you fail to do that, you're going to fall far short. And I would point out that state housing element laws change dramatically. It's much more rigorous, enforcement is real, and I think for practical reasons, you need to take that into account. Plus, we are a responsible city, we're part of a larger state, and the challenges are statewide, not just here. Tonight on Democratic Debate, Tom Steyer made a comment that I caught on the way over here, that we have a housing crisis in California. He said we're short several million units. Senator Warren then said that our problems are largely about supply and, of course, affordability. It's a national problem, it's a state problem, we can't solve it, we should do our share. So just a few comments I would have. I've taken a look at Paul Silverman's study. I can fumble some of the details, and I will later, but it's not time-sensitive. But I would make this point. The vantage point of our clients who own land, they're not going to read a Paul Silverman pro forma and decide whether or not to sell their property. They need to be convinced that housing is a much better option than what they have on their site today, typically a profitable lease. And so I would urge you to have Paul take that broader look, or if it's not Paul, somebody else. I think that's important. One last comment.
Okay.
Rather than just complain about what doesn't work in Santa Monica, I suggest you take a look at what does work. Downtown from the mid-'90s through the first decade of the 2000s worked. Take a look at why it worked. Secondly, Lincoln Boulevard has worked in recent years, where other boulevards haven't. I think you have positive case studies you can look at and be informed by.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Soloff has a question.
Chris, if we adopted all of the suggestions you were talking about, how many affordable housing units would that create?
I don't know. One of our letter recommendations, which I didn't get to, is I think we need to take another look at how to generate revenue for affordable housing. I know you led the way on passing the last PELT measure, and that was a very good accomplishment, but it's a drop in the bucket compared to need. And so I do think that, given the sobering news from Paul's study that we can't get a lot more affordable housing just by ratcheting up the requirements on private development, we need to look at revenue, and we should look at public land as well. And I'm open to any other suggestions because it's a enormous challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tara Baroskas.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tara Baroskas, the Executive Director of Community Corpus Santa Monica. I want to start by saying that we appreciate the city's longstanding commitment to affordable housing in terms of protecting and supporting with policies that help incentivize production. So I just have a few recommendations. The first one is we currently utilize a buy-right loan and entitlement process for 100% affordable housing that's worked very well over the years. It's capped at 50 units, and we'd like to recommend that that cap be lifted to 75 units or perhaps even more. In terms of density, I think if it's done in a thoughtful way, it's a good strategy, and it's certainly a vehicle to reduce costs. We did a quick study on one of our pipeline projects on 14th Street, and if we added one more floor going from three stories to four, the back-of-the-napkin calculation is it would reduce costs by 10%. And that's because it spreads fixed costs like land costs across more housing units. So I think absolutely it's a strategy that should be considered. In terms of reducing barriers, one barrier is the transportation demand management program, which requires us to reduce our rents to provide transit passes. That's something that would jeopardize our projects, and so we will be bringing that forth separately, but I just want to put that on your radar as an example. Another example is the requirement of sometimes very burdensome or onerous off-site requirements, which add both time and cost to our projects, so we think that should be looked at as well. AB 1763, I think, could be a very good news for affordable housing, but there are a couple complexities to it that we're still trying to figure out. One of them is that it doesn't account for FAR increases, to our understanding, so even if we get three extra floors of height, FAR may be a limiting factor, so we should look at all that together. Also, it does trigger, as Leslie mentioned earlier, 20% health and safety code rents, which are $100 to $300 per month lower.
Okay, Tara, you have lots of questions, so you'll have a chance to...
Can I just make two tiny quick points?
Okay, okay.
And then I'll answer questions. So I wanted to mention the HRNA's study. There's a couple construction cost data points that I think are not consistent with our projects. We're seeing construction costs more in the 300 to 350 per square foot range, and I think the report was a little lower, so that should be looked at again. And then otherwise, I also want to agree that we need to look at ideas for generating revenue. I liked Sean's TFR program idea. I think a housing bond is something that could be looked at. I really think we need to look at all of these things. Density, cost-reduction strategies, bringing more housing funds in altogether to meet this challenge.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Flora.
Yes, Tara, thank you for being here tonight. Could you -- I want to give you a little more time. Can you expand a little bit on these ideas you have with off-site requirements?
This was specifically one project that recently encountered last-minute off-site requirements that cost over $100,000 in significant delays to our project. So it's an example of something that actually probably didn't totally need to be done. Of course, there's probably differences of opinion about that, but it, for example, it could -- the burden could be put on other types of development rather than affordable housing.
Absolutely. Continue.
For the benefit of the masses who are watching on City TV, can you talk a little bit more about off-site requirements?
Oh, just...
Examples and some things you would do to reform them?
Sure. So the specific example was repaving an alley behind the affordable housing project we were developing, which unfortunately was going to be subsequently ripped up. And so it felt like something that really could have -- maybe the burden could have been shifted to the market rate development rather than the 100% affordable housing. But there are lots of off-site requirements that we have. Most of the time, they're specified upfront, so we can properly calculate for the cost. But sometimes, in past experience, things come up during building inspections and new things get added. So it could be anything from curb and gutter, paving, lights, you know, pole relocations, anything that's not like directly on the site but adjacent to the site.
Commissioner Landris.
So just to clarify, because you mentioned the TDM program, my understanding is that your concern is that the provision of these transit passes essentially reduces the amount of rent you receive from already low-rent paying tenants, essentially, particularly at the extremely low and very low levels. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our rents are very low already. They really can't sustain any further reductions. So even though we think it's a great strategy to provide transit passes, particularly to low-income households, we think another source should pay for it, like either the state or, you know, maybe Big Blue Bus or the metro or something.
So they should continue to get them, just not -- the burden shouldn't fall on you?
That -- it renders our projects infeasible, and, you know, we have to look at them in the long term, right? These projects are operating for decades, and so, you know, operating expenses are going up, rents are not going up at the same level. So we have to do everything we can to mitigate our -- both our income and our expenses over the long term.
Right. And I would just note that we ended up, and this may be relevant to our colleagues on the Housing Commission, we heard when we had the discussion on October 16th, a number of things that weren't specifically about the issue, but were costs, outside costs, that we put into a sort of a separate bucket of things to look at later. And this is that -- this is that kind of issue that isn't necessarily about zoning or affordability, but, right?
Correct.
But the other question that I have is you build -- when you build housing, you can do tax credit financing for up to 80%, correct?
Correct.
So do you have any -- but our core issue, I mean, one of our core issues is the non-production of moderate income, which we can't get from presumably -- could you have -- do you have any provision for moderate income? Are you allowed to do any in your projects?
There's no funding mechanism for it. Anything above 80% AMI renders all of our financing moot.
Moot. So do you have any, listening to the testimony, do you have any thoughts? Because you're contributing to the, right, to the overall production of affordable units. Do you have any thoughts on what strategies might generate that upper range of affordable workforce housing that we desperately need in Santa Monica?
Yeah, I think one strategy would be to revisit the AHPP program and to take a look at having more incentives for market-rate developers to provide moderate-income housing. I think they have better mechanisms than we do to provide it.
And if we're looking at lar -- I mean, anywhere from 4,800 to 9,000 units over the next nine years, if the inclusionary -- if the inclusionary program shifts toward moderate, how much of the low and very low and extremely low can -- do you think you, as Community Corp and other affordable housing providers, can pick up?
Well, it all depends on what other, you know, incentives are put in place. I really think that providing some strategic density increases will help us a lot because it's the same amount of work to do 50 units as 60 units, right? So it's a very easy way to increase production.
Thank you.
I just want to insert that when we talk of moderate income and workforce housing are different by definition, and so I don't want to confuse it. Moderate income is generally 80 to 120 in the real world, not necessarily Santa Monica. And workforce housing is 120 to 80, although it's really kind of a nebulous definition. So they're different, and I know they're being brought up by different people.
I understand. I do think that there's many people who are making what is considered a moderate income in Santa Monica are...
Absolutely, no. I mean, clearly there is...
I mean, that's the issue, right? We have a hole there.
I'm just talking about the terms. The definitions are different.
I understand.
Okay. Commissioner Hilton.
To put into perspective, the AHPP rent and incomes, as you probably know, were revised in June 2013, and both rent and incomes were reduced across the board, and this was to benefit more lower-income communities. We weren't reaching those low-income households. The initial rent amounts under AHPP, and these are the revisions, the lower ones, were calculated at 17 and 22% of income. There's been minimal adjustments since 2013. For Community Corp, and I think your rents are 28 to 33% of income roughly, could you -- would these rents, AHPP rent, income be feasible for you, especially rent amounts?
Are you talking about like a standalone affordable housing project utilizing HPP rents versus tax credit rents? No, we ran some calculations, and the cash flows were negative, which is why we did ask for an exception on 100% affordable off-site projects.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Pastor.
Thank you. I just have a couple questions. Do you think that there is a need in Santa Monica for an option to extend affordability covenants that are expiring? Is that something that we face in this city? I know it's an issue in Los Angeles.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something that should be looked at. No net loss, I think, is super important, and I think it's something that's not being talked about enough in terms of, you know, projects that are falling out of affordability. So yes, I think they should be extended. I mean, we're certainly just nonprofits willing to extend ours in perpetuity, but other ones should be looked at as well.
And back to the TDM program for a second. Can you use your T-TAC monies or other No Place Like Home monies for things like providing subsidies for TDM or off-site?
We are allowed to do certain types of reserves. I think some of the difficulties with the TDM is that it's very nebulous and hard to calculate, and, you know, if you don't demonstrate your project feasibility upfront, you won't be able to get tax credits. So if you're assuming a TDM fee per person in the household, it could be four people, you know, it very quickly adds up to, you know, almost eradicating your entire rent for the month. So I think that's really more the problem. It's the long-term cash flow.
Okay. And I think in our previous hearing, you talked about how sort of six stories is the sweet spot. Is that right? In terms of if it goes above six stories, then you get into type 1 construction? Is that right?
Well, for us, I think going from three stories to four stories would really be the sweetest spot.
Is it just four?
But the challenge with going five stories and above is it triggers commercial prevailing wages, which...
Right.
That adds more cost. So not to say it can't be done, but it just has additional costs associated with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Soloff.
Sorry, just because there was by-play about workforce housing, at least as far as the Housing Commission's concerned, and maybe you can answer this. You have a lot of people at 80% of AMI and 50% of AMI who work, correct?
Yeah, we have a lot, yeah.
Right. So we don't believe that that's a proper term, workforce housing. There are a lot of people at very low wages who work very hard, too, so it's just for more upper-income people, so.
I agree. It's a mis...
I did not mean to imply otherwise. I'm just saying sort of in the term of the trade, workforce housing normally means 120 to 180. It doesn't mean people below that don't work. That's not...
That's why I don't really like the term personally.
We don't use that terminology because we think it's disrespectful to lower-income people who work.
All right, okay. Commissioner Fonda Bonardi?
Yes. You mentioned lifting the cap from 50 to some other number. You suggested 75. Was that based on any kind of typical project size that you're encountering? Or is it just sort of a number you thought might be acceptable? Why wouldn't we go to 100, you know, or even higher? I mean, or no limit? Just let it be determined by FAR and setbacks and all that?
Right. Well, you know, I'm certainly a fan of the higher the cap, the better. But, you know, many sites in Santa Monica are fairly small. So it was based on looking at our existing projects and going from three stories to four stories, which feels like that's not a huge change in terms of scale for a neighborhood. So that was where we came up with, you know, 75 seems like it still would be, you know, fairly tolerable on smaller sites in the city.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Hilton has another question.
It also imposes minimum interior sizes, sizes outside of the downtown. For example, a zero is a 500 minimum square feet, a one-bedroom is a 600, and a 200 is 850 square feet. What are your typical interior sizes? How do they compare?
The tax credit sizes are a little bit smaller. The one-bedroom start at about 500 square feet. We're not typically building any new studios, so I couldn't really reference that. So yes, they are slightly smaller. But obviously, that's the work of our wonderful architect partners to make sure, even though the site may be a little more compact, to really design and maximize the space it has so it looks bright and airy, like our Royal project. You know, you walk in, there's lots of light, plenty of space for all the furniture. So, you know, we try to maximize space.
Okay, I just have another question about the TDM. Are you working with city staff to try to resolve this issue?
Yes.
And hopefully, there will be a resolution.
Yes. Well, we are hoping to bring something forth to Planning Commission and City Council on the topic.
Okay. And isn't it true that these public improvements, particularly the one at 1626 Lincoln that was later torn up by the for-profit developer building the project next door, came out of housing funds?
No, it did not. Royal was not funded with any housing trust fund.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. But it could have.
It could have if it was a city-funded project, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Frank Murphy, and then Dario Alvarez, and Paula Larmar. That answers your question. Five attorneys. Were you the one who raised it?
It was.
I know.
I'm Frank Murphy, and I messed up. I didn't put my card to cede my time over to Dario. So we're both speaking on the same topic with the same...
So you have...
I think he had another, I think he had another two people on his. But just a real quick, I was just dealing real quickly with the housing stock. And there was a question earlier about the types of units that are built and the 1 to 2s and the 2 to 4s, blah, 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 blah. We did all of that on that, you see that graph that has the mountain in there? And that's over all the decades and the housing that still exists throughout those decades that still exist today. And what our point is, is that the 92% of your housing is in the 1 to 50s. And what's happened is, is over the last couple of decades, it's shifted. And yet, the housing stock that's been built over the last couple of decades, each decade from the 90s to 2015, has had less housing stock produced than what still remains from the Depression era, 30s to 39. And one of the things that, you know, we're always talking about subsidized housing and affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. But the one thing that's skewing all of this is the fact that, you know, supply and demand are not in sync. And that seems to be happening region-wide, obviously. So that's going to impact the coastal areas the worst because they're the most desirable areas. Everybody wants to move there. So if you take someplace like, but...
Is that three minutes? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, so I, thanks.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I distribute something to the commissioner?
Sure. And please state your name.
Evening, Commissioners, Chair Lambert, Chair Soloff. My name is Dario Rodman Alvarez. I'm the Principal of Pacific Urbanism. We're a community planning and research consulting firm that's been researching the housing crisis in the Los Angeles region for the last five years, five to six years. And with my very limited time, I'd like to maybe just state five points that I'd be glad to follow up with any one of you individually, if you'd like to meet, about the results of our research. I'd like to tell you guys what we've been doing, what information we've gathered, tell you about some of the results and some of the gaps we've identified, potential gaps we've identified in the current approach towards housing and some opportunities as well. So we've been gathering data from the U.S. Census Bureau, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Tax Assessor data. And what we've arrived at is, as Frank mentioned, a current inventory of the housing stock for many places in the Los Angeles region, but specifically for the city of Los Angeles you have in front of you by building type and by decade. And what you can see is the plummet in the supply of housing from about the 60s onward. In the last two decades, you've had less housing than you have remaining from the decade of the Depression, which is the comment that Frank made. Other than that, we've been able to notice an association between areas that have downzoned their dwelling unit capacity and have lost net dwelling units. There's a 50-year map that shows a red dot in census tracts that Santa Monica has lost housing and an increase in sales price for housing. So what we're seeing is this approach towards conservation is actually producing an increase in the housing price, which is noticeable in census trends, specifically in the median household income. Because we've noticed that although households are not increasing in their income, the trends in Santa Monica are towards a greater median household income, which is a proxy for displacement. So by limiting the amount of housing that can be built, the housing is becoming more expensive in more affluent households. I believe I had two minutes seated to me if I might take those.
For whom?
By two gentlemen there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Just really quick. Don't want to take a lot of anyone's time. But I think it's important to note that the approach towards not building is actually contributing to displacement because the high prices are pricing current households out of Santa Monica. And this is, you know, influencing things like the high-end commercial that's changing the character of Santa Monica. The higher-income households are the ones being served by the higher-end shops that are different. So the current trend is to focus on the largest building type, the building types with 50-plus buildings. And those have historically provided about a seventieth of the housing supply that you need today. And so the, one methodology that we've developed and is in your book, which I'm glad to talk in more detail, is look at taking various metrics, several variables, and analyzing them spatially to allocate the housing need based on your current RENA target for 2029 in order to try to create more fairness, ameliorate skyrocketing housing prices, reduce traffic. And on that, very briefly, you have 80,000 vehicle trips into Santa Monica every day for people who work in Santa Monica who do not live here. About half of those are low-paid, low-wage jobs, retail and food service. And so the traffic in Santa Monica is largely being driven by folks who work here but cannot afford to live here. Therefore, if you contribute to, if you foster, remove the hindrances to the accessory dwelling units, remove parking minimums, things of that nature, and allow the market to provide more of the dwelling units that people in Santa Monica, people who work in Santa Monica, need, you can reduce traffic, reduce high housing costs. And the decade of the 60s is really a model to follow because it, in essence, created, supplied the number, the same target number that Santa Monica needs by 2029.
Thank you very much. Chair Soloff has a question.
Yeah. Other than deed restricted affordable housing, how much just housing would we have to create to bring the prices down to where those people you're talking about could afford to live here?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the RENA target, the new RENA target of 9,000 dwelling units by 2029 is a really good start. As you know, it's more than the previous RENA targets. About double that would be what a previous policy document had proposed to arrive at a market equilibrium. Other folks in the policy world use the metric of two adults-per-market dwelling unit. So the analysis can be done with an H pyramid to look at the market dwelling units that you have, market rate dwelling units that you have, and the adult population. So in numbers, you need 10,000 dwelling units by 2029, or better yet, 10,000 by 2025 in order for the market to be at an equilibrium and allow more dwelling units to be naturally affordable without subsidies.
I just want to ask a clear question. Where do you think those 10,000 or 15,000 housing units would go?
That's a good question. So in your booklet, you have the methods for our approach, and we've done it by census tract level. So the 10,000 dwelling units are distributed based on their score of five metrics, five values, which include downzoning, the affordability, transit scores, opportunity, number of jobs, and environmental quality. So we use a spatial analysis approach to include all of these metrics and distribute the 10,000 homes in census tracts.
I guess, I mean, the critography is wonderful, but how do you deal with the people actually on the ground who live there? I mean, how do you sell this plan to people who live in Santa Monica?
I think, yeah, no, I think it's a really, we've been speaking to people in Santa Monica, and I think there are two, you know, low-hanging fruits to call them. The ADU ordinance is certainly one of them because it preserves them.
How would you change, we just did an ADU ordinance. How would you change it?
I would foster removing parking requirements.
We already have.
Okay, perfect. So any other things that come through, certainly reducing the permitting time in Santa Monica, which is different from other places.
ADU is ministerial. It's over the counter.
Even over the counter is lengthy in Santa Monica, in my experience. And so the building type of between 16 to 24 dwelling units is another one that can be fostered. And where specifically, I'd be glad to look at a microscale at it. And I've provided at a census tract level where those can go.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I've been taking Commissioner Landris' time. I'm sorry.
Well, it's helpful. I mean, I think when you say 16 to 24 units, do you mean units per acre or units per parcel?
No, the building type. So you have an inventory that shows dwelling units by building type.
Okay.
In terms of density, that building type would fall into 47 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. And then I'm looking, I think, you know, I have two questions coming off this data, which is really helpful in terms of how we think about this. One is, if we go to your page 17, which is the counts and density of all jobs and work selection area in 2017, I'm kind of following along what Chair Soloff was asking earlier. If I'm looking, you point out accommodation in food services, workers at 14.4%. The next highest would be information. It's professional and scientific is at a higher level. Have you mapped this against sort of average and median incomes for these occupancy types? I'm thinking about the work that I think Peter was involved with and others in the Downtown Community Plan where they were actually looking at occupation types by income and anticipating who could afford to live where, and then mapping that against affordability. Have you done any of that work?
We have the data, but what we've been focusing on is the inventory and this method for allocating the distribution of housing. But if there's a specific hypothesis that you're curious about us testing, we'd be happy to test that. What is the specific question?
Well, I think would be, well, that is the specific question, is have you looked at what levels of affordability would be required to actually move the needle for a particular category of worker who is traveling a great distance to reach Santa Monica from home that's currently barely affordable, what we would try to make affordable enough that they would consider moving into our city to raise their family and pursue their work? The second question that I have is, have, given the desirability of, say, reducing commutes and increasing equity in housing by reducing those commutes for those folks, have you looked at federal and state requirements related to local preferences and the limitations of those that we could, you know, do you have a workaround for us so that we could actually prioritize that?
I'd be happy to take that topic and research it further. I don't have a recommendation for you at this time. I'd be happy to take that.
Let me just say, fair housing laws, you cannot discriminate based on place of employment. So you'd have to change the fair housing law.
Yeah, I think maybe we're, the point is not being taken. But the production of dwelling units in Santa Monica today is half of what it was in the Great Depression.
Understood.
And you need more production. To Chair Lambert, to your question of how the locals can swallow the plan of where the housing ought to go, two main issues in our research have come up: traffic and the changing character of districts based on these high-end, the high-end character that doesn't necessarily represent folks who have lived in Santa Monica for a very long time. And two associations we've noticed is that, one, the traffic is driven by folks driving very long distances and therefore by allowing that market to provide more dwelling units and allowing the market to reach an equilibrium, folks can choose where to live based on where they work. And second, in terms of the character of these high-end shops and such, as the census data show, there's residential turnover, residential displacement based because of the increase in housing price. And the new character of the businesses are serving these newer, more affluent communities.
Call gentrification. Okay. Commissioner Reese?
Thanks. You alluded to, you know, spatial distribution of the housing. Are there general trends that you looked at in your data of where units could go? I know when Commissioner Lambert asked you about location, specific location, you said you would look into specifics. But are there trends that we can look at and areas where your studies have showed this you go?
I'm not sure if I'm following the specific question, but you have your permit data, which has a location, a geographic location. And so we can look at where your current development is occurring. I think the point, the larger point is that development is not occurring. And the policy eggs are being put in this transit-oriented basket, this largest building-type basket, which historically has produced very little housing. So is the question that you would like to see where development is occurring?
Well, the question, I think, is, and maybe there isn't an answer to it right now, and we're going to struggle with this over the next 10 years, is we have to build a significant amount of housing, and we need to find the right locations to put it. I think common theory now is that you put it in your transit centers and you put it in your job centers so that people don't have to drive. And I'm wondering if there's something more cutting-edge than those types of theories.
There is, there is. So that is one of the dominant paradigms in the planning field, and it's dominated planning conferences for the last decade and such. And that's a great approach, and it should continue. However, it's an incomplete approach because it will not provide the number of dwelling units that Santa Monica needs in order for houses to naturally arrive to affordable levels. And so the approaches that you're seeing coming down from the state are policies such as ADU that are requiring upzoning across the board. And so the recommendation might be to not only focus on transit-oriented developments that tend to be by fewer number of builders, tend to be slower to offload onto the market, and tend to really only benefit the very large builders, but to allow the community to add on to their homes, to foster, to incentivize, and frankly, to develop capacity in the local youth to be the people who are doing the building so that they can also benefit from the lucrative business, which is development.
Okay. And just a follow-up question. What's the name of your research?
Pacific Urbanism.
And where do you guys get your funding for your work?
We've received funding from builders. We do volunteer fund, I mean, we volunteer a lot of our work. And we've done work for the Venice Neighborhood Council as well. You know, volunteer when we can and do work as consultants when people need it.
As high-paid commissioners, we appreciate your volunteerism.
We'll share some with you.
It's a joke.
No, I get it. We're all here at the hour.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come.
Oh, please. Thank you.
Paul Alarmar, and then Nick Roth, probably heard that wrong, and Luis De La Roca.
Good evening, Commissioner, or both Commissions. Paul Alarmar, Harding Alarmar, Kutchin Cozel. I appreciate that staff report for tonight is finally acknowledging the reality that we've been seeing in the city, at least for the past three years, which is that are very few housing projects being pursued. And the few that have been filed are underdeveloping, underdeveloping their sites to avoid city regulations, DRP, DA, the increased affordable housing percentage, or the unit mix requirements. The city needs to fundamentally rethink its approach to housing. In the past 10 years or so under the loose, the city decision-maker mentality has been, the developers come to you, they want to build, how much can you developer give me? I want to make sure that the city isn't leaving a dime on the table, that we're getting enough onsite affordable, TIF, parks fee, cutting-edge sustainability, all of these things that, yes, the city is well-intentioned in doing, but we're in a different world. The city is going to have to start thinking about how to incentivize property owners to redevelop their property, how to look at a property owner and say, I know you have a very profitable, single-story commercial building and a lot of service parking, but what can I do to make you build housing? It's a very different thought process, one that we're not familiar here with in Santa Monica. However, this is going to take some time, right? And I assume that the city is going to need to fundamentally revise standards, process, and incentives. And the city should not accept the status quo in the meantime and continue to stagnate housing production. I sent you an email with five items that the city could implement immediately, and we've seen as barriers to real housing projects that our clients would like to consider proposing in the city. I actually have some clients where I'm begging them to choose the housing option, and it's hard to do. I'm happy to go through the list of five. Jackson and CJ both talked about some of them. You've got to reduce your...
Can you, can you bring it to a close, please?
Sure. You've got to reduce your inclusionary housing provisions to something that is feasible. We've seen 10% work in the past outside of the downtown and 10 to 20% work in the downtown, and eliminate the DA requirement, among others.
Thank you. We have a couple of questions. I just want to, I certainly do not want to stifle any questions or conversation, but we haven't even gotten to the staff questions or discussion yet, so I don't know if we can somehow move a little faster, maybe, or not. Chair Soloff?
Thank you. There are 1,000 housing units that have been approved but are not yet in construction. How many of those are your clients?
When, in what timeframe are the 1,000 units approved?
I'm talking about what was in the staff report that shows that there are 1,000 units that have been approved but are not yet in construction. I assume you read the staff report?
I did not read all of the minutia about the 1,000 units and what the timeframe. I'm telling you, since 2017, with the new inclusionary program, there hasn't been any new units filed. Thank you.
Commissioner Landers?
I just wanted to pick up your, particularly your process issues related to moving away from DAs for housing to Drs. Do you spell that out a little bit in terms of how we might streamline, specifically streamline, housing production on the, on the city side, right?
So, in the downtown, which, there's very few places now you can still do a tier-three project, a DA project, but in the downtown is one of them. It's a very narrow portion in the transit-adjacent district. There are, there are some sites where the property owner could do a tier-three project or is looking to do a tier-three project, but the DA is the reason they're not, and they're thinking of doing a tier-two project. So, if the city were to get rid of the DA, it would incentivize them to build more housing and try to achieve the higher level of affordability.
Are you suggesting that the downtown standards be extended outside the downtown as well?
No.
The 90,000, the 75, 90?
Yeah, so on the DR threshold, yes, yes. Sorry, for the DA. And on the DR, we are asking that the threshold, outside of the downtown, you have to do a DR for anything over 15,000 or 10,000 square feet essentially, and anything over tier-two regardless of size. So, we're asking for 90,000 square feet.
All right, thank you very much. Nick Roth, did I hear that right? Rudy, Rudy Matthews-Brown, or Matthews-Brown, he already, he did what?
He assigned his time.
All right. And so did Nick Roth. Well, there were a bunch of people, Daria. So, Rudy's, Carl Hansen, and then Matthew Stevens, and then Ellis Raskin. And that's it.
I'll be really quick, so you can get to your discussion here, Commissioners. Carl Hansen, resident of Wilmont and the edge of the downtown here in Santa Monica, speaking for myself, and I guess many of my friends who are in the beginning part of their careers, struggling with the high cost of housing and living in this world. I think I wanted to speak to a question Commissioner Soloff, you raised earlier about new market rate production and its importance, and how many units need to be produced. I think any new units help in a shortage. The analogy I've liked that I didn't create, but is musical chairs, in that, you know, my generation has grown up into a game that hasn't put enough chairs, new chairs into the game. And the burden of that is huge. And any new chair is a new place for someone to sit. And certainly, those new chairs go to the wealthiest people, so it's hard to see the value of it. But it's a new chair in the game, and that's, that's what matters for market rate housing. Just speaking to a couple of other things, I think, you know, Santa Monica has been a leader in so many areas, sustainability, labor issues, you know, even, you know, being the first city to adopt scooter policy that other cities have looked at. I think we have a similar opportunity and responsibility to be a leader here that other cities in California that have been quite reluctant to build new housing can look to us and see how this can be a real good thing. We're finally addressing a really serious issue in the state, both for income equality, for the environment, and transportation. So, I think this is an exciting time. I look forward to your discussion and encourage you to adopt a plan that not only zones for new housing, but actually has the incentives and the realism to ensure that those housing units be produced. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carl. Matthew Stevens?
Hi, my name's Matthew Stevens. I live in the Worcester, Montana neighborhood. I don't want to take too much time, we'll just agree completely.
I didn't mean to like cut everybody short by my statement. I mean, take as much time as you want, as long as it's not more than two minutes.
No, I mean, I don't want to repeat a lot of what's said. I just, I agree completely with the previous speaker. Every new unit helps, including market rate housing. Santa Monica today, the median home value is 1.6 million. Unless you make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, that's not affordable. So, for my generation, the doors are pretty much closed on Santa Monica. I think among my generation, it's not controversial. We need more homes. We need more affordable homes. We need more market rate homes. And I hope that the approach that you guys take considers that. And I hope that you consider building not just downtown, not just in the boulevards, but everywhere in the city. We've denied housing for decades, and it doesn't work.
Thank you so much. And finally, Ellis Raskin.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, I'll just make just a few really quick points. I'll just add my voice to the chorus of people who say that no matter what approach the city takes, we should be very cognizant of approaches that displace and burden those who are the most disadvantaged and at most at risk of being displaced from our community. Two points that I don't think have been brought up. One, within the next 10 years in this RENA cycle, the city will probably have to go through the process of implementing the LUP for the city and creating an LIP in the Cozel Zone. So, that could be an opportunity to facilitate the development of more affordable housing, especially in areas that can attract those projects that will finance affordable units. One other point that is not really applicable to this RENA cycle, but should be, the long-term goal of the city is working with Caltrans, the Department of Transportation, to think about how we can reuse some of that freeway land. It's something that's worked in San Francisco and other cities. It's not something that's obviously going to happen in the next 10 years, but in terms of where we're going to put housing, I think the freeway land is something we should look at. So, thank you for the time.
I'm sorry, would you, the freeway land, what did you say?
Oh, I mean, just redeveloping the land where the I-10 is now. You know, I don't think that the freeway is an integral piece of infrastructure for the city. I think that it's land that can be used for better purposes.
I'm actually involved in, and I'll ask the question, in the Hollywood Cap Park project, which is talking about putting a lid over the Hollywood freeway. That's another way to think about building housing.
Yeah, that's one way to do it, for sure.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a quick question, because it hasn't come up a lot, which is displacement. We've, we've had some correspondence about it, but SB 330 provides some new anti, some new displacement protections. When we're thinking about this conversation, not only looking at affordability mix, but protections of existing neighborhoods and specific people, do you have, do you have any suggestions that we should be thinking about? We've talked about displacement.
Yeah, I think that there are many ways in which you can kind of think about it in the broader development context. One that I've been an advocate of is really being careful about how that's disclosed in the SEQA process, and at that point, thinking of ways to mitigate displacement as a SEQA mitigation measure. I think that if you do it as part of the Ellis Act process, or as part of, you know, essentially just buying out people from apartments, it's often too late, and oftentimes, there's not an opportunity for the city to really control the way in which that mitigation is implemented. So, I think that SEQA can be used productively to facilitate, or lessening the impact of displacement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Reese?
On that SEQA question, you know, when the new RENA numbers come out and we're out of compliance, people are going to be using SB 35, and there will be no SEQA process. So, the interesting part will be, what do we do then? I don't want to take the time tonight, but to the extent you have thoughts on that and could share them with us in the future, we'd appreciate it. Because SEQA has been used to stifle development as much as it has been to help the environment, and the state has stepped in and really stepped that back.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share thoughts about that in the future, and our time is limited, so I'll talk to you more about that later.
Thanks so much, Ellis.
Thank you.
Okay, that is our last speaker, and I am going to call for a break and pass the torch to Chair Soloff. Not now, when we come back. The question is, how am I going to let you know I'm going to speak, since I don't have the request to speak button?
You'll be Chair Soloff.
What? No, we're not going to change chair. Okay, we don't...
How long are we talking? An actual 10? I hope, can I vote for an actual 10, like, no more? Thanks. Thanks. I'm...
How long are we talking? An actual ten? I hope, can I vote for an actual ten, like, no more? Thanks. I'm...
... Okay, that is our last speaker, and I am going to call for a break and pass the torch to Chair Soloff. Not now, when we come back. The question is, how am I going to let you know I'm going to speak, since I don't have the request to speak button?
You'll be Chair Soloff.
What?
You'll be Chair Soloff.
No, we're not going to change chair. Do you want to? Okay, we don't...
How long are we talking? An actual ten? I hope, can I vote for an actual ten, like, no more? Thanks. I'm... Okay, we're calling the meeting... Okay, we're calling the meeting back to order. Please sit down, thank you. Okay, we're now at the phase of the meeting where people are allowed to ask questions, or I should say commissioners are allowed to ask questions of staff, and I think we also have HRNA here, if people have questions of them. So if anybody has questions, push your button and go into the queue. Commissioner Flora.
Yes, thank you, Chair Soloff, and thank you, my fellow colleagues on both commissions, for everyone's questions thus far this evening. I wanted to ask, you know, just a very quick statement. I think that early part of the evening, the fact that it was stated that Prop R goals had been pretty tough to meet without a push for public and other sources of funding, really goes to a lot of what a lot of us have been talking about, at least within the SMUR community, and that is, we're looking at a pretty tough new RENA allocation. I think it's certainly welcome, at least I welcome the challenge, but to get the affordable units we need, we're going to need, we're going to need funding sources. And I really, I really just do not believe that Santa Monica can ever, Santa Monica can ever simply build its way to affordability. You know, you could build 50,000 market rate units, and it's just, affordability just isn't going to poof, all of a sudden, happen. So, I think, you know, from our commission...
Commissioner Flora?
Yeah. I'll get to questions, I promise.
Okay, thank you. Because this is supposed to be questions, not discussion.
Yeah. I'd like to ask the staff, because my focus is on the affordable housing side. It was mentioned that there are 77 suitable sites. Can you help me understand, does that mean sites that are currently available, or just sites that would be optimal? Are they already within some sort of city loc, focus of control? How many of them are city-owned or public land, for example?
So, this, 77 suitable sites, this is in the current housing element. So, these are sites that are, they are not within city control. Like I was explaining, you know, through the exercise, you have to identify sites that represent realistic development potential that could accommodate, you know, the existing our fifth cycle RENA. So that's what these 77 sites represent. They were chosen based on, basically, they grew out of the loose growth management strategy. So you can see where the dots are located, the concentration of where they are, largely within the downtown, along the commercial boulevards. It's, sorry, this map is a bit hard to see, but this, I can just show you here. This is the downtown here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand, but would they need to be, by suitable, I mean, would they need to be converted from some other use?
Yeah, I mean, within, within Santa Monica, I can count probably on like, one hand, the amount of sites that have nothing on it.
Yeah, right. There's not a lot of...
You know, the vast majority of not all of the, you know, the development we see is redevelopment of existing use.
I'm still learning a lot, and even after eight years on the rent control board, I have to say, there's a lot of terms, you know. We had opportunity sites going for a while, and people didn't like that term, so I just wanted to know what suitability meant. Thank you very much. And can I also ask, why, I understand the objectivity that goes into a static study. You want to study what feasibility would look like under current conditions, under current zoning ordinances. But it doesn't necessarily help me to make any decisions about what we would need to do without some projections of what an extra story or two would have meant to studies like this. So, is the reason we don't do projections because you don't want, the staff does not want to appear to be proposing or advocating a particular change?
So, the reason, again, tonight's the HPP study you have before you is a progress update. So the reason it studies existing sites is that that was the direction from council to study increased affordability, but only existing standards. That's actually why we're here tonight, you know. You could certainly provide input as to other kinds of scenarios to study, including additional floors or what have you, so different development standards, that's certainly something, you know, that you could provide commentary.
Okay, but that was council's request.
That was the narrow scope we were given, that's what we...
Okay, well...
Can I, I'm sorry to interject, I just want to add is that we actively hit the pause button at a moment in time, probably around like, August, September, as the RENA cycle became more focused on changing the methodology, and we saw that allocation starting to spike. So we had the same question that you had, is what is the practicality of pursuing a feasibility study based on existing standards, when in all likelihood, the state will force us to evaluate new scenarios?
Yeah, that's great context. Like, that direction from council was given in June, right? Or something earlier than that?
Right, before the alternative motion was even offered.
Yeah, before, like, well before that, yeah, months, so...
Okay. All right. That's helpful to me, thank you.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Okay, I have several questions, and any of you can answer them, hopefully. And something following up on Commissioner Flora's question, which is, when we build these new buildings, we end up inevitably destroying other buildings, whether they're businesses or residential buildings at a lower scale, whatever, we end up having a net loss. Now, in the worksheet that they use to create our RENA numbers, we show zero demolition in the last eight years. So that seems to me a big omission, because we were told that demolitions were being carefully tracked. Is that something that we should be aware of?
We, you know, we didn't create the sheet, so I don't know. I have to look into what the basis of that category means, actually, so...
Okay, so, so the next question is a follow-on to that. When we lose units through demolition, we are also losing units through, let's say, corporate rentals. We're also using, losing units to Airbnb. Where do those units go? In the universe of units?
You mean the ones that are converted to other kinds of, I mean, it's, they're still, they're still units?
They are. Are they in fact still units, even though their rental structure might be substantially different?
They're still existing dwelling units.
But are they factored into the average rents, for instance?
For the purposes of this study, or...
Or any study. This study in particular, but in any study.
Well, this is, but, so this study is about, like, production of a different kind, so in terms of, number one, you know, we don't always know when things are rented in that way, and I think we know from our discussion of corporate housing that the definition of, you know, even across the commission, of what everybody conceives as to, you know, whether it's month-to-month or something like that, you know, it varies quite significantly. The city is not necessarily privy to, you know, when something goes from a one-year lease to a month-to-month lease, and what that means. But in our eyes, if something is, you know, what would go on is what is approved, what's permitted. If something happens without our knowledge, illegally, what have you, that's not going to be something that we're necessarily tracking if we're not aware of it.
Well, I guess the same way you put in a fudge factor for some vacancy, it seems that there's another fudge factor that has to account for the slow hemorrhage of units that are being essentially repurposed. And even, and I don't know if the people who are living in those units, whether they are corporate visitors or tourists, are they considered part of our 90,000, or are they also invisible?
Well, I think one thing to be aware of, and you're extending my memory here, from the corporate housing staff report, you know, we were looking, one of the things we looked at was to try and find data points to understand the scale of that issue. One of the major, major problems we have is the lack of verifiable concrete data. A lot of the data that we get is anecdotal. You know, it's hearsay from tenants or what have you.
Sure, it's black market data.
Yeah, exactly.
It shouldn't exist.
It's not like the city issues a permit for an illegal, you can't, you know, it's, it is what it is. And so when you look at the scale of what, I mean, corporate housing is not allowed in the city, so, you know, when we issue permits, again, you know, it's based on, you know, what is compliant, what you're permitted for. We certainly can't assume or speculate, you know, based on potential legal behavior that we don't have, you know, great data to understand the scale of. We attempted our best to try it, to present that, you know, in the scale of the number of housing units based on like, complaints received and what have you. It was a relatively small percentage of the overall housing stock in the city.
So, the next question I have is, we're supposedly going to make 9,000 units over the next, the next eight years. To me, that sounds like a pipe dream. It sounds like one of those five-year communist plans where they're going to triple the corn production, but they don't have triple the area, you know? It just seems like it's wishful thinking, it's just... Now, somewhere along the way in the process, you all wrote a letter advocating for a certain methodology that should be more reality-based. What was in that letter to the RENA, let's say, chefs, who are cooking the books, you know?
Yeah, it's almost a little bit irrelevant once in that letter, because it was commenting on methodologies that aren't even, it was like, two or three conversations ago, you know?
But it embedded some realism in terms of what we could realistically hope to achieve, given everything we know.
Certainly. Yeah, it was, it was expressing, I think, support for what we called it, it was a modified option one, at the time, you know, when SCAG had released different options for methodologies. And the basis of that one was, I think, you know, there was consideration for a variety of inputs into the model. I will say, none of them are included anymore. You know, for example, they had, at one point, thought to include like, existing permit data, or like, prior permit performance, that is actually not a factor.
Well, had they taken your methodology, what number, what RENA number would have emerged from that?
We actually didn't calculate that out, because it was, the SCAG tools, they had published Excel sheets, similar to what's attached to your report, you know, based on the methodologies that were presented. And so that's what, we were looking at that, but they were just like, rough order of magnitude estimates, so we didn't run specific numbers, you know, to come up with a different...
So, the most important slide I thought we saw was the huge RENA numbers, and the incredibly small number of, quote, qualified or available sites, you know. We're now down to 68, and we have to produce 9,000 units. Now, let's say, the criteria is getting worse on those available sites, qualified sites, whatever they call them. Do you feel that the number of sites will go up or down in your next round of reviews, given their current standards?
Well, this is, again, this is, the 77 sites were associated with the currently certified housing element, so with...
Right.
The allocation of 1674, with a capacity of 3,700, we have not done the analysis yet as to what it means to comply with whatever number, you know, again, that process is not complete, we don't know what that number is. I will note that this process is, you know, we don't know how it's going to unfold. You know, going back to your kind of earlier opening comment about 9,000 units is a lot of housing, that is more than the city has ever historically produced, ever, you know. I think we can all agree, like, that's, whether that's reality or what have you, I think, you know, understanding how is that process going to unfold, we don't know yet, you know. Will, you know, some level of reasonableness creep into this? You know, it's honestly, it's out of our hands, you know, at this point. And, you know, I think that's why the numbers are being provided as context, just, you know... Um, and, you know, I think that, that's why the numbers are being provided as context, just, you know, in terms of helping you understand what's going on. Um, but I think the one thing that we can surmise is that we're going to get a higher allocation than before. Precisely what that number is is almost immaterial, you know, to the conversation at this point in time.
Well, um, and if we were to just to look at our own standards and use any of the models that Paul Silvern developed, and we just looked at the boulevard and said, how much capacity is there on the boulevard? Is there capacity for 9,000 units? Or maybe there's capacity for 20,000 units? Given existing zoning only, no market forces, no age of buildings, none of that at all. If you just look at the availability that we currently have in our current zoning, what would that number be?
You know, the, the best source of information I could provide to you would be from, um, when we did the DCP EIR. Um, so in the loose EIR, we studied, uh, 4955, uh, housing units was what was forecasted in the loose total, citywide. Um, and that was the period like, you know, through 2030. Um, with the downtown.
Forty-nine fifty-five, did you say forty-nine to fifty-five?
Forty-nine fifty-five, right? Yeah, forty-nine fifty-five. Um, and then with the downtown community plan EIR, um, because, you know, downtown was kind of like a donut hole, um, within the loose, um, that added another 26, was it 2,600-ish? 23 to 2,600 units. I don't exactly remember. Um, so that was on top, you know, of the 4955. So if you look at like total capacity, I don't know, you know, six, yeah.
So not even two-thirds of what we're being asked to do, bottom line.
Yeah, and, and you know, I mean, you heard us comment, um, you know, at, at, in, in your October meeting, right? This is, um, you know, we hit the pause button because looking at what was unfolding, this does cut, you know, to the heart of, uh, a lot of the land use planning and, you know, it has happened over decades, um, in the city and, you know, the values, um, of this community. Um, and, you know, I think it's, it's important to have that, have that conversation now, um, you know, given what, you know, these directives that are coming at us.
So the other big donut hole that's been absent this conversation is sustainability. So if you add 20% to our population, it completely blows out our water sustainability independence we're supposed to achieve in the next couple of years. Uh, why is that not discussed? Why is that not been one of the modeled limitations? Why is that not part of our discussion? It exists on paper, uh, but we are just on our way to not meet it and we keep pushing back the deadline.
It, it can be. I, you know, we're at the beginning of this conversation, so certainly that would be.
And likewise, the analogous discussion is, we've had this conversation before, is we have yet to find out a way of building net zero buildings that are taller than three stories. Even you take this building here, it is completely covered even onto our parking lots with solar collectors. It barely qualifies. It's a great building as far as meeting sustainability goes. But when you walk that out, when you scale it up to a whole city, when we're talking about six, eight, seven-story buildings, they are a sustainability, uh, let's say, crime. There's no way to make those buildings pencil out from a sustainability side. They may pencil out from an affordability side, even though I doubt it, they won't, but you might make an argument. Uh, but again, we have not talked about these limitations that we are building in and we need to build in to make our city truly sustainable. So where does that fit in?
I, I mean, I, I think it fits into the overall conversation about, um, you know, choices and, you know, what are the values of this community? And, you know, I, I think, you know, we're, we're here tonight to listen, to take in that commentary and share it with the council in terms of, you know, all of the factors that should be considered. Um, you know, I think one thing that we've advocated for is that this, the city, you know, has supported housing, supports housing production, but we're at a point in time where I think we're forced to sort of re-reflect and, you know, look at how do we, um, you know, continue to, that, that arc of production, but also remain true, you know, to, to our values of the city, of, of which sustainability is, is a core value. Um, and you don't have, we don't have an answer, you know, as to what that is, but, um, certainly, uh, you know, should be part of the conversation.
And last question I have is, uh, the most interesting graph I thought was the rents that in apartments are now higher than they are in commercial office or retail. Is that a window of opportunity? Rents per square foot.
Are they higher than?
Than office rentals? In all three of our districts, there were study, the square foot rent for apartments, there was $5 a square foot, the other ones are $4, $3.50, $4.85, whatever they were, they all varied. But the housing rents, the afford, the rental housing rates are higher than the commercial rates. And is, does that mean that it is time to look at these commercial buildings and say, rather than build new buildings, we should be repurposing or rezoning office buildings? Retail stores, we're told about the death of retail as we know it for housing or various live-work arrangements, however you call those. But is that something that we should be looking at and is that something that we could ask HHR, whoever the?
Certainly, we, you know, I think all ideas are on the table. The, the purpose of the study, you know, is to look at likelihood, how can, how can you make it more likely that someone will pursue residential? Whatever that means, we've not defined that, whether it's redevelopment, whether it's conversion as you're suggesting. You know, I think we can take that, take that input in.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Camner?
Um, I actually have all the Rena numbers in front of me right now, so if I could just share them. So Santa Monica supported option one, which was about 6,000 units. That was the lowest of the three original options considered. The other ones were 8,000. So that provides some context for that. Um, anyway, so, um, uh, I had some questions about the, um, the current housing element and the suitable sites. Um, you, you, you mentioned that only eight sites on that were completed. And so I would just like to learn more about why only eight sites were completed um, and whether that kind of rate of production is going to be factored into the number of sites that we select for the next housing element? Are we going to make sure that we, um, select many times more of the number of sites that are needed just, uh, to reach the Rena target considering the fact that so few of them are going to be built out?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, uh, you know, selecting the suitable sites went through, you know, filters um, for the current element, um, you know, whenever you go through, um, that sort of exercise, not dissimilar to like a build-out, you know, likelihood of, of build-out. Um, you know, that was based on the information, best available information that was available at the time. Um, you know, the city only sets the regulation, but the, you know, the choice of why someone moves forward or doesn't is, you know, those are factors that are beyond our, our control many times. Um, but that is informative, uh, with respect to the criteria, you know, looking forward at the sixth cycle. Um, and, you know, our, this is just our, our preliminary understanding of it. We'll have to dig deeper, you know, as to how HG actually interprets and applies this criteria. But you can see the third point there in terms of recycling of sites from prior housing elements. You know, that's where they'll take a look at like the remaining 69 sites. And kind of, you know, I think we'll have to look at it as well, you know, why didn't that develop? We haven't even begun to do that work yet. That, we've just put up what we know. Um, and, you know, I think we had desire to maybe try and do some of that work, but we just kind of ran out of bandwidth time. Um, but I think, you know, that, that will be part obviously of the, of the six cycle update.
Um, I have a, another question about the HRNA report. Um, I just, um, was wondering, um, whether it was considered to do a report with, um, a different type of analysis, like a Monte Carlo simulation or some kind of probability analysis um, that would sort of factor in uncertainty more, um, and just, you know, I was just wondering why this particular type of study was chosen over something that, you know, might assign more of a probability to development and the probability of housing production?
Well, setting aside for the moment that the analytic approach was the one that we were contracted to produce, um, uh, the, the, the approach that we've taken in doing this analysis is consistent with the way this analysis, this type of analysis has been done in the city over 20 years or so. Um, and it is a fairly well-recognized method of making judgments about the degree to which urban policy choices have an effect on the susceptibility of, of development uh, to take place using generally well-accepted, uh, real estate investment return metrics as the benchmark. And generally speaking, in order to do Monte Carlo simulations, you need a lot of data over a long period of time to guide the simulations. And in this particular case, the data is just, it, it, the kind of data that one would need to do that here just doesn't exist because there has been so little production of housing historically in the city. Um, and the other factors that you would want to take into account, um, the, the, the time series of data just isn't there.
Um, follow-up question. Um, it, you know, since this is the type of study that we've been doing in the city for 20 years and, you know, it, it didn't really, um, it didn't really meet, um, the reality in the downtown community plan, um, what we've seen with the reality of development there, um, you know, is it appropriate to look at, um, maybe other types of studies and sort of going in a different direction? And, um, you know, maybe, um, you know, exploring other options for that?
Well, I, I, it ultimately is up to the council to decide what they want to do about that. And it is a question that they will be asked in the context of the SB2 grant that the city has just received. But the, the, the reasons for the lack of production in the downtown since the downtown specific plan, uh, were adopted um, is something that merits much further investigation. And I don't think it's particularly, um, a function of the way that our analytic work was done in support of that. Um, but it may have to do with the specifics, at least in part, of the standards that were ultimately adopted that went well beyond the analysis that we produced.
Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to add to that. The, the staff recommendation at the time of adoption was to set a floor of 15% affordable up to 20% affordable, and the council took it from there.
Well, it wasn't just the percentage. The ultimate standards that were adopted are extremely complicated in terms of the distribution of units by income category and by unit size. And it's, it's a very complicated system that I have to say we struggled ourselves to be able to interpret in order just to model the implications for it on the boulevards.
And by that, you're referring to the increase in height corresponding to the increase in affordability?
Yeah.
Um, one more question, um, just, uh, back to the staff report. Um, I had a question about one of the slides, um, where it stated, um, that we're develop, we're directing development to boulevards and transit areas, um, with preservation of neighborhoods. And I just want to understand a little bit better what the reasons are for that, whether, you know, that's something that like we can, um, you know, reconsider going forward. Um, and also just what, what are we meaning when we say protecting neighborhoods exactly?
So this growth, uh, management strategy, the, the loose, um, you know, was the city's first attempt, um, to tie together, uh, the, uh, you know, land use and circulation and bring a broader understanding, um, as to how, um, that affects housing affordability, commute pattern, and GHG emissions. You have to recall the time that SB, you know, 375, AB 3, like all those landmark, um, laws, you know, had, had passed and the, uh, attorney general was suing cities, you know, for, for compliance of that. So the loose actually was one of the first general plans, um, to encompass, um, you know, all of those ideals, um, that were, uh, adopted at the state level. Um, locally, uh, you know, the notion of loss of rent-controlled housing in, in neighborhoods, displacement of existing tenants, um, is something that is another, you know, call it, you know, core value of the city. Um, you know, so, you know, whether there are competing interests or what have you, um, the city supports housing production, but we also want to make sure that our folks that live here can continue to be here. Um, and as the backdrop to that, prior to the loose, you know, for probably several decades, um, you know, there, you, you can see over time the sort of redevelopment, uh, loss of rent-controlled units. Um, you heard some testimony earlier, right, the reduction of rent-controlled housing from, you know, 50,000 to 25 that you have. And, um, you know, convert, those converting to, uh, market-rate condominium development. Um, so a lot of that activity was happening, you know, through the, uh, early 90s, through the 2000s. Um, and so, you know, by the time, um, you know, we were out talking to the community about, you know, what does the vision look like for growth over the next 20 years? You know, that was the community's experience with respect to development in residential neighborhoods. And so out of that grew, um, a strategy to preserve neighborhoods, preserve neighborhood character, um, you know, offer, uh, uh, you know, a, a relief valve to the development pressure that had been occurring in those neighborhoods. And to say, well, if we're going to grow, let's do it responsibly. Let's, you know, have it around, um, areas where, uh, you have access to services, um, you know, so you can lock out your front door to a commercial boulevard and go to a restaurant, go to the dry cleaners, go to the grocery store, et cetera. Um, at the same time, Expo Phase Two, um, you know, was in its planning stages. Originally, it was going to come down Olympic Boulevard and there was, you know, a whole conversation around that, the city lobby to have it, um, come down, you know, Colorado and you see the alignment that you have today. That was really the backbone, the centerpiece, um, uh, of the growth strategy, um, you know, which was to encourage growth, uh, around these high-frequency, high-quality transit, um, hubs, you know? So you see all the Ms. Um, and, uh, you know, so that was, you know, the, 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 the strategy that, that, that came towards preserving 96% of the city and focusing the growth where you had the, you know, highest access to jobs, to transit, to services. And this idea of, you know, people could live in the neighborhoods, but also come out to the commercial boulevards for the services. So that's just, um, in a nutshell, you know, kind of how, how you get there. And, you know, the, the, these documents are not dreamed up, you know, by us locked in a room. Um, you know, they go through extensive, extensive public processes. Um, and, you know, these land use documents, they're living, breathing animals. Um, they are a continuous reflection of the changing values of the community. Um, you know, having done this work for the past, you know, almost two decades, um, you know, you see, even after the loose was adopted, right, we went through a whole nother process, um, through adopting, um, a zoning ordinance. And, you know, folks that maybe hadn't participated in the process before, or, you know, they, uh, perceptions changed, circumstances changed, what have you, you know? And then, um, as you saw Peter walk through, you know, some circumstances occurred through the zoning ordinance update. And, you know, when we do another one of these updates where we, you know, go out to speak to people again, um, you know, they're always continuing, continually a, a reflection of the changing values of the community. So, uh, you know, I think this is the beginning of a conversation. I think you're, you're asking a question, you know? Is it, uh, possible to open that? Um, I think that's something that you can discuss and, you know, it can be offered up, um, as a question for discussion.
I, I just, uh, wanted to make sure, you know, I understand, so we're talking about preservation of neighborhoods. We're talking about a lot of different factors. We're talking about preserving, um, people and communities and protecting them from displacement, but we're also talking about preserving physical characteristics as well. And so, you know, I'm just thinking like, could we separate those out a little bit? Um, you know, explore maybe the reasons for those different pieces of preservation?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
So, I guess one of the things that strikes me in these kinds of discussions is that at some point, I always feel like we lose sight of the, the core reason that we're having these discussions. And that is the fact that there are people in this city who are having a difficult time affording to live here. There are people in this city who no longer can afford to actually live here, so they're living on our streets. And I think that losing sight of that, um, can lead us to a more complicated, um, can just make things more complicated. And I, I don't know that I'm going to explain myself well here, but, um... But, for example, we're talking about the high cost of production, the high cost of construction, and the cost of the land in Santa Monica notwithstanding. When you talk about the 3,702 units that those suitable sites have capacity for, that's... Those are normal apartments and buildings the way that standard construction is done, I'm assuming. It's not looking at other innovative forms of developing housing that could be cheaper, that could even yield more units. I know that someone said that, you know, modular housing is not something that would work here, but it's worked in a number of places. So I'm not... I don't buy that it wouldn't work here. I don't know that it would necessarily be the only thing to do. But there are options out there, the shipping containers, modular housing prefab, that would lower the cost. And I'm wondering if that's anything that, like, is even on the table, is being considered when you're looking at all of this?
Yeah, you haven't heard from us that modular housing isn't possible.
No.
We've actually... We approved... There was an approved project just a few months ago that's testing modular housing. We do know just anecdotally from talking to developers who are pursuing it that it is very much kind of an industry in its infancy. It's hard to find someone who can do it at scale. You know, and, you know, by the time they bid it, like, the same company they, you know, were talking to went out of business a few months later. So, you know, I think that's certainly an interesting opportunity. You know, the developer we were talking to wanted to pursue it almost like an experiment as a test case. And like, how, you know, does it affect construction costs, time to bring units to market? And I think we're excited to see how that turns out, you know, given our design requirements and modular, and see how that works out. So certainly, I think there's room for consideration of something like that. But in terms of this exercise, I mean, you have to recall this was done like 10 years ago. And, you know, it was based on a lot of the assumptions. You know, when you're doing, like, build-out and planning at this level, it's very kind of high-level. So we're looking at, again, past performance, you know, projects that were around at the time, trying to figure out, you know, what's the right metric to use, like, for average unit size and what have you. So that's the general approach that was used at the time.
Would you... Do you think that... That the discussion that has been had so far... Or do you think that the ongoing discussion could include or should include other innovative ways to, you know, develop housing that would be more cost-effective? Even if, you know, it is a way that's... A method that's in its infancy?
Certainly, we've heard that from housing providers. There's... They're always looking for, you know, different ways to, given the scale of the issue. And I think just to provide housing more efficiently, more cost-efficiently. I think that's always something that they're pursuing, so.
And do you think that in light of, you know, the council, one of the core values of the city, preserving neighborhoods, preserving the character of the neighborhood, the... Do you think that these other methods would be able to be worked into the character of the different neighborhoods, Pico neighborhood? Or do you think that they would cause a change, you know, further the change in the character of the neighborhoods?
In terms of innovations?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, innovations, are you speaking of physical or programmatic or...
Physical.
Physical. I mean, we're, you know, in terms of construction type or unit sizes or what have you, that's an ongoing conversation that's occurring now with respect to an offshoot, you know, of the corporate housing discussion and the kind of different co-housing, co-living models, what that means. I think we are interested in understanding how something like that might factor into our housing production targets.
And one last question. When you talk about the preservation of neighborhoods, how involved in those discussion are the people who actually live in those neighborhoods with the city?
With the adopted LOUS, they were extremely involved in that process.
All right. I think there's one neighborhood that doesn't necessarily feel like they're listened to. So that's my...
We can save that for discussion. Right now, it's just questions. Are there... Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Buchanan?
No.
Okay. Just to remind all the commissioners, because I know it's tempting, we are going to get to discussion, but right now, it's really supposed to just be questions. So Commissioner Landers.
Yes, thank you, Chair Soloff. I have specific questions. I think the... My read on the public comment is that we actually heard four different conversations, which is, and I'm splitting it up to split up my questions. There was a conversation about zoning and land use. There was a conversation about development standards. There was a conversation about the AHPP mix. And there was a conversation about process. Those are four really different things. So I'm organizing it in those ways, but I recognize that they interface. I want to start with process. We heard a number of recommendations about simplifying the way in which, within our existing HPP mix, development standards and zoning, projects get processed. Could we move from DA to DRP, for example? Could we align our code with state law in certain respects, which does have implications for other things? To what extent do you think... To what extent do changes in our process impact site suitability? Because I think, if I understood correctly, you have to make the case that these sites are going to be developed. And we heard public testimony that process is a factor. If we fix the process, how much credit do we get for fixing the process?
Yeah, so to the extent that we have recycling of sites from prior elements, again, that point about by right development will be required. You know, so, you know, what that means in our world is the administrative approval. You know, we might have to look at like that threshold. You heard, you know, nonprofit housing provider talking about increasing that threshold. You know, that's something that is certainly something that could be considered through that. But, you know, you can see here just the... And these are just, you know, some of the criteria we'll need to work through in the course of the update to fully understand again how that is applied to site suitability as we look at sites to accommodate.
So specifically for the 68 sites, 68, 69 sites that were not developed under the current cycle so far, if we wanted to put those sites into the sixth element, we... They would all have to be become by right completely?
I don't know that yet. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to say yes exactly because we don't... We have not done any of that analysis.
Okay, okay, thanks. And then in terms... And maybe this is a question for Mr. Silvern. The same question applies with respect to feasibility. To what percentage of... How much does process account for the feasibility of a site in your model? I recognize that this is squishy, but...
I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself before. Paul Silvern with HRNA Advisors. Do you mean the development permit process?
Sure, let's start with that.
Well, we have assumed in our modeling a relatively average process that these 12 prototypes that we studied would go through. We assumed, for example, that they were only subject to a development review process, which of course would come to the planning commission and appealable to the city council.
But that they were all DRs?
They were all development review projects. And that they would all qualify for a CQ categorical exemption.
And that they all qualified for HAA streamlining, or no? Were they still discretionary in your model?
Well, yes, the development review is always discretionary. And whether streamlining comes into play or not is always a judgment between the staff and the applicant about whether, you know, to grant the extension to...
Right, but the Housing Accountability Act significantly narrows the discretion on a DR.
Yes, that may be so. And I'm not sure that, you know, we have a particular limit on... In the model to account for that.
So moving from DAs to DRs wouldn't affect your model at all because everything in your model was DR?
That is correct.
But moving from DRs to administrative approval in certain cases could...
That would definitely speed things up. And it would reduce certain carrying costs that are reflected in the model currently.
And did the model treat the process as a function of carrying cost over time? Or did it treat it as a function of risk, of disapproval?
It's not a risk analysis. That's not a factor of the model.
Okay. Do you... So to the extent that we could streamline the process further, do you believe that that would impact the feasibility? To what extent? What difference would it make?
We would have to model before and after in order to tell you. I can't tell you specifically, but it would definitely help.
Okay, okay, thank you. My next question is up to staff about development standards and zoning uses. Have you... So when I think about housing production in Los Angeles, I think... I don't think about Santa Monica as a city with walls around it where we have... We create an environment and then magically, nothing that happens outside Santa Monica affects us, right? And I hear from developers who, in other contexts, who have said that they won't even develop west of the... They won't develop west of the 110, right? In terms of how the feasibility has moved. But are... Yeah, that is west of the 110. Okay, so the question is, have... But let's look at our nearest neighbors. Have you looked at the Transit Neighborhood Program, Expo, TNP, or LA's, you know, the JJJ TOC program in terms of the successes that they are claiming on the west side? They're giving a citywide reporting, but we'd need to look at the TOC for the west side. And the new Expo TNP hasn't come into effect. But have you looked at those models as indicate... Maybe some indicators of what might be feasible or suitable on the west side, given reality?
I mean, I think we have. I think it's important to know that we do... Our land use system is pretty super-different than LA. Just the way that we tier. The economics within Santa Monica are different even than West LA. You know, they are going through community planning effort all around, you know, within West LA, Palm Smire Vista, and Venice at the moment. We have looked, I would say just a cursory look at those TOC programs, but as to their applicability. The scale of what they're doing there is not something that is accommodated in our existing general plan. So we hadn't, you know, looked at it, I would say, in the past. You know, but certainly if there's, you know, interest in doing a similar program like that, that can come out of this conversation too.
Okay, and then lastly, in terms of timeline, because I'm not sure that we covered that. What are the... You know, I think HPP is the immediate conversation because we just got the feasibility study. But it sounds like we... There's... If the 9,000-unit number sticks, there's 3,000 unzoned units plus the question of suitable sites. What's the timeline... What are the timeline dependencies here? What are we doing now, and then what happens next? And what's... How fast or slowly do we need to go on things?
I mean, we are... We're at the... I would say it's the right time to have the conversation. You know, the process, the arena process is not complete. We don't know what the final numbers will be. However, you know, we have to have a certified element by fall of 2021. And if it triggers any sort of land use change, standards change, I mean, that is, within this city, that is not a quick process. You know, this is a process of, you know, if we're talking about opening up the LOUS or opening up, you know, standards and what have you, that is a difficult conversation. That's a challenging conversation to have. And, you know, the way the city functions, you know, we have community process. It's what we believe in, having transparent and open dialogue. So, you know, it's why, you know, we need to... We started to flag this conversation now just to help everyone understand what is occurring, you know, what these directives are. And, you know, we have no... We don't get to vote. You know, we sort of take our direction from you and from the council, you know, as to what to explore, what to model, what to study. And, you know, I think once we get, you know, our numbers, you know, the council will have to decide how we proceed, you know, with that, at that point.
And that, just to be... Just for my understanding, they say the LOUS or any other elements, we'd have to do that before we could get our housing element certified, right?
That is our understanding. I mean, if you'd have to show that, you know, your suitable sites accommodate your allocation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair Hill.
My comment question has to do with the feasibility study. Page 17 includes our AHPP rents. And what's missing is the corresponding incomes. The city has never done an analysis of our income rents under AHPP. And this is an example. The extremely low-income rent is similar to the Section 8 tenant portion without the housing assistance payment. That housing assistance payment is between 70% and 90% of the monthly rent. So the question I have, I think for Mr. Silvern, is would a standard 30% burden at all incomes result in a higher yield, higher percentage, especially at the extremely low income?
I'm not quite sure that I follow the question. What we were just simply showing in the page that you're referring to is the current rents that apply under the 2019 schedule of maximum rents as compared to what was in the schedule when we analyzed the situation in 2016 for downtown. So that was the only purpose for that particular chart. But we are using the city's current rent schedule for the HPP program, which my, to my understanding, uses 30% of household income for all standards. But Jim Kemper or Barbara may be able to confirm that. I believe that's...
Yes.
You could have a little study session on rent calculation formulas. But if the question is about the 30% standard, then yes.
Well, the initial calculation in 2013 was 17% and 22% of income. And it was a housing handout that all of our housing commissioners received. There's been, I think, one adjustment since 2013. And it's on page 17. And if you look at the incomes and do the math, it's not up to 30%. I'm not complaining about the rents. I think low-income people should benefit from low rents. What I'm concerned about is whether we could get a higher yield or percentage by raising the rents to a more equitable amount. And I've tried to make this point eight times from the housing. And I've tried to make this point eight times from the housing commissioner in four years.
Vice Chair Hilton, maybe the question we could put to HRNA is, I know when you did the DCP feasibility study, you actually said if you use extremely low, this is what, how many is feasible if you use very low, low, moderate, and you had a range of numbers. Have you done that kind of sensitivity analysis?
Not for this purpose. This is a different kind of analysis in which we were not goal, this is not a goal-seeking analysis, if you know what I mean. But rather, this was an analysis with a pre-designated percentage of affordable units to align with the current zoning code requirements. So, we weren't trying to discover what, you know, what a different percentage might be, but simply analyze the implications of the zoning code percentages.
But if somebody wanted you to do that analysis and they paid you to do it, you could?
We did it before.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Hilton, any other questions?
Yes, I'm suggesting an analysis.
Now, it's Chair Lambert.
Otherwise known as Chair Solo. I have actually a couple of pretty specific questions. Of the 77 sites, there are 69 left that are not development, you know, they're not happening. Do you know how many of those were down zoned in 2015?
I do not know, no.
But you will.
We will.
I think it would be relatively easy just to look at where the dots line up according to the boulevards and then run through if this thing works.
Given the hour, it was sort of a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that... Well, I don't know, I mean, so here we go from five, three, four, three. A few.
A few, okay, well, that's good enough for me. The other question I have is, do we have, I probably already know the answer to this, a public land inventory and I'm not talking about surplus land. I'm talking about any public land in Santa Monica and not just the city, but the county, metro, school district and the college?
We have an inventory of city land, but not all the other agencies.
Because I suggest we do that. As far as I'm concerned, this is a discussion, I'm sorry. Any public land owned by anybody should be on the table. And that's the way I feel, so there should be an inventory. Somebody cited AB 1763, which the, is obviously a bill, but it requires, it does not allow us to have a minimum parking requirement for affordable housing, for 100% affordable housing. My reading of the bill is that it's just for special needs and permanent supportive housing. Do you read it as for any affordable housing?
That's, I believe that's what it is now because we just approved a supportive housing that had no parking.
I thought it was just for permanent supportive and special needs, so you just might want to check on that?
Yeah.
And I'm very confused about, and there is a question here. The SB 2 work scope for Paul versus what he's doing now? I mean, I understand the concept, but I don't really understand why. I understand the city council told you to do it and you did it. It doesn't frankly make a whole lot of sense to spend a lot of time on this analysis if we're looking at different development standards down the road and an analysis of those. So, you know, doing, using a lot of brain power to take this analysis apart doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Do you have a response to that?
Is there a question in there or?
Yeah, I mean, do you agree with me?
Well, I think yes. And that's the reason why we hit the pause button and have brought forward the preliminary results right now. So, at this moment in time, given the status of the existing development standards,
I understand, I understand. And then as to Paul's study, and I understand that it was the scope of work that basically determined that you were not going to do projections and a more sophisticated analysis, et cetera. But as far as I'm concerned, I don't really see the usefulness of doing that right now, this time, analysis of basing affordability in the future on that. The other question, there's a question here. I doubt your hard cost figures, I really do. Based on what I've heard, based on my own experience with nonprofit development, I think they're very low and I would suggest to you that you do another roundtable or get more developer input or contractor input because I really don't believe they're real. Somewhere in there was a question. I do have a question about the density bonus situation. I have been saying this for years. I don't know how the city gets around state density bonus law, which gives absolutely no concessions whatsoever to mixed income projects that are not in our districts. I don't get it, maybe you can tell me about it. You have a slide for it? No.
I think you're going to have to stand up.
Yeah, sorry, you're going to have to stand up. I know it's late.
So, I think that is under review by our office based on letters we've received and we are looking into the issue. I think the city has always felt that it's been in compliance with state density bonus law, but we certainly have received comments and we're looking at them.
The law is very clear about how you give concessions to developers who...
Well, I think the city does have, you know, density bonus incentives built in to the commercial districts already. The city has always been aware of this...
We're 100% projects.
Well, but even so. So, anyway, I just, we are looking into the issue and we will be able to answer that question.
Okay, great. Also, are there, what are the sanctions if you don't meet Prop R goals?
There are none that I'm aware of.
There are none? But what happens if you don't do it? Cut off, cut off your hand? There's also, I just want...
The law just directs that the city council take up that matter as a discussion and see how they could amend the program so that they will be in compliance. How they would amend the implementing ordinance so that they will comply.
Okay, but they, obviously they can't amend Measure R.
Right.
That's it, or all I can think of anyway. So, I just wanted to emphasize the feasibility study that Paul is doing. I really wish he would take another look at the hard costs.
Commissioner Reeves.
Okay. So, I tend to agree with Commissioner Fonda Benardi that 9,000 units is a little bit pie in the sky. I do believe that we will make best efforts to try to get there, but I don't, I don't see us actually, us getting there. So, I don't, I don't know that the state is going to go after Santa Monica first because again, I believe we're going to make good efforts to try to get there. But what we are going to be doing is left with is AB 30, SB 35 issue. And it seems to me that SB 35 will make everything administrative in the near term. What I'm wondering is how does that interact with ARB? Because SB 35 also is very clear about objective design standards.
You've asked the million dollar question. I have yet to see any jurisdiction in the state clearly explain. We've asked bill authors, what do you mean by objective design standards? I don't think there's, you know, a definition of what that is. I think it's left to the jurisdiction, it appears. You know, I think it's, it is one aspect that we are finding hard to interpret. You know, having been through, I'll just use, for example, the downtown community plan process. The city actually did have very prescriptive design requirements, you know, that resulted in like the wedding cake look, if you will, that we heard wholly from developers, community, like nobody liked that building type. I think one way to interpret it is like if you're talking about objective standards, objective usually means there's no judgment, you know. So, I think it probably is going to mean potentially going back to that kind of thing of, you know, being prescriptive about form in a way that we've heard from our community, nobody's a big fan of. But if that is the result of it, that may be where we would need to head.
Right, but that's a, that's a process.
It's a process.
And any process in this city is five years of...
Yeah.
Process. Okay. We heard this discussion from, at least from the affordable housing provider about reducing offsite. And this kind of a, I guess, a question, I like the concept of this, but ultimately that will be borne by the taxpayers one way or the other. What other options, if it's not the developer, is there other than just city general funds to do curb, gutter, repave the alley? I mean, clearly, we shouldn't have charted, asked them to repay the alley right before it was going to get blown out by another development. But what other options do we have to pay for those types of things? Or is it just going to come out of our general fund?
I mean, in some, true, you know, I think if, for example, you allowed everybody to, you know, covenant, to build it and the city calls on that in the future and, you know, whoever builds it. But I mean, you know, as, if it doesn't get built, it potentially could fall, you know, on public dollars. I think one model I've, you know, seen where you have, you know, the improvement doesn't happen right away, you know, but there's a commitment to do that when all of the properties may be redeveloped and everyone contributes their fair share. So, maybe you don't have the situation where one, you know, redoes the whole alley and it gets ripped up and done again, you know, by an adjacent developer. But I think we recognize that, you know, as a, as an issue. And it was highlighted, you know, with one project, but it's not the only project, you know, where that, that kind of question has been brought up. And I think that's going to be a coordination with our colleagues in public works as to how to, you know, resolve those kinds of situations.
Okay. Just touch briefly on the HRNA study. But in costs, you know, I do see that, I do see that we've seen evidence brought to us from people who are building today that the cost is, is higher than in the study. I also, being in this business, I think we're at a kind of a peak, peak part of this business where, you know, there is a very small labor pool, or not a small labor pool, there's just so much work that it's jacking up the costs. So, I don't know that just one picture in time of this year is the best way of doing it. Would it make sense to ask the architects who have built in this, in this city over the last four or five years, give us a range of what your costs have been? And then you guys try to take an average? And/or what other suggestions would you have to get more accurate data? Or do you believe that yours is, you used it because you feel it's the most accurate data?
Well, we feel pretty comfortable with the assumptions that we've used. We know that there are different perspective on that and we're always interested in getting the best data that we can, particularly from those who are actually building projects in Santa Monica as opposed to elsewhere. We did use an independent cost estimator to provide guidance when we did the work this time. And yet, there are still, you know, differences of opinion. When, you know, examples of construction costs on Lincoln Boulevard, you know, north of the 10 freeway are used, doesn't really apply to the prototypes that we analyzed other than in the Bergamont area, you know, which allows five and six story buildings as opposed to the standard three story building on the boulevard. So, it's kind of an apples and oranges sort of thing. And I think what we would want to do is to talk with our architect colleagues and try to get more precise information about the examples that they're citing so we can be, we can be sure that we're getting a good apples-to-apples comparison between the experience that they're citing and the specifics of the prototypes that were analyzed and we're happy to do that. But, but your point is well taken and we have taken pains in the analysis that we do of this type to point out, almost every time we do this, that we're, for example, still at a point of historically low cap rates because in part, interest rates remain so low. And one cannot assume, you know, forever that that set of relationships is going to persist. And yet, they seem to hang in there longer than we would have, would have predicted. But we do try to moderate some of our assumptions in the analysis so that it's not reflecting, you know, peak conditions at every time because you are, after all, making recommendations to the council to set long-term policy. And we want to try as best we can to give guidance that will hold up over time.
And then last comment slash statement is, you know, you're going to go forward and, you know, hopefully revise your study. Is there a feedback loop going on between you and the staff to the, to the council as of, these are things that we think we should tweak in our study to make it more accurate? I mean, as I understand, you kind of got the direction from staff. Here's the study we want you to, or not from staff, but council. This is the study we want you to do.
Well, I think as Peter was explaining, I'm not sure that we're going to do anything more with the work that we've produced to this point in time yet because I think there, you know, the staff and the commissions and the council still need to have a discussion about what to do to try to accommodate this extremely large new state mandated requirement over the next seven and a half year of planning period. And it may not be, as Chair Lambert was suggesting, worth the time and effort to try to fine tune the analysis we've already done on existing zoning standards if there's going to be a conversation about different zoning standards. So, we would, you know, we may pause the work that we've done at this point. There are a couple of other, you know, somewhat more technical issues that are part of our scope of work that I think we will probably finish out, but I'm not sure that we're going to spend any more analytic time fine tuning what we've already done at this point. But to the extent that we may be asked to do other modeling of a similar nature on, say, a different set of zoning standards, we will totally take aboard the comments that people have offered about some of the nuances of the way the analytic work is being done, such as construction costs.
Well, I wouldn't be, I would just urge you not to be shy if you see things yourself.
Yeah, well, that will be part of our process. I mean, we do have some opinions about where we think, you know, better outcomes, you know, could result. And we'll be discussing those with the staff, but we're very interested in hearing from the commissions about their views to enlarge the realm of possibilities.
Great, thank you, okay. And the last, I think the last question I have for you is, this is for staff. Is, staff, I kind of pushed at our October meeting or wherever it was, this concept of density around radiuses around transit versus the corridors that the cities had. Do you guys, from a planning perspective, have a, you know, comments on which is the more, is there a more appropriate way of doing it?
You know, the, I, it's interesting because we actually did look, that was one of the alternatives that was studied in terms of the loose EIR. It was an EIR alternative. And we called it, I think it was like the nodal alternative, which was, you know, put all of that growth, like just concentrated around three areas. What netted from that was, you know, predictably more intensity of development, whether through height, affair, what have you, around, you know, the expo stations. At the time, you know, as the conversation was happening, that was sort of an untenable amount of, you know, intensity of development around those areas.
I'm asking you guys to be less diplomatic about what the community concerns are and give your professional opinion on if there's a, if there's a value of doing the radius or the corridors.
There is a, if you're talking about like bang for your buck, you know, in terms of is, you know, efficiency of that transit service, you know, a bus corridor versus a rail, certainly, you know, there's advantages there. But I think it's not as simple of that kind of an equation, you know, when we apply the sort of, you know, values, you know, to that analysis as to what is tenable in terms of the intensity, you know, that occurs if we were to just say it's only in these areas. But I think that's, it's hard to say, you know, the outcome of that because we don't know the top limits of what we're talking about yet. But that's, I think, generally, you know, an assessment is that, you know, it could probably be more efficient, you know, around higher frequency transit, mass transit, you know, versus a bus that comes, you know, every so often.
And stuck in traffic. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Hilton, any other questions?
As an alternative housing model, the staff report refers to the city of San Jose, which has a co-living ordinance. And the co-living ordinance is described as a minimum of six bedrooms rented to one to two persons per bedroom, a common area and a shared kitchen facilities. Co-living locally might work for supportive housing and the housing commission has identified two public land sites downtown that would accommodate up to 400 persons, for example, for homeless housing. So, the question is, does the state housing element, RENA, count each co-living bedroom as an individual unit for purposes of the allocation? Because in the report, the reference is that it does count each bedroom, does it? it?
So that is, San Jose's approach was that they, they explicitly stated that that is actually their strategy, is to include that. And I think we have, we would like to follow up with their staff there to understand kind of the mechanics of why they think that's so. And I think, you know, we're definitely, we're interested in understanding more about how HCD views, you know, that, that sort of a living arrangement.
I just have a quick question, suggestion to Paul. Paul, I can think off the top of my head of four prototypes of Tier Two that you should be looking at. What? There's one under construction on 14th Street, which is actually a three-story CCSM project. There are two at the corner of Santa Monica and Yale, one on the south, you got those? And there's one on, Sean wears it, it's on Wilshire. We approved that a few months ago. That's the one that, the only one that Tricia Crane liked.
Yes, that's a Tier Two.
And I, and they're not under construction, but they probably have their cost estimates in the.
And what? Sentinella.
Just west of Sentinella.
No, it is, it's Sentinella north of Wilshire.
Oh, okay.
Northwest corner of Wilshire and Sentinella.
So it's just within the city of Santa Monica. So there are options for you to look at if you care to do that.
I have two quick follow-ups. Renee, maybe first. I don't know if Commissioner Buchanan, I see Buchanan, Commissioner Buchanan ahead of me. Okay, all right. Just two quick, two quick follow-ups. Am I, what, how, this is for Mr. Silvern. What housing unit, what unit size were you presuming in your models?
In, in terms of square footage or bedrooms?
Both. I mean, we've been dealing with that on the planet.
Yeah, well, it's, it's an interesting question. We, in, in order to get our rent comparables, given the relatively small number of new construction projects on the boulevards in the last several years, we had to actually go back 15 years to find enough examples to work with so that we had some confidence in the average rents that we were using for different bedroom sizes. And one of the things that we discovered in the course of doing that is that the further back in time we went in this 15-year time series, the larger the unit sizes were compared to what's being built today. And so in, in, in order to, and we described this in the presentation package of attachment to the staff report, in, in, in order to reconcile that, we had to come up with a statistical adjustment for the rent comps for the older units that are in larger unit sizes, which we did in order to, to come up with, with the results, but give me one second.
Did you set a floor? I mean, I'm not, I'm not assuming that in 2050, housing unit, bedroom sizes will be 15 square feet.
No, no, but you, I mean, you know from watching projects come through the Planning Commission that the average unit sizes at all bedroom sizes are much smaller than what we're nor, you know, what we're used to or what any of the standards are around. But just by way of example, for the, for the units on the boulevards, we were looking at projects in the, in the development pipeline, which is our, you know, our proxy for new construction, of efficiencies at 220 square feet, studios at 456, one bedrooms at 576, two bedrooms at 832, and three bedrooms at 1,034. That's, that, that's the sort of average for projects coming through the pipeline. And, you know, the further back in time we go looking for, for comparables, you know, the unit sizes are much larger.
Okay. Thank you. That's worth, that's worth bearing in mind. And then this is more for staff. We're, one of the, one of the questions, and this goes to, also goes to workload and work burden, one of the questions that came up in terms of moving to AA, when projects come to us, we have spent a fair amount of time tweaking the, you know, the STOAs to recapitulate code we care about, push them on things like medium-term housing, and when it comes to inclusionary projects, seek wraparound services, or at least connections to wraparound services for the projects with very low or extremely low income housing. What is the time, and, and if we were to go to AA, I think there might be some interest in making sure that those were baked into standard, you know, sort of standard STOAs. What is the timeline for the update to the medium-term housing ordinance? And is there a legal way for us to ensure connections to wraparound services in inclusionary zoning under, you know, even with a code revision or an ordinance? Because we always get that as a volunteered offer from the applicant. Heidi is smiling back at me here. I don't know if it's a question, it's for both of you. It's a timeline question, but how much could we, how, how much could we kind of ensure that some of the concerns that get addressed in DRs, and there are other, there are other issues, whether it's solar or historic preservation, that we could kind of pre-address them and then turn it back over?
So to address the tweaks that have been made, you know, as you're recognizing the reason that they get pushed to be voluntary, if, if they were required in the code, they'd be required.
Right.
You know, and if you go to an administrative process, it is a very black and white process, like yes or no, do you, do you not meet the code? There's no discussion, negotiation as to what you include. If the developer wants to include stuff, that's great, you know, but I would guess not, you know, unless it's written down. The timeline for the medium-term housing, the council's direction from the study session was to divide it really between two phases of work, things that are critical, you know, short-term.
Yeah.
And they put in that bucket largely protection of rent control housing, and they wanted staff to bring back as, you know, as soon as we could, you know, the sort of like natural persons, one-year lease idea. So that is something that will be more in the shorter term. The work of defining, you know, rules around, defining medium-term housing and then defining rules about where that is, how that's incorporated, is it a mix, is it all? I mean, that is a longer policy arc, you know, that will be ongoing. We've included in, as part of this housing policy work, but the, you know, rent control protections will be what you will see coming forward first, yeah.
Okay. And in terms, but in terms of, could we put the wraparound services into the order? Is there a, is there any legal bar into doing that?
You do have broad police power when it comes to zoning, so it's something that if the, if it was something the commission would like to explore and then have the city council consider, we could look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if that competes. Other, oh, Commissioner Buchanan, you have further questions, please?
This is just a maybe clarification question. I'm certainly a novice when it comes to Santa Monica zoning codes, but it fascinated me tonight, hearing that there are 31 zoning districts in this small city and only 48 in the city of Los Angeles. First, is there a reason for that? And would, and would stream, and would streamlining the zone, could, could having fewer zoning districts actually help streamline the, the zoning code or make things less complicated? I mean, I, it, it's fascinating, as many things are.
Yeah, it is fascinating. You, you know, I, obviously, you know, if, if the city was just, you know, 10 zones and it was the same standards, that, that could make it, you know, more understandable. But as Peter said, that's, it's kind of how we roll. I have no, you know, viable explanation other than, you know, it's, it's, we, we plan things at a very granular, granular level, you know, block by block. Even R1 neighborhoods are not necessarily the same multifamily, so it's, it's sort of, you know, within our eight square miles, you know, there's a lot of customization to reflect, you know, different interests throughout the city. So that's kind of what you see reflected in 31 zoning districts.
But is that customization perhaps getting in the way of us making headway in this, with this issue, or is it even contributing to?
It certainly doesn't make it easy for someone to access and understand the standards.
So is changing that something that could be discussed, or is that a?
I think it's all on the table, so certainly.
Okay. So I'm going to assume the purpose of this meeting is to provide meaningful information to the Housing Commission. I apologize to my colleagues on the Planning Commission who've heard a lot of this before. I'm realizing it's already 11 o'clock and we haven't even started talking about things, and I have questions about the things that were new to this commission, the Planning Commission, which includes the HRNA study and the RENA numbers. I'm wondering, we're having a regular meeting tomorrow, it is agendized at our regular meeting to continue this conversation. Is there the possibility that you can come and we can talk about the SB2, and we can talk about the Planning Commission's comments from last time, which, to be perfectly honest, are not comprehensible to those of us just reading the planning report? So if it's going to be meaningful, we have to go through and understand what they were and what the reasoning is behind them. Could you come and do that so we don't have to do that tonight and take the time of my colleagues on the other commissions?
Yeah, unfortunately, Paul was not available.
No, the HRNA and the RENA numbers I'm going to ask you about tonight, and what I'm talking about is the presentations you made a month ago to the Planning Commission, but not to us, which was the SB2 report and also the, the feedback that they had about their ideas about all sorts of things. I mean, I can go through it right now and ask all the questions, but it would, would avoid wasting the, my colleagues' time here if you could come to our meeting tomorrow.
Either that or, the thing is, we're not noticed. I mean, you want the staff to come, but not us.
Well, right. To ask questions, I don't, we don't need the rest of you. If you want me to do it, I'll do it now. I was trying to accommodate you guys.
I think so. Yeah, I, I just want to say that there's nothing in this report that is new regarding SB2 from the one that was presented in October.
That, that's my point. It wasn't presented to the Housing Commission, it was only presented to the Planning Commission.
But it was presented to you this evening, the same thing.
He's saying he wants to talk about that stuff tomorrow. I have questions about the what, the SB2 report. I have questions about what the meaning is of the comments by the Planning Commission. We could go through all that tonight, but that's duplicative for the six colleagues of mine from the Planning Commission who are here. So I was trying to spare them and all of us being here later as possible. If you came to our meeting tomorrow to, so we could ask you our questions about those things, which they've already done, that seems to me like would be more efficient. That's my question.
Yeah, I personally can't make it.
I have to, I, we have shot, I have to check to see if my husband's.
Okay, then I guess we're going to do it tonight.
So.
I, I tried. I mean, can you think of an alternative? Okay. But before we get to that, let me ask you some questions, just going through the slides that you put up tonight. So I think you've answered that we, we have an inventory of city-owned land, but not the other types of land. As Chair Lambert mentioned, that's the, you know, other public land, like state, county, things like that, and the colleges and things like that. Is that correct?
Right.
And is that something that could be put together?
I assume so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. The next question I had was, you had something about the recycling of the sites, and it said that it would have to be administrative approval, and it would also have to be 20% inclusionary. So when it says 20% lower income inclusionary, is that, so that's, has to be onsite, or could that be, for example, like what we have allowed now in the city where instead that was done in partnership with a nonprofit off-site where we could get potentially tax credits and get an even bigger percentage of inclusionary?
Yeah, I don't believe it's specific to just being onsite, and this is just taken from the government code, so.
Okay. Next question I had was, I think, but I just want to be certain about this, that the sites that we have in the past RENA cycle or in the housing element did not include any public land sites?
Uh, no, I don't think so, yeah.
And when we're talking about suitable sites, since the vast majority of the housing that we're being asked to produce is going to have to be deed-restricted affordable housing, is there anything about suitability that goes to whether it's realistically possible to create that type of housing?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is part of the analysis that would be done, is the, you know, how realistic would it be that it would be, that it would actually occur?
And that would depend on things like whether there's any financing for it?
Certainly, one, one factor, I, I think in the past, HCD has asked, you know, gone to the length of asking for like, is there a letter of commitment, interest, you know, from the property owner, as an example? You know, if there's an existing use on it, because they sort of, within the new laws, there's a presumption that if there's an existing use on a site, that that is an impediment to housing, so they'll want proof to shore up that, you know, there's, there's been a history of those kinds of properties redeveloping.
Could you bring up the slide about where we are right now in production? So the first question I have, it's the one I sent you before the meeting by email. So last year, when the Housing Trust Fund planning process was working on, there was an indication that there were 60 units approved of moderate housing, and now it says there's only two. Can you explain what happened?
So, yeah, it, it appears what happened, I think it's attributable to, it was like two projects, right, Jim? So what happened is that there were approved projects that hadn't gone into construction yet, and then they couldn't, and this happens, and that's why you see sometimes, these numbers don't all like cycle through, because some projects just drop out after they're approved. What happened in those cases is although it was approved, they resubmitted as a different project. So then those projects effectively went away, and that's what took down the number. And then they're back in the pipeline as new submittals and approvals at different income levels. So that's what happened there.
And do you know what happened to those projects? What, what type of affordable housing did we get in those instead of the 60 moderate units?
They changed their, yeah, one, one was, became one of the SRO projects, so that one has like seven, I'm totally blanking, but it was like one moderate income unit, basically one unit at each level, and in a handful of units at, I think it was like very low income, I want to say. The, the Fifth Street one, the settlement project. Yeah, Roxanne's got those numbers. And then the other one became the off-site requirement for two development agreements. So that was 46 units of housing, and that is actually governed by an old settlement agreement with respect to the units that are in there. So it's under some like different calculation and formula.
So now, if we look at this chart, we see that we have, well, I guess you don't have the total on the chart there, but you did in the report, 1,066 units of approved but not yet in construction housing. What explains that?
You're saying the 930, which, which column are you talking about?
I'm adding up the, all of the approved not in construction. There's 933 of, of market rate housing and about 120.
So you're saying why are they?
133 of that.
So that's, that, what, what that column means is that the project was approved, but they're, haven't obtained their building permits yet.
But why?
So in those cases, after the city approves a project, it's at that point up to the applicant to move it forward. There can be any number of reasons, you know, but it, it does take time from when they get concept approval to go through the design review approval process, prepare construction documents, go through plan check, obtain financing for all that. So at any point in time, those projects, and, you know, they, they do drop off sometimes if they can't go through that cycle. We, we do have like a two-year limit on how long you have to exercise your rights under that approval, so if you don't exercise it, then you lose your entitlement.
And if those 1,066 units got built in this RENA cycle, or they don't get built in that RENA cycle, will it have any impact on what our RENA obligation is in the next cycle?
Well, it would be in that category of like recycled sites, you know, so the sites that didn't get, didn't turn.
Sorry, I'm not being clear. Would it change the 9,000 figure that we have to produce regardless, whether or not we produce another thousand now or we don't produce another thousand now?
No, my, my understanding, I mean, unless they change the methodology, my understanding of the methodology as it stands today, it does not take into account your past permit performance or past performance at all. It's not a factor.
And does that make sense to you?
I think we would wish that it would consider past performance, but, you know, we don't get to have a say in that.
I understand. Now, just one other question about that slide before we move on to the new numbers. So we have RENA and we have quantified objectives. So quantified objective is what's in the housing element and was approved by HCD, is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
And RENA was what we were originally allocated?
Right.
So there was a reduction at the, not in the market rate housing, but there was a reduction in the amount of affordable housing that we were assigned under the prior RENA cycle to what the state actually required us to do. Is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the new RENA numbers. So in the new RENA numbers using the SCAG tool, so the total number of market rate units that we're being asked to produce is 2,776, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And if we look back at this chart, we have produced 1,648. What does the 385 mean?
Oh, this is, sorry, this chart actually was a comparison to another similar chart we had produced comparing to, I think it was March. So that was showing the difference between March and October.
Okay. So it's 1,648 that are actually completed or in construction, another 933 that have been approved. So we have approved 2,581 market rate units in this RENA cycle, is that right?
2190, yeah, that's right.
25, correct. Okay. And we're being asked to produce about 200 more in the next RENA cycle?
That's right, yeah, for market.
Okay. Now let's look at the moderate income that we're being asked to produce in the upcoming RENA cycle using the SCAG tool. They're asking us to produce 1,734 such units, is that right? And let's see, we have actually produced 27.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so that would be about 80 times what we've produced so far, we're being asked to produce, is that right?
I'm going to trust your mouth on that one, yep.
Okay. And then we're being asked to produce 1,703 low-income units in the next RENA cycle?
That's right.
Okay. And we've produced this time, let's see, 254 plus we have, excuse me, 150 plus we have 25 approved, so that's 175.
Right.
So they're asking us to produce about 10 times the amount of, of low income that we've produced in this RENA cycle?
Right.
Okay. And then I guess we have very low and low, or I guess they combine very low together.
Yeah, they combine extremely low within very low.
Okay. So they're asking us to produce 2,846 such units in the, in the next RENA cycle?
Right.
Okay. And combined, we've produced, let's see, 370 and about another 106, about 476 units are either produced or approved?
Right.
Okay, so that would be about five times, a little bit more than five times as much as we've produced.
Right.
Okay. And I want to go back. So we've, in this RENA cycle, we've already actually completed or in construction well over two times the amount that we were assigned of market rate housing in the city of Santa Monica?
Right.
Okay. So it's not that we haven't been producing any market rate housing in the city, correct?
Right.
Okay. And we, and we've approved another 933 such units, right?
That's right.
Okay. And we actually have produced, you know, hundreds and hundreds of affordable housing units, all of which require either our inclusionary zoning law or our public land or our public funds in order to create, correct?
Right.
Okay. In these new state laws, what, what money or land has the state committed to us to create these 6,283 affordable housing units that they're asking us to produce in the next RENA cycle?
So from a land perspective, I think it was an idea, you know, the state went through an inventory of like, you know, surplus public land. From what we understand, it didn't net out much. It was like leftover highway right-of-way or something like that. From a funding perspective, there's not, you know, pretty limited assistance to local jurisdictions for the production of this, of this housing. Yeah, that's right, you're right.
But in terms of either actually committed new land or new money, there's essentially not any so far, is that correct?
No, I think that's, that's an ongoing conversation and advocacy on the part of the city to, you know, have those sorts of funding sources.
I also want to talk for a minute about SB 35. So it's my understanding that SB 35s have different consequences if you miss your market rate housing targets than it does if you miss your affordable housing targets, is that right?
Yeah, there's, there's varying levels of, triggers different things depending on which income level you missed.
Right. So if we produce the 2,776 market rate units that they're asking us to produce in the next RENA cycle, then the administrative approval and the no parking requirements that would otherwise be imposed on a market project and the, the inclusionary requirements of that wouldn't be triggered, is that right?
That's, I'm trying to refresh my memory about that, but yeah, you may be correct about that, yeah.
Okay. And if we don't produce the affordable housing portion of it, what SB 35 says is it gives you no parking and administrative approval for a project that has at least 50% affordable housing, is that right?
Right. I mean, there's, that's some of the conditions. There are a whole big list of preconditions that have to met as well.
And right now, the city of Santa Monica is in compliance with SB 35, correct?
We are, we are, yes.
Okay. And most of the states out of compliance with SB 35 in the affordable housing portion, correct?
Yeah, I think the last we checked, it was something like 30-something jurisdictions? 24, yeah.
Out of how many?
Out of 400-ish, you know, cities in the state.
And are there any places in the state where the triggering of SB 35s has led to production of these 50% affordable and 50% market projects?
We have seen, I want to say a handful, you know, that have, that have come through because they get highlighted. I can think of like three that I've heard like stories about.
Okay. If you could share that data with the Housing Commission, we'd appreciate that. Not, not right now, obviously. That's not what I meant. That was a request for, for future information. Can you put up the slide about the applications you have received recently? So, let's see, we have the 825 Santa Monica Boulevard Tier Two at 15%, very low income. Is that outside the downtown?
That is within the downtown.
That's within the downtown.
Isn't it? Oh, it's outside? Oh, just outside?
So that's outside the downtown. So that's under the outside the downtown AHPP requirements? Okay. Now, with respect to the SB two, which of the items in the SB two study will help us meet the 6,283 affordable housing units we're supposed to create in the next RENA cycle?
So, you know, probably looking at those first three items on the list in terms of, you know, updating the DCP feasibility analysis. Number two is, that's, you know, been a specific directive from council on how do you, you know, incentivize production of housing on the boulevards and in Bergamot. So that's an opportunity there in terms of evaluating different, you know, standards. And then number three is exploring minimum density, you know, which would, in the R3 and R4 zones. So that, I think those three items.
And without, obviously, since the study hasn't been done, but rough order of magnitude, how many affordable units would the kinds of changes that are being considered there generate for us?
I couldn't even begin to speak to that, actually, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You have at the bottom, explore, identify new financing tools for affordable housing. What is going to be explored there and by whom?
I think we've identified that as a task and that is actually, we would like that to come out of the discussion in terms of, you know, different ideas that you'd like us to look at. But I think, you know, we'll be taking that input and sort of in partnership with our colleagues in housing and economic development, looking at, you know, what are the options that are available? And certainly speaking with housing providers, you know, as to different ideas that they have as well.
So this is money that's going to go for staff time to explore these issues?
No, I think that wasn't, it wasn't set up that way, no.
Sorry, I mean, we, this is a concept that we got funding for to later scope. So we thought this would be a good forum and with council next month to talk a little bit about the parameters for that study. We will then move into scoping phase where we would talk more in detail about what the rollout of that program would be and who would be the right people to help us outside of staff.
And then there's a section that says evaluation of city tenant protection and tenant resource programs. And if I read the actual SB report, that was going to be some information on a website?
I think ultimately it's destined for information on a website, in, in literature. The concept here is that information is our first line of defense or residents' first line of defense. A lot of city resources related to housing are dispersed throughout various departments in the city. They don't live under one roof and that can be very confusing for somebody to navigate, somebody especially who's under duress, having housing issues. So the idea here is to begin to explore ways to create better messaging, better communications, and better materials for people through a public engagement process, asking them what are the most, you know, prescient needs that they face, what, what type of information do they need the most? And then do our best to pull it together in a coherent fashion. I will say with this particular one that you pulled out, we were very, very limited by the parameters of the grant, which is so, so focused on housing production, but they would allow us to ask for 10% of our maximum allocation to this balancing of protecting existing tenants. Everything else is geared towards production.
Has there been any consultation with the rent control board or with legal aid about what would be the most effective use of those funds?
Yes. With legal aid, no, but with the rent control staff, we have an internal housing super team that is composed of planning, city attorneys, consumer protection division, rent control, housing and economic development. Basically, anybody that touches housing in the city is on this internal team and they helped us develop these seven scope items.
Okay. So the rent control staff thought that putting together this information for a website would be an effective tool?
Yes.
Interesting, okay. Let's see, now let's go to the Planning Commission discussion.
A suggestion? I'm sorry.
You're welcome to make a suggestion.
But you don't have to accept it. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm not one of those commissioners who believes in sitting here until we're finished. And I think they're reaching sort of a point of diminishing returns in terms of coming up with really solid recommendations to the city council. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me. What do you think about scheduling another joint hearing or?
Maybe we should just adjourn your commission and we can continue or, I don't know. To me, I, we haven't even gotten to discussion here. I'm trying to get questions respectfully. Maybe, I think it probably is diminishing returns for you, but we're getting information.
No, I understand and I respect that.
That we need and we haven't received any presentation before.
I respect that.
We didn't come up with the concept of putting 14 of us in a room to try and do all of this at one time. So, you know, I'm not sure what to do.
Well, just proceed.
Can we just note that you didn't, you need to have a motion to go past 11. It's already past 11, so.
We, somebody, anybody. Okay, the, the Planning Commission, does someone want to make a motion?
But that's for a new item. They're on the same item.
Oh, is that, is that right? Okay. All right. No problem.
So in terms of the affordable housing part, there's a recommendation or a thought of a recommendation to increase administrative approval for 100% affordable housing units. And in the downtown, is it 75 units right now?
That's right, yep.
And so is the recommendation or the proposed recommendation to just make it unlimited in administrative approval throughout the city?
There is no recommendation.
Ah, okay. Well, I'm just, okay. Consider flexibility in allowing developers multiple methods to produce affordable housing. What does that refer to?
This was a commentary about allowing, you know, I think there was an idea around like, could developers pool together their resources to put housing together on one site? So it was just, I think, different ideas of producing deed restricted housing in a way that the HPP doesn't address or is silent about.
You know the answer. That'd be great.
As I recall, we were talking about just what she said, and that is if there were a way to time it such that developers could pool their money to offsite housing.
Isn't that allowed right now?
No.
It doesn't allow you just to keep.
The problem with that is that they don't all finish their projects at the same time, so they don't give their CFOs until they finish the affordable housing. So that's the catch.
Ah, okay. So the idea would be that might allow them to just go forward in exchange for turning over the money?
Exactly.
Okay, good.
But can I clarify?
One of my ideas too.
It was also that, it was also that they could therefore achieve economies in scale so that net, there would be net more housing units because if they were pooling their money, they could build a bigger project than if they were putting one or two units.
No, no, I, I, I understand. In fact, when we get to the comments, I'll be talking about something like that too. But I want, you know, reading this, it was not exactly informative, I'm sorry. I tried to spare you this, but I couldn't. Okay. So maybe you guys can answer the questions and maybe more effective on this portion of it. Okay, I think we've talked about the eliminate offsite before, providing additional floor. That's, that is understandable. We've talked about the R1, the ADUs we've talked about. Okay, I think we've talked about that. Okay. The good news is from the other discussion, the questions, you've actually brought out most of these points and now I do understand those.
Well, there was one actually that I'm not sure it's on your list, and I say, looking at the possibility of doing AHPP only for low and moderate.
Ah, yes. Explain to me what the thinking is behind that.
Because we're not producing low and moderate. Well, actually, low probably will go up now that TCAC allows you to do low income up to 80% in a nonprofit project or 100% project. But there's no, there are no leveraging resources for moderate income housing, as you know. So we thought, let the private developers pay for it and put that into the AHPP. It's just an idea, just.
No, no, I understand. This is just questions. I just want to understand what the concepts were that we're being asked to react to.
That that's the way, maybe to produce a moderate income housing in the city, you'd probably get more units because, you know, the rents are higher. So that was just something that we thought we could explore.
Good. Question for housing staff. So in the city of Santa Monica, typically when we do moderate housing, we set the income limit at 120% and the rents based off of that, is that correct?
The income qualification for the household is 120 and the rent is calculated as if the household had 110% of the income.
That's state law.
Okay. And is there anything that would prevent us from satisfying the moderate, which goes from 80 to 120 by doing 90% of AMI housing and setting the rents accordingly?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Maybe, not necessarily. Okay, now let's talk about the HRNA study. So I think there's probably questions for you, Paul. Okay, now let's talk about the HRNA study, so I think there's probably questions for you, Paul. So, when a developer who doesn't already own the land is thinking about doing a project, they consider all the costs, including the cost of acquiring the land, and then what their income stream is projected to be going forward, and do some sort of discounted cash flow analysis, is that typical?
Not for the scale of projects that are typically built in Santa Monica, most developers don't do internal rate of return in our experience.
Okay, so how do they determine whether or not to?
By doing exactly the kinds of investment return metrics that we used in our analysis.
Okay, and when they're deciding whether to do it, they're comparing that to whatever the alternative projects that they have available, whether it's here in Santa Monica or across the border in LA or elsewhere, is that right?
Depending on who the developer is, sometimes you get, you know, an individual who either has owned or acquired a piece of property to do one particular project and is not necessarily comparing it with opportunities in another location.
Right, so if we're talking now about a developer already owns the land, when they're deciding whether or not to build, they're considering whether to simply sell the land or to instead put a project on the land, but what they already paid for the land is a sunk cost, right?
Yeah, at a particular moment in time.
Okay, so for those?
But it still has value as a prospective development, because they're typically going to put the land in as an equity contribution to the project.
Right, but if they're holding it, their only choices are either to put something on it or to sell it, or to continue holding?
Yes, that's correct, correct.
And if they're thinking about continuing holding, what, if there's prospective upzoning, what is that likely to do to the value of that piece of land to that landowner?
Generally, values increase in rough proportion to zoning capacity, generally speaking, although it doesn't happen instantaneously.
Yeah, so sometimes it might be rational, when there's a lot of state and local discussion of upzoning, to wait and see how that plays out, is that right?
I think you saw that during the pendency of the last general plan update, is a lot of developers waited to find out what the standards were going to be before bringing projects forward, and one of the reasons why you have all these pent-up projects, you know, the thousand and some units that have been approved and not yet under construction, because a lot of those projects were backlogged from the last general plan update.
And once the upzoning goes through, then all of the land that's subject to that will be worth more, is that right?
Generally speaking, and again, it doesn't happen instantaneously.
Understood. I had a question in the Lincoln Boulevard scenario, I didn't see that there was a comparison done with a commercial project. Did I miss it, or was there a reason why that wasn't done?
No, I think it was just, Jane, you want to answer that one? Yeah, yeah, it just wasn't part of the scope, because I think the real question was, you know, trying to look at the possibility of more residential, since there had been a couple of new projects that actually came through.
Okay, and, but ultimately, as you're showing in the other portions of the analysis, somebody who either is thinking about acquiring land to developers, holding it, will want, excuse me, let me just finish the question. Will compare not only a possible residential project, but assuming they're allowed to build a commercial project, they'll consider whether that gives them a higher rate of return, right?
There was more evidence that that kind of consideration was taking place, I think, on the boulevards than was true at Lincoln, on Lincoln Boulevard.
Right, and your analysis, leaving aside any other issues anybody has with it, but at least based on the parameters you put in, it showed that in all those other cases, the commercial option had a higher return, is that right?
Yes, our judgment is that it would be much more likely that someone would build a commercial project as this illustration demonstrates, yes.
Okay, and then I put in an inquiry about this, so I saw that, that there were some, in order to try and determine what rents you were projecting, was a little more complicated process because there wasn't a lot that was comparable there, could you sort of explain what you actually did?
Yeah, on the residential rents.
Yes.
Yes, as I was explaining very briefly, although there's a chart describing it in our presentation package attached to the staff report, we made a statistical adjustment for the older units that had larger unit sizes as compared to the more current projects which use smaller unit sizes.
And what kind of rate of expected growth in rents do you use in your model?
It's a static performance, so we're using, we're using essentially current rents, we're not projecting growth over time.
And is that, in your view, consistent with the kinds of projects we're talking about here, how developers look at it?
When they're doing a static analysis, yes, because you're looking at a snapshot in time of what you expect your return to be at the point that the project is, construction is completed, leased up and stabilized.
Right, and that's your understanding, that's what's actually happening in the marketplace?
Absolutely, that is one of the most common analytic techniques that most developers in our experience use for the kinds of projects that are built in Santa Monica when we're talking about one building at a time, as opposed to a portfolio of projects.
And how diff, well, let me step back for a second. I understand that there wasn't an analysis yet done of whether, instead of making it onsite, inclusionary, you instead took the cost of doing that, or perhaps even a lower cost, partnered with something like CCSM or EAH and did an off-site TCAC project?
Right, no, the analysis that we did in all of these tests were onsite inclusionary only.
And is that, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And, you know, we are looking at a particular set of issues related to the off-site possibility to see if there is, you know, certain advantages to extending the experience that you've had with 500 Broadway.
And, but so that is an analysis you could do?
You mean as an alternative to onsite inclusionary?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Okay, I just mean you can do the economic analysis, that's what I'm saying, okay. And did you have any discussion with Mass Equities about the project they had discussed with CCSM to do exactly that?
Not yet, that is, that is one of the remaining tasks in our scope of work that we just haven't gotten to yet, but we will have conversations with both the private party and CCSM in the course of working on that task.
And then, oh, we lost Commissioner Reese, but I think he was asking, oh, there he is, about the escalating cost of building and we were talking about the demand for engineering services, for production, for materials and the like, as we're doing all of this statewide, upzoning and juicing up all of the production of housing, is that likely to drive up costs further?
Well, depending on a lot of things, ranging from labor supply to trade tariffs and a variety of other things, all of which are affecting construction costs simultaneously.
Okay, thank you, that completes my questions, so I, oh, okay, last question, Vice Chair Holden.
I'd like to clarify the HPP income rent formula. The HPP allows in-place income increases, and as an example, if the household income is 120% of AMI and they're in a 120% restricted income unit, their income can go as high as 140%. And even though the unit's restricted as 120%, the income, and we just heard it, is calculated as 110% of AMI, thank you.
So, I'm open to input about how to proceed, the Planning Commission, I mean, I stand by the recommendations we made, whenever it was, a month ago. And if there are additions, certainly we can talk about that. One thought Sean and I had, and I've reconsidered, is that if you want, we could come to your meeting tonight and explain ourselves more, it's totally up to you, it's not like we have anything else to do. Or not.
Chair, I would recommend, chairs, I would recommend, if we're now in the discussion phase and we are, and we are not, we're not taking a vote, I think, in the interest of time, it might be good simply to go around the dais, ask each commissioner to offer their input into where we go from here, and when we get to the end, then circle back and see if there's, we go home, or if there's something that needs further discussion, we do it. But at this point, I think my understanding of how staff wanted to take input from us is, they want to hear from each of us and go home.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds really good. In the meantime, Commissioner Fresco has something to say. Is it a question?
No, no, I was going to say.
Okay, Commissioner Pastor, do you have a question?
Okay, we're going to start at one end and go down the dais and give our input on recommendations, we think, and from the standpoint of the Planning Commission, beyond, beyond what we did before, to go to the City Council. So, Mario, do you want to start?
Okay, well, you already know how I feel about the feasibility of this thing, I would like to throw out one idea that helps frame it all. When you look at the current RENA numbers and you see that we have to provide 44,500 low, very low, and extremely low income unit, you're talking about $2.3 trillion, okay?
No, it's 2.3, actually.
What's that?
It's 1.3.
Not at $500,000 per unit. Yes, the point I'm making is that represents about three to four years of the entire city budget of Santa Monica would have to be dedicated to this effort to meet the RENA numbers. So I'm telling you, it's a bridge too far, it's not worth it, we have to look at other ways of getting there. The other thing to look at, it's very curious that the entire buildup of the state's approach to this problem is various punitive devices for kicking cities in the shin that don't meet their goals. There is no reward for meeting these goals, there's no incentive for meeting these goals, there's no facilitation for meeting these goals, in other words, it's a completely unfunded mandate and therefore it will collapse under its own fiscal weight. And so we're really talking about an imaginary process here, and I think we need to come back to earth. There's a surprising passivity about these RENA numbers, they're being handled by the gods, they're going to give it to us, you know, at some point, two months from now, this is really an untenable situation, particularly for a city that's really doing a great job in a very difficult environment. And so now, because we've done a good job in a very difficult environment, they're making it impossible for us to keep doing a good job in this, in a very difficult environment. By difficult, I mean very expensive land costs, and I believe Mr. Sobolov put the question very accurately. The moment you upzone, the cost of all that land will go through the roof and you'll be right back to where you were in an unaffordable environment, but with just a lot more units that are unaffordable. So, the whole thing is kind of like mission improbable, mission impossible, so, that's my opinion on it.
Okay, so, Commissioner Fresco?
I thank you all for your clever questions, I didn't have any left after I heard all of yours. I thought that there were a lot of interesting things that came to us from the public and in letters, and I hope that staff will make a list of those, as well as whatever we input. You know, some of the things made sense, some of them were kind of kooky, you know, but we should study, you know, look at all of that and see what we can mine from all of that input, a lot of it was, you know, very practical. I'm really interested in learning from analysis if off-site housing, as opposed to, affordable housing as opposed to inclusionary, might help the numbers and help incentivize the housing. It seems like when, you know, these housing builders will do whatever they can to figure out how to build as few of these units as possible and then to be responsible, because they don't want to be responsible for them for a long time, because the unit isn't over time as much of a moneymaker as the rest of their units. So maybe the idea of that single upfront fee that then goes to the affordable housing provider and is coupled with the funding that they get, which makes it worth more money, might actually be a way to go in this environment, so that was one thing. I think that there are ways to squeeze density out of our city that we don't take advantage of. All through the DCP, you probably forgot, that I complained frequently about these hollow buildings that we were building that looked like these huge massive structures, but they had giant holes in the middle of open space that nobody, the public didn't benefit from either for enjoyment or for just sky. So as long as we're building buildings that large anyway, why don't we put more units in them and get all the people who live in them to come outside and use our parks and make our parks better places too? We'll need more parks for that. I always have to give my usual plea for historic preservation, of course, when I look at all the change that this is going to cause, and so much of it is going to be administratively approved, and there are tender, fragile little landmarks scattered everywhere in the city, and so we also need to think about what we're going to do to protect those. I noted that a lot of these new state laws do have exceptions for historic resources, and so we just have to make sure that while we're doing all this, we're taking care of those. I think there's a lot of benefit that we can get from R2 and R3 and those zones where we have a lot of small apartment courts, you know, the ones that get redeveloped, 10 units turn into three giant bajillion dollar condos. I think that we really have to look at that, even without this RENA number, we should have been looking at that, because that was just a heartbreak to lose so many units. I think short-term, well, I don't want to say that right now, but we should look at a lot of, you know, there were a lot of things that we were starting with, with the zoning ordinance and with the LOSE that kind of got cut down at the end, and things that change at the last minute, even with the DCP. I think you all know what they are, and I think we should really look at undoing those last-minute changes that seem to have got us into a lot of the mess we're in now. I think the idea of helping people who have housing, existing housing with existing Santa Monica residents living in them that are in need of retrofits and are really struggling, I wish there was a way that we could support that. I think that would be, go a long way to preserving our existing housing, and as long as we're studying things and looking at things, let's look at that too. Oh, and the idea of accessing some kind of richness or use of our R1, it's a pretty risky proposition in our city with the way people feel about those neighborhoods, but they are very exclusionary kinds of places, and maybe there's a way that we can look at that and preserve their character and make them more equitable places, and also help people who live in those really expensive houses stay in them by making more money, not just off of ADUs, which are really expensive to build, but also that one speaker who's talked about the two front doors and how that's a big problem in our code, and that struck something. And then, I guess that's pretty much all of the things that jumped out at me and to think about and put on the list to contemplate and also to remember, like I said, some of the interesting new ideas that were kind of outside the box that the speakers brought to us.
Okay, a couple of general comments, I think Commissioner Vonda Bernardi is right to bring us, bring us back to sustainability as a concern, but I do think that we need to consider the broader sustainability implications of sprawl.
implications of sprawl, and the broader, at a regional level, and the broader sustainability implications of commuting at a regional level, and recognize that when we're looking at sustainability, we're not, and we, we do have our internal obligations as a city that are, that are critical, but we also have, there are also regional strategies that matter, and so when we're doing the sustainability calculus, we have to, we have to think big, and I appreciate the comments that we got from Mr. Rodman Alvarez, which looked at, you know, maybe there are ways to, maybe there are ways to actually target our work so that we can reduce the number of people who are commuting into our city, because they're now living here. I think that would be really interesting. As I read this, I think we want to start with the low-hanging fruit, and move forward from there, so I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. I think process is easiest to fix, followed by the HPP mix, followed by our development standards, followed by zoning changes. And we may have to get there, but I think, you know, upzoning may be on the table, but I think it's a last resort, particularly given the timeline and what we have to accomplish by, really not October '21, which is the certification, but we're, that means we have to be ready to go, what, six months earlier than that, and I just think, we ought to do what we can do quicker. So, to that, agree with my colleagues about exploring expanded off-site options. I'd love to see us align more with state code and other practices in our region, that includes the definition of mixed use, looking at the possibility of this, you know, how we might target second-floor non-residential uses, based on that state code, but, I mean, we could do it our way, but we could get a lot closer to the state definition, the state definition of the density bonus, looking at the definition of the high-rise, bearing in mind sort of some earthquake issues that are, that are, you know, unique to us. But in general, I think we should be looking at simplifying our code and just making it a lot easier. Commissioner Buchanan raised the question of, why do we have 31 zoning districts in Santa Monica? I think that's a really good question. 100%, 100% affordable, becoming by right, I'd like to move in that direction, I'd like to look at, you know, the kind of T-FAR program that I mentioned, particularly because it's an additional revenue source for affordable housing providers, but provide that, look at models where whatever is transferred has to be 30% moderate, in a Prop R compliant kind of a way. I mean, it has to get us closer to our goals, it can't just be a transfer of FAR, just like that. Support the idea of, of low and moderate, focusing on low and moderate in the HPP. But back to process, reducing housing dais, remind everyone that DRs are always appealable to city council, so, you know, get, let's, let's focus on DRs as the top of the housing processing barrier, raising the administrative approval cap outside downtown Santa Monica, so that we're not looking at these 15,001 square foot projects. Let's also review our DR history and try to standardize compliance, even by ordinance if needed, as, from my exchange with Jing and Heidi about that, I think that's a great project for somebody to look at, what planning commissions have done over the last decade. Public land has to, we have to use public land, it's gotta be on the table, all public land has to be on the table for this cycle. To me, we have to make some trade-offs. If I have to make, if I have to make trade-offs about height and open space, I'd rather go up and preserve more open space. I think we need to, to keep the open space that we have. Expedending, so, and then displacement issues, I just want to raise them, looking at extending affordability covenants, as Commissioner Pastor raised, I think is super important. I'd like to see what our anti-displacement strategies can look like in the wake of SB 330 and AB 1482, and the, and the renter protection packages. I know that Mr. Raskin mentioned, mentioned CEQA, what other opportu, what other opportunities do we have to protect tenants, and what, if we're studying options, let's understand what the cost is. In other words, if we wanted to preserve a tenant in a particular unit that was up for, you know, redevelopment with more units, and we actually wanted to bring that tenant back in at the same rent-controlled rent, what concessions would we have to give to a developer of that project in order to keep that tenant there at that rent? Let's, let's know what that, let's have that information so we can make an informed decision. And lastly, I will just say, ADUs, critical, but also, as we heard from, from Ms. Brooks, and Commissioner Fresco just alluded now, I think there, and Mr. Cassely, I hope I pronounced his name right, what are the other options at a residential scale, so that in the residential neighborhoods, we're not building these huge edifices that, that feel out of whack, but maybe we are increasing the number of dwelling units per acre, without it feeling like, like these looming massive buildings, but we do need to explore those options sooner rather than later. But again, process, then HPP, then development standards, then zoning.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pastor?
I'll try to be fast. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Landris said, I actually don't think T-FAR is a magic bullet, I don't think it's worked very well in a lot of places, that's just my opinion. With ADUs, they're really important, I think we need to not rely too much on them, because the reality is that, yes, a lot of people in large houses who can just afford to buy them, to build them, are just going, they're not gonna get occupied by another tenant, so let's just be careful about that. I think what Dave Rand mentioned is one of the easiest, and as he said, most low-hanging fruit. I don't understand why we do that in this city, the city needs to look at this, or we're gonna get sued and we're gonna lose. I, I've talked before about cohousing, I'd really like to see us look at cohousing, I like the idea of San Jose, that they count each of those units, let's explore whether that's really an option. Cohousing isn't for everyone, but it is for some people. When it is time to come back to the, to the HRNA report, and it sounds like that is not today, I would like it to take a very hard look at those construction costs, they don't seem right to me. I'm still not clear how the time of processing is, is baked in there, so I'd like to understand that. I'd like to see the costs and the analysis peer-reviewed, and for there to be real developments that are considered at that. The other thing I don't think that's in the HRNA report is, in Santa Monica, we have not seen unions show up and challenge projects, and I think that's probably gonna happen in the future, and that's gonna raise construction costs, so what does that mean to us, and what does that mean to development? Modern, some kind of modern income density bonus is something I've talked about. The state law does not allow for a moderate income density bonus, so if it's something that we want to do, it's something we have to do for ourselves. And I would like to understand from developers whether or not they would be willing to do some kind of bonus, if they're, have to covenant for 55 years, the sort of 80 to 120, or whatever the, the moderate number is that we come up with, whether that is gonna encourage more housing, and maybe it's combined with a very low income density bonus. I would like us to look at a similar kind of program to the TOC program in Los Angeles, and I think that if we do that, then it is incumbent on us to really understand what our transportation looks like, and what our headways are, and is there an opportunity, do we need to increase, and this may be pie in the sky, but do we need to increase frequency of transportation in some places to make housing more desirable there, and more accessible to folks who do not, who do not drive? I think that's my list. Oh, two, I'm sorry, two other things. Definition of high-rise is really important, and making our definition of housing project align with the, the HAA is really important.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Okay, you know, again, I agree with a lot of what I've heard before. I do think the state does have, while I do think these numbers are pie in the sky, I do think the state has leverage over us, they are threatening to withhold different funding mechanisms. I also think that SB 35 is a, is a large lever over the top of our head, and if you need examples of projects, I know that my office has worked on five already, and we're in the midst of four or five more, so I'm happy to share those with you. I think that looking at processes is important, I also think fees, our fees are important, our fees are extremely high. I do take exception, too, I do not think that we can really reduce our park fee, per se, I think that's really critical, if we are going to try to increase density, we need to make sure we maintain some open space. I agree, looking at the density bonus and key definitions is, is easy, low, low-hanging fruit, public lands needs to be in there. I heard an interesting one of incentivizing office buildings to adaptively reuse to residential. That not only helps us on our residential end, but it also addresses trips, as office generates a lot of trips. Then, we are, I do believe we're gonna end up having to do some densification in areas. I think the way to do this is around the expo lines with a radius. I think that, you know, we focus this on restricted affordable, or everything from workforce to moderate, down to low, very low, and extremely low. I'm not worried that, that, we're not gonna get enough high-end housing in this city, I think our job is to focus on these other levels. I also think that the radius helps to stop displacement, it's not going to completely stop it, but it helps, and it also protects the built environment with that. I'm done.
Thank you. Basically agree. What is this thing? You know, actually, my foot's caught in the wire, maybe that's it. If I suddenly light up. There we go. Find ways to make housing trust funds go farther, and that's sort of what everybody's been saying. We are, according to CCSM, it's about $300,000 a unit for new construction, a city subsidy, so that'd be like 1.35 billion dollars, which is obviously totally, you know, crazy, so we need to find ways to, to make it more cost-effective and cheaper to build affordable 100% projects. And one thing that I thought of is, I think we should explore not, not having any minimum parking requirements throughout the city. We have that downtown, and I think we should look at that citywide, not that developers are gonna do that, but we should have that option, because it reduces development costs and is good for the environment. The density bonus thing, I think, needs to be pursued, I've never understood why we don't do that, or why we haven't been sued for not doing it, so we need to, I think we need to look at that very closely. In terms of the TDM requirement, I really encourage the city to work with CCSM and other nonprofits, that clearly it is a major financial burden on that nonprofit, and it needs to be resolved. There's an issue, too, that you probably are all aware, that CCSM is purchasing a property in Pico, on Virginia, Pico neighborhood, and it's a way to protect the tenants who are living there, and to protect the building, et cetera. There's some residual land they can build on, new construction, but it's really a tension, because acquisition of rehab units don't count toward RENA goals, so, you know, it's gotta be new construction, so how do we balance that? The values of protecting tenants and existing buildings versus the RENA requirements. There actually is, there is legislation that goes into effect in January that creates a state housing financing authority, it's different from CHAFA, and what it does is, a local, a local government will form a financing agency for housing, and I think it's a tax increment financing method, and then they would plug into the state financing authority, and whether Santa Monica has enough economy of scale to do it, or should join with another, other cities around it, but that definitely is something to pursue. Again, it's property, it's sort of a redevelopment light approach. Frankly, don't believe there's any way to proceed if the 9,000-unit count is real without upzoning, I think we're fooling ourselves if we think otherwise. But it's where it happens is what's important, and clearly, the boulevards, Bergamot, are, versus the R1 and the other residential neighborhoods, should be looked at, obviously, Sean actually brought his work closely, I think, with LaMoss in Los Angeles, and he's talked to other people here in Santa Monica about doing a, sort of a soft financing program for people who want to do ADUs, and did restrict them for the term, at least of the housing element, as affordable housing. It's not gonna be a lot, a lot of units, but I think it's a really definitely a good approach to, to pursue. I'm not worried about expiring covenants, we looked into that a few years ago, the, the only ones I think that really would be questionable are the ones on Barnard Way, the senior projects owned by for-profit developers, when those expire, that could be a problem, but I think, I checked with Andy, and I believe that the city has the first right of refusal to purchase those projects, and I have no, no problems at all thinking about CCSM's expiry, because generally what will happen is they'll resyndicate and re, you know, keep the project. And again, the moderating, I encourage us to look at the HPP for a low and moderate income housing source. Oh, the ADU thing, the ADU thing, the ADU thing, okay. Now you just derailed my train of thought.
Sorry.
So, so, I mean, basically, I think you, you all have a letter from CCSM about improvements they would like to see in the process, and I support all of those. I think that, you know, the administrative approval for 100% projects, just remove the barriers to their getting through, you know, in a quick fashion. And, you know, the, I know that there's, because I've experienced it, there's tension between the neighborhood preservation interests and the, and densification interests, and I'm both, I mean, I'm not, I'm the farthest thing from a NIMBY you can imagine, but I do understand people's appreciation for the quality of life in the city, and that cannot be ignored. So however we proceed with densification, upzoning, what have you, we can't not listen to the people who live here, because that would not only be political suicide, but it would be unfair.
Thank you. So, I don't want the housing commissioners to feel constrained to speak quickly, so unless you object, I mean, it's up to you, but if you want to adjourn your meeting, we'll continue on, if you want to stay, that's fine, but I don't want to feel constrained to give a staccato response like that, so.
So if we want to leave, we can?
That's what I'm saying. That's up to you. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be accommodating to folks here, I mean, this is gonna be on tape or TV or whatever, you can listen, it doesn't necessarily have to be at midnight, but, anyway, you can.
I feel guilty.
Well, okay. Anyway, so let me, then I'm gonna.
Me, too.
There you go.
Thank you so much. Oh, yes, actually, I will go speak at the city council on these issues, and Sean, it'd be good if you came, too, and the more planning commissioners who speak, the better. So, whatever.
Do you need a motion to adjourn our meeting?
You don't need a motion to adjourn, you just leave. That's what I was told last time.
Yeah, but.
Where'd they go?
It's a joint meeting.
Okay, so.
I'll move to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Leslie? All in favor?
I just, I had some things that I wanted to, I wanted to respond to some people's points in, in my response, so.
So, you want them to stay?
Yeah.
You don't want them to just watch the tape?
I rejected my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Why don't you go first, then, Commissioner Kamner? Why don't we let Commissioner Kamner go first?
Okay, thank you. No worries, thank you. Yeah, I apologize, it's really late for me also, so it's hard for me to put my thoughts together, but I just want to say, I think that this is a really positive, exciting time for Santa Monica. I think this RENA target is actually a really good thing, and really exciting for us. I think this is the potential for us to be another model, a model city like we were for the fifth cycle. You know, the reality is, is that we do have a very severe housing crisis here, and, you know, Commissioner Fonda Bonardi was saying that we're doing a good job here, and I don't know how anybody can look at the situation here and think we're doing a good job. We're failing the residents here, people are being displaced constantly, this, you know, our communities are dying, and families are living on the street. You know, we've had people come to our housing commission meetings, and we, we had a woman recently who was, her family was about to be homeless here in the city, she's lived here pretty much her entire life, and her kids are gonna be living on the street. street. So we're not doing a good job, but this is our opportunity to do a good job, and so that's why I'm very excited. You know, a severe housing crisis means that we have to make very major urgent change. I think we have to take the RENA targets very seriously. And, you know, it's not the time to make excuses, it's the time to do hard work and innovate and solve this problem for the residents here that are suffering from the housing crisis. I think it's important on a high level not to concentrate the suitable sites in a few areas for very high density. I think we have to focus a lot more on spreading out medium density for many reasons. Medium density is cheaper per unit to produce. It doesn't require very rich developers, and it doesn't require special equipment and special materials and special, and specialists. So that's, I think that's big picture, what we need to focus on and, and spread out medium density. The, the reality is, is that people want to build housing here. We have housing demand, and we're a wealthy city. If any city can do it, it's us. That's why we have this RENA target. So I say, let's do it, let's be a model. All the barriers that we're hearing, that we heard about at this meeting from, from the public comment, you know, we created them in this city, we created those barriers, we created those costs. And so, you know, we can undo that, and, you know, we can, we can realize with the resources and the demand for housing that we have here, we can, we can realize, you know, a much larger rate of production. You know, when we, I think in some of these comments, you know, there's a tendency to talk about housing as if it's zero-sum, when we talk about the balance between affordable and market-rate housing, but it's not zero-sum. We can have a lot more of both, and having more market-rate housing doesn't reduce our ability to also have affordable housing. In fact, I think we need to look at market-rate housing as maybe the best potential way to fund and create affordable housing. You know, we've been, some of the other commissioners have been talking about, you know, TOC, and, you know, I think that's a good example. You know, maybe we can even go beyond that. The, the, you know, the above moderate income RENA target, it's not a floor, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not a ceiling. It's not a ceiling, it's a floor. And so, we could look at, you know, really going above and beyond that if, if that means that we could create more affordable housing as well. I want to mention what Commissioner Fresco said about looking at more equity in exclusionary areas. I think this is a really important opportunity to do that. I think in general, we need to reevaluate what we're talking about in this city when we talk about protection and preservation. I think we have to think more about protecting and preserving the people here and, you know, and not allowing our communities to continue to be at risk, and focus more on that. And, you know, Commissioner, sorry, Leslie, I don't even know if you're listening.
Lambert.
Lambert, thank you. Commissioner Lambert mentioned that we, we need to listen to residents, and I think, you know, we need to make sure we're listening to the residents who, whose lives are at stake, you know, who are, who are rent burdened, who are having to leave the city. Those are, those are the, those are the highest concerns, and those are the highest priorities, is to protect those people. You know, it's not to protect, like, certain physical properties of the city, it's to, it's to protect people. I want to mention something that Commissioner Landry said about upzoning, that, that actually there was concern about the timeline for upzoning, and I, I'm pretty certain that in the housing element, we just need to, we need to show that the upzoning is going to happen within three years. So I don't think it's the six-month timeline, but, so I think we have the time to do the upzoning. The upzoning is going to be very important. What else? I, I think one area where I diverge from the other commissioners is that I think that we should decide how to distribute this upzoning and this RENA target in the city based on objective methodologies and objective factors like job accessibility, transit accessibility, air quality. And do that based on the values that we care about, such as reducing emissions and reducing inequality in the city. So I think, you know, that's different from the approaches we've taken in this city in the past about upzoning and where to concentrate upzoning. What I'm suggesting is maybe this is an opportunity to completely rethink how we do upzoning in the city, so. I think an important part of the housing element is that when we change the zoning and we select the suitable sites, we have to maximize the chance of development happening on those sites. So we have to make sure we're, we're using parcels that are likely to be redeveloped, and that we're use, we're like predicting building types that are likely to happen, and that we look at past development patterns when we do this, and use like a data-based In terms of how to fund the low-income housing, obviously, as the other commissioners have said, that's, that's the biggest challenge of this RENA target, is how to fund and build that, the lower-income targets. You know, I, like I said, I think we should look at, you know, TOC, maybe going beyond that, super-density bonuses, and, you know, we should look at every way that we can raise that money, like we should look at local bonds. And, you know, one, one idea I had on here was diverting Airbnb tax to affordable housing. So that could be something as well. Yeah, so I think that's pretty much, those are all my comments. So thank you, thanks for staying and listening to me.
Thank you for making us sit. We appreciate the time.
Commissioner Buchanan?
So my comments are pretty general, actually. I think that there is a huge difference between preserving the character of a neighborhood and fostering an attitude of exclusion in that neighborhood. I think that we are, we are not just changing, we are not just looking at changing zoning codes and, and, you know, other things that are on paper. We are looking at having to change people's attitudes about things, and that's going to be the harder, the harder part of all of this, I think, in some areas. I think that it's possible, but I think that none of this is going to happen overnight. So we need to figure out a way to make it happen as quickly as, as possible, realizing that there's a people factor in this, not just that we are doing all of this for the people of this community. In some cases, we may be doing it in spite of them, or, you know, we're, you know, we're a city that prides ourselves on listening to the people who live here. But we may not always agree with everything that the people who live here say, just as they may not agree with us. And I, along those lines, I think that we need to, as some others have said, look at, I hate the term upzoning, but look, look at increasing density in all areas of the city. I think that limiting it to certain particular areas is going to bring about some of the issues that exist in the Pico neighborhood, where they feel that they end up with all of the affordable housing and all of the social service agencies. And I think that that's a burden that the rest of, I mean, I don't see it as a burden, but some people do, and so I think that that's something that the entire city should share in. If we're truly a, a city that embraces diversity, then the diversity needs to be spread throughout the city. And my last comment is, I think that we not only need to simplify the zoning codes, but I think we need to look at why we have 31 zoning districts and, and the part that that plays in making the whole zoning code so complicated and, and not always understandable. That's it.
Mr. Hilton?
Two suggestions regarding tenant protections. Canavan Associates has a grant to compile an online yearly report for all 20 to 22 social service organizations, including legal aid. For complete data, I think we need to include our Consumer Protection Unit, and, which is usually the first responder. At a housing commission meeting, the Consumer Protection Unit staff said they would consider. And secondly, and finally, the HR and A study, as I mentioned, didn't include an analysis of income rents. And one alternative to the 5% or 7.5% yield would be to, for example, to combine the extremely low income with the very low income, the 30% and 60% of AMI, and calculate the rent at the greater of the two. And just for comparison, because I, I work with seniors and persons with disabilities for over 30 years, senior rents typically are 550 and 650. So these rents, if you look at the table on page 17, are grossly less than, than most of the standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess I'm last. I, I think that if we're going to try and figure out what policies we ought to follow, the first thing we have to do is define what goals are we trying to achieve. And one of those goals is in Prop R, which was put in by the voters of the City of Santa Monica into the charter, which makes it a requirement for the city council to find a way that 30% of all new multifamily housing produced every year is deed-restricted affordable housing. That means permanently affordable to and occupied by moderate-income people, which is defined in the charter as 100% of AMI, and at least half of that, or at least 15% for people, it's 60% of AMI, that's area median income or less. That's an important value of this community, because what it says is that we don't want Santa Monica to become Beverly Hills by the sea. We don't want to live in an economically gated community. And it's true that we have neighborhoods where, that are single-family, where land costs are astronomical. But you can also walk five blocks from those places, and you're next to an affordable housing project in the City of Santa Monica. This is a remarkable place for that, and we, and at least I believe, and I believe the voters have said it very clearly, that's something that we need to maintain. Now, the housing crisis that we face in the state of California, and as well, obviously, here in Santa Monica, is one that hits the people at the bottom far, far harder than anybody else. I, yesterday, made a presentation to the California Commission on Aging about our POD program, and there, UCLA professor put together the Elder Index. Over 60% of every single senior in the City of Los Angeles is, doesn't have enough after-rent income to meet the basic necessities of life. And that's true with couples, too. The entire State of California, that's true, and it's even worse here. And, we're, and we're not talking about, you know, a little burden here. If you read, for example, what the people who are in our POD program, which is the program we have to subsidize rents to get people to that basic needs budget, people were talking about how thrilled they were that they could buy paper towel again, that they could leave more than one light on in the room. That's what it means to be in an affordable housing crisis. And if you look at the data in the State of California, as well as here in Santa Monica, you have, oops. So in our state, 76.9% of all people who are extremely low are paying more than 50% of that in rent. So that's people who are making like $20,000 a year, and they're paying more than half of that in rent. Okay? Then, when you get to the next one, which is just merely low, very low income, then it drops to 50% of those people in the State of California. Those households are paying more than 50% in rent. Then when you get to low income, which is 80% of AMI, that's still far below anything that we're talking about here, it's down to only 17%. When you get to people in the moderate income range, it's down to 5% of the households are paying more than 50%. And when you get to people above moderate, it's less than 1%. But there's a big difference if you're making more than moderate and paying 50% of that in rent, or if you're somebody who's at that extremely low or very low. The difference is whether, gee, maybe I can't take that extra vacation, or I can't go to the fancy restaurant that I want to go to, versus whether I can eat, whether I get health care. And so I think that it's critical that we keep our eye on the ball of that part of the affordable housing crisis. And I think that's what the numbers, that the RENA numbers, I think that's what they tell us, and what they tell us about the City of Santa Monica, because they're actually, if you look at the percentages that we were assigned, we were assigned an even higher percentage of moderate or below, all of which would have to be deed-restricted housing in the city, because there's no market-rate housing that's anywhere near that. And with respect to my colleagues, I'd love to see it, and the gentleman who came with his study that I'm happy to look at, nobody can tell me how many market-rate units we'd have to create in Santa Monica to drive the rents down, to where somebody who's a, a low-income person could afford to live here in anything other than deed-restricted housing. With all due respect, I've seen Manhattan, it's a lot bigger place than the eight-square-miles we have, and when I lived there and went to public school, and middle-class people were living in Gramercy Park, now you've got to be super-rich, and now even Harlem's getting driven out. So we have to be realistic about what can be achieved in our eight-square-mile city. There are a lot of little nibbling around the edges that we're talking about here, and that may be fine, but when you're talking about people, for example, in the neighborhood where I live, where the land value, just for a piece of dirt, is, you know, three-and-a-half million dollars now, you know, we can have ADUs and whatever, that's not going to be deed-restricted affordable housing. Believe me, I wish it would be, because I support that, but we're not going to incentivize that. So we have to think realistically about our community and what we can actually achieve here. So that brings me then to the next point, which is, so what is the process by which we're actually going to do all of this? And to me, and I don't mean any disrespect to anybody, but sort of having a meeting or two meetings where we throw out some ideas is not a realistic process to develop a comprehensive and a credible plan for how we're going to achieve what our goals are. There's going to have to actually be a real process, where we're going to have to look at what these various ideas actually are going to generate, and where is it going to put us relative to a target. One of the things we did on the housing commission, and it was the only thing that was within our jurisdiction, was the housing trust fund, so we at least recommended to council, and they adopted, that there actually be a plan. How are we going to spend this money? How are we going to tie that to what the goals are in the housing element and the like? And, and make the political leadership take responsibility for that, quite frankly, because they should. It's not up to the folks that are sitting here today to make those fundamental policy decisions that we're all talking about. There are only seven people in this town that have democratic legitimacy, and ultimately they have to take responsibility for it. It's all of our jobs to give them the best information possible to make a decision. So to me, we need to think about how we can formulate some sort of process that does it, that also doesn't incredibly overburden the staff that has so many other things. I know, at least with the housing staff, they have so many things going on at the same time, that saying now, also reinvent. um, that saying now also reinvent the entire um, nature of our community to achieve these numbers is kind of an unrealistic uh, ask. And so I, I'm not prepared here tonight to, uh, to figure out how we do that, but I think we have to give some thought to what kind of realistic process there might, there might be. And it needs to be a process that's credible. Um, and again, I don't mean disrespect to anybody, but there's some of us who are very focused on the affordable housing portion of this, um, that found past experiences rather disturbing. Obviously Village Trailer Park, which is what launched me into this and the local thing, was very disappointing when we were looking at people putting 4% affordable housing and, and calling that compliance somehow with our laws and with our values. So we need to come up with a process that's actually effective, efficient and credible. So there are some things in terms of policy that I'm going to throw out there tonight. And I thought you guys had a lot of great ideas and to be perfectly honest, I'm a very strong believer and my fellow commissioners know that not to try and make decisions the first time you hear about something, but to hear about them and think about them and then come back. And I promise you that I have heard everything that you guys have said and want to think about it and we will give input so that you guys have it before the, the council meeting to, for what our thoughts on that. But, but without having heard all of your thoughts, I had some thoughts and I want to share them. The first one is that whatever you want to say about the HRNA study, what it showed us is something that the Chamber of Commerce told us at the time of the downtown uh, community plan, um, and it's not surprising, which is that it can be more beneficial economically to do these commercial projects. And what the Housing Commission recommended at that time was, uh, we voted to recommend to council that they eliminate office and retail as a permitted use above ground floor, except in the cases of adaptive reuse of architecturally significant buildings and other exceptions the council would deem appropriate in certain areas, uh, not expect to be used for significant amounts of housing. Any exception projects should pay the maximum feasible commercial linkage fee. And quite frankly, seeing the data I have, I think that's something that needs to happen right now, citywide. Because that's one of the things that will incentivize the production of housing as opposed to these alternatives will also affect the value of land. If you can make more money by doing the commercial, it makes the land more valuable. Now, there's no reason in a city that already has 86,000 jobs, which only about 8,000 are filled by people who live in the city, to create more office space and to create more uh, of this housing imbalance. That's, that's insane from my personal perspective, um, and I think we ought to stop that. Um, there's just no excuse for it. Uh, one of the problems when we talk about trying to put people living where they work is that Santa Monica is an incredible place to be. Many people, myself included, moved here even though our job wasn't here. Uh, the data, and I did this at the time of the DCP, that the city had, that there are only 40,000 people at the time that worked in the city, uh, and of those, only 8,000 of them actually worked in the city. So there's still going to be tons of people who are going to get uh, uh, housing here that aren't going to work here. And I'd love to see a way, I don't, I don't think it's legally possible, if we could de-restrict our housing so that you have to, if you want new housing here, you have to work within some, some radius, you know? But I mean, the, the problem I have is that, you know, you, all of these ideas are great ideas, but unless there's actual data that shows that it actually leads to the result, it's not credible and it doesn't make a lot of sense. One thing we do know, let's stop the commercial and the office buildings at this time above ground floor and put the, all the focus on housing. Okay? Second thing, which I think we heard from a lot of people, all public land has to be on the table and not being used for commercial purposes and for other things like that. Um, we, we need to do it. One garage in the downtown is fantastic. I mentioned to people um, at the meeting yesterday and people were impressed because the fact of the matter is that, that I personally agree with Commissioner Fonda Benardi. Not that, not that uh, everything's perfect, but this town has done a lot more uh, for housing and affordable housing than any other community in the state of California, with the possible exception of San Francisco. And the professor from UCLA pointed out yesterday that actually the number of people who are rent burdened is actually lower in San Francisco um, than it is in some of the more other parts of the state, precisely because they've had an aggressive um, uh, affordable housing program and an aggressive um, rent control law. And he said, and I suspect that Santa Monica is the same way. That being said, it's obviously a terrible thing and that's why we created the POD program because we have thousands and thousands of residents. According to HUD, we have almost 15% of our renter population who are paying more than 50% income in rent. So public land, not have the commercial. Next thing is we need to have the maximum feasible in- inclusionary. And I, my strong view, and it sounded like some of the planning commissioners had already come to this view as well, that one of the things we learned, I actually discussed this with Paul at the DCP um, about, about the offsite requirement, that if you could partner like at 500 Broadway or this proposed Mass Equities uh, project uh, with a private developer and do a TCAC project, at least from the local perspective, not from the state perspective because we're still using their resources and those are scarce, but at least from the local perspective, uh, we could get a lot more affordable housing than if we required people to do it um, inclusionary onsite. And I'm personally very open to studying the question of whether we ought to adjust, uh, whether they just give us the money and we do it, or they acquire the land and then that's good enough, or how we do that, whether it has to be within the same area anymore. All of those things ought to be looked at, but looked at in the context of what could we really get um, for that. Um, I think that's a potential win-win for everybody and that seems to be the thing that would most um, do it. I completely agree that the idea of trying to figure out now that we're in a world where it's so clear that not only we potentially going to change things, but the state may potentially change things, that we need to know what the target is before we do the economic analysis and so that, that makes more sense. And we have to press the state to provide real resources. It's just not credible for them to get up and say that there's an affordable housing crisis and then acknowledge the fact that that crisis is concentrated in the moderate, very low, low and extremely low, all of which would have to be deed restricted in order to achieve those throughout the SCAG region. Um, and then not put any land and any money and any tax credits into it. And by the way, I said that to that commission yesterday and so I'm doing the best I can to get that message and I think we all have to keep saying that. And then finally, I think we need to keep in mind that, that this is about people and not about units. And so uh, one of the things that's clear is that we have thousands of people and we'll know a little better after we do the signup of the POD program, of people who are extremely low income or low income pay more than 50% of rent and not having enough of their money left over to beat the basic necessities of life. Um, we can help a lot more of those people than we can create a unit for the $2 million that we're putting into that program right now. We can um, help a minimum of 438 people and we'll know if it's more than that. Um, we can build three affordable housing units for that, or at least at, from the state's perspective. Even if you want to use just our contribution to it, then we could, we could produce six. Um, and so it's important to think about what our ultimate goal here is, which I think Commissioner Kamner mentioned, which is to protect people. And we need to be open to that and the state needs to be open to that too and that message needs to be sent. And I also stated that to that commission uh, yesterday. So um, I appreciate everything today. I think that it's, this is, you know, a useful start, but if we're going to seriously talk about the serious questions we have here, um, this is just a baby first step. And quite frankly, the idea that anybody would be in a position yet to make any policy decisions, to me is not good um, decision making.
Can I ask one quick question, Chair Soloff? Because it's, it's something that just came out today and I realize that it hasn't come up. You mentioned essentially disincentivizing commercial. Have you all talked about disincentivizing um, vacancies, residential vacancies? Whether through a vacancy tax or through some other means? Um, there's, is that something that's on the table? I, I, I only bring it up because if I don't say it in the meeting, I'd like to see it on the list, but there's talk of vacancy taxes, um, which would, which would essentially disincentivize landlords from having units go on the market that are nominally occupied by a lease, by someone who's willing to pay top dollars so they can have three days of housing in Santa Monica. Legally, they're, they're the lease for the whole year. But, well, that's, there are a whole bunch of questions that have to be asked, but I'm curious about whether or not that's something that you all have talked about um, in terms of incentives and disincentives. But it's, because the Liberty Hill and Sage just released a report on the situat- on the financialization of housing in LA and one of their proposals is um, a vacancy tax in LA. So I know we're talking about it in other places, but is it something you've talked about?
The Housing Commission hasn't talked about it, but that's, doesn't mean that we shouldn't.
Add it to the list.
Kamner? I, I just want to um, express support for vacancy tax, the vacancy tax idea from Commissioner Landry. Um, just as long as we're also um, focused on supply and increasing supply and production. But uh, I think a vacancy tax is uh, something that makes a lot of sense and has worked well in other cities and um, we should pursue.
I mean, it goes along with this idea that we've said on planning, which is if we, if the Housing Accountability Act makes us approve housing, it better be actual housing.
Richard?
Vacancy rate citywide was, was um, 5%. And it, today it's 4.8% vacancy excluding downtown.
Oh, 2.1. Census data, I looked it up because I believe Mr. Silverman's report or the staff report alluded to a 4.8% rate, which I presume reflected the studied properties. The census data tells us that, for 2018 tells us that the residential vacancy rate right now in Santa Monica is 2.1.
Well, my comment is that downtown was excluded from the count. And in downtown, it has to be significant because the units are smaller and the rents are much higher. But I agree with the fee, the vacancy fee.
Uh, what I'd like to say is there seems to be some different datas here being used. Because according to the state, the vacancy rate in Santa Monica is 8.1%. Now, I don't know where they get that number, how they get that number.
That's all housing uses combined, including houses on the market, owned, uh, owned properties that people are leaving vacant. That's why the census distinguishes between an overall vacancy rate, which is all possible things, like if you move out of your house because your roof caved in, that's considered a vacancy for the period you're gone. But the residential va- rental vacancy rate per the census is 2.1.
Okay, because I, I see other towns that have that whole complex, let's say, total apps, all the possible vacancies, they're down to like 2%, 1%, 4%. So I don't know what we're doing wrong, that, you know, we seem to have this huge vacancy, let's say, bubble.